I'm needed to answer Commissioner's questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. One, chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Having heard all that, does anybody want to speak? State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jan Warren. My address is 606 West 10th Street in Traverse City, Michigan. I'm employed by Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District, and I'm the Director of Northwest Michigan Works. I'm distributing a letter to you on behalf of the Grand Traverse County Community Collaborative, and I am its President. Calling, I'm here very briefly to urge you to please continue to allocate the $5,500 that you have in the past to help support the Community Collaborative. We, as you can see on the left side of the, our letterhead, we have about thirty paid members. However, when we meet once a month, more than fifty agency representatives attend. Our, our members pay anywhere from one hundred to one thousand dollars, and we raise approximately thirty thousand dollars with our dues system. We were concerned that in the past two years with the declining funding for nonprofits and community service agencies, that our dues amount would be reduced. It has not. It has remained stable throughout the last three years. I'm facing this year a one million dollar budget cut. I have about an eight million dollar budget. I will be contributing my one thousand dollar dues, because I believe it's an investment, and it's an investment to help our citizens, the citizens of this county, receive the services they need through a collaboration that does not duplicate services, that works together to create projects and programs that benefit all of us. Be glad to answer any questions and provide you more detail, but I know your time is very, very valuable. So I would just urge you to consider that allocation. I'm concerned that if the county is not able to meet its obligation, that other agencies would lose their confidence in the collaborative and not be able to contribute their dues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know it's public comment, but Jan, could you take like twenty seconds and explain about HelpLink? I mentioned it before.
Yes, yes. One of the efforts that grew out of the collaborative is the Poverty Reduction Initiative. And I know many of you are aware of the, the efforts that have been made to reduce poverty in our region. Faithless Form Church is a very active partner in the Community Collaborative. They have partnered with the collaborative and the Poverty Reduction Initiative to create HelpLink. HelpLink is a one-stop office for people to go to find out and get relief or answers to problems or frustrations they are experiencing with the human service system. HelpLink will open on October tenth. It will be staffed by volunteers who are navigators, who are trained to help those in need navigate the very confusing maze of programs and services available through our social services agencies. It is a wonderful effort. It is a tremendous commitment made by the church, and it is only happening because of the collaboration that is occurring in this community. Yesterday, I participated in the United Way Day of Caring and had the opportunity and privilege of helping to paint that office. Those of you that have been around as long as I have may remember that on the corner of Munson and Garfield, that there were doctors' offices, an ophthalmology office, a dermatology office. Across the parking lot was the old Social Security office. On the west side of that strip mall will be the HelpLink offices. So I'm very, very proud to have been a part of that, and it's something that this Community Collaborative has helped make possible. Thanks, Beth, for, for bringing that up.
If not, a close public comment. The order for this afternoon will be Facilities Management, the Sheriff's Department, Prosecuting Attorney, District Court, Central Dispatch, Michigan State Extension, and the Health Department. So with that, Danny?
You brought me stronger, Willie.
Good afternoon. Danny Brown, Facilities Director.
Janice Lane, Office Coordinator.
Mastermind.
Extraordinary.
There we go. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine, almost eleven years, and in that time, Facilities Management has never put on any additional staff. That'd be, except for two custodians. We did, because of the buildings that we've been service since that time, almost a hundred thousand square feet of buildings. That'd be the Public Service Building on Lefraneer, the Hall of Justice, and the Woodmere LEC, Law Enforcement Center. No additional staff has been put on, and we absorbed those buildings. And lo and behold, at the Ways and Means meeting that's coming up, we may have another building, and that would be the Marine Patrol Building for the sheriff. And then we are working on looking at down the road, perhaps maybe putting on an addition onto the Health Department. And again, we did not put on any additional staff to cover this load. And I was asked to reduce my budget by seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, or a twenty-one point one seven percent of the total budget. In order to accommodate that, I had to, well, we had to do a lot of solace, number one, to get there. And I'm looking at laying off some folks. That would be six custodians and four skilled tradesmen. Also, there's some material reductions involved there. There is our five-year plan. That's our plan to put in new, whatever it is, air conditioners, it could be anything. We cut that completely out, and I just hope that we don't have to make these reductions. It's going to cause a lot of hardships on the rest of the staff that would have to make up that void.
If I could add, just briefly, remember, please, remember that the facilities budget was also impacted, I've told you several times, by the fact that the budget to operate all these buildings, utilities, lights, everything that's involved with all the buildings that support all the other departments, was lumped under the Facilities Department when the allocation was made. And so, from my perspective, this was one of those inequities that I hope you will look at when you look at reinstating things. I'm, I'm not sure of the numbers, but I think, Danny, you have a total of, right now, twenty-six employees or so?
Yeah, yeah, thirty-nine.
And, I mean, the impact on this department, we're talking about a department of twenty-six employees that runs the whole, runs all the buildings, and we're talking about taking ten of those twenty-six away. You know, that's forty percent of the staff that we're cutting out of this department with no reduction in, in the buildings. And so, it's a pretty significant cut, and I agree with Danny about that.
Quick question here. If, if the guideline was to have each department recommend the possibility, ten percent in terms of range of reductions to see what the impact was, how did they end up getting twenty-one percent?
Well, again, remember, that's an average, and the average is based on, you know, all of our departments collectively. But some departments have, like the Treasury, for example, has revenues to cover their whole expense. Another department, like Registered Deets, has revenue to cover their whole expense. So their reduction was zero. Some departments' reductions had to be twenty to get an average of ten. Did I answer your question?
Well, I thought the guideline for, was for every department to come in and say, if we had to cut ten percent, this was the impact.
Nope. No, the guideline was, you told me, no fund balance, be conservative on revenues, and, and then balance the budget based on that. And that's how we developed the formula, and it was all based on the revenue available, and then it was spread across the departments. What we told you was, it was about an average of a ten percent reduction. But no, some departments had large reductions, some departments had small reductions. It was one of the inequities in the formula.
That's right.
Okay.
Had to do with general fund allocation.
Exactly.
Yep. All right.
How are, how are indirect costs figured in terms of general fund allocation?
The indirect cost revenue, a large portion of that does come back under the facilities budget. That was, those revenues were given credit towards, they added to the allocation for facilities and the facilities fund. It was a revenue that was directly attributable back to Facilities Management, because it covers not only their personnel costs, but also the, a, a good portion of the expenditures that are in Fund 471, the county facilities fund. That revenue was nine hundred.
Light, light utilities.
Yeah.
So utility costs are charged back to the individual departments that are occupying the building.
A portion, we, we, we do not recover full cost, but where we can, the indirect cost recovery is about nine hundred and fifty thousand. And that was revenue that was directly included in, you know, the, the funds that were allocated back to the general fund department and the appropriation to the facilities fund.
Danny, am I interrupting any presentation or anything, or just go ahead with questions?
No, I, I was actually done.
Oh, okay. Can you go through a little bit some of the staffing changes that you're talking about and how they are, how we're still going to provide services, how it's going to impact it? I mean, I see you've got here thirty-eight point five percent rejection in your staff. You go over some skilled labor, you go over grounds maintenance and custodial. So if you kind of, kind of go through those three topics and talk, for example, when you talk about the custodial staff from eleven to five, tell me how, how you're, how you're going to be doing this. Subcontracting out, I know, but, you know, how often will the buildings be cleaned? And, and you still have five employees, where will they be at? And kind of relate it back to the organizational chart that you've given us.
Okay.
And before Danny does that, I just want to point out for information, many of, Danny and Janice went into a great deal more detail in some of the questions and answers sections that was passed out to you the first night at the request of a Commissioner. So there's some impact detail there that you might, that I'm sure you've read, but you might want to refer to as you go through the deliberations. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, as far as the custodial staff is concerned, we took a hard look at what each individual does and where they do it. Of course, these, these reductions in staff is directly related to, you know, how, their terms in service, how long they've been here. So we started at the bottom and worked up.
So currently, give me a snapshot of now, and then how it looks after. So currently you have-
Well, how it looks is the, this building, for an example, the Lefraneer Building, the Health Department Building, Front Street Building will all be done outsourced. The buildings that will not be will be the Police Department, the Courts, both the Historic and the Hall of Justice, the Prosecutors. That's the way it'll look after this. Civic Center, yeah, and the Civic Center in the daytime, that's a daytime custodial job.
Three, now you have twelve.
Right.
And you'll go down to, actually, it said eleven.
There's eleven.
Twelve? You have eleven or twelve, or one's the supervisor, you're not counting.
That's, that's correct.
So you have eleven plus a supervisor. So keep it, you'll still be doing the police, the courts, the prosecutors, Civic Center during the day. So you'll be keeping five.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And-
What about the Civic Center?
Civic Center-
It's part of it.
At night. The daytime position has been recommended to be reduced.
There's two different shifts there. There's a midnight shift. They work, they come in and work midnights, because that's when they can get to the pool deck. We come in and sanitize it, and we also sanitize the locker rooms as well. That's why there's a daytime and a nighttime. And in the daytime shift, you know, they just do regular custodial work throughout the buildings. As far as the grounds maintenance, we would be recommending one for a layoff, and in order to make up that difference, it's just going to put a strain on the other three. It's just as simple as that. We do all of the striping on all the ball fields in the summertime. Of course, we do all the mowing, too. And, and the winter, of course, it's mainly snow removal and stuff like that, and shoveling. We also use the Pugsley Crew. That Pugsley Crew is not stable, say the least. They, they will not sign a new, the contract's up, up in September, end of September, and they will not sign a contract. It's going to be like a day-by-day thing. That's going to really hurt us, because they do probably, I don't know, seventy percent of the mowing?
How many Pugsley people do you use?
We use, we get between six and eight every day.
Four days a week?
Four days, yeah.
About three or four years ago, when we lost the Pugsley Crew, we put together a proposal on what it would cost us to contract or replace that lost labor. I don't have that number before me, Dan, and I know it's one of the things they've asked for, but my recollection is it was around thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about that number.
Who supervises the Pugsley Crew? Do they send someone with them?
Yes.
Okay.
And that number was just for lawn care?
Right, right. Yes, Pugsley Crew does a lot of things for us. They dig ditches and, you know, stuff like that.
But I just want to be clear, there's a, there is a state officer that supervises.
That's correct.
Okay.
Danny, that being said, this isn't an unusual situation, because over the last few years, the state has never offered us that contract until after they adopt their budget, which is in October.
Right.
So it's, it's very typical for us to be in September and being told that there will be no contract next year.
Right.
I think it, well, we're not sure what's going to happen. Quite frankly, we don't have an answer, and this budget doesn't in any way address the loss of the Pugsley Crew, quite honestly.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't. But in talking with Commissioner Enman, who's been in touch with, I think, the Director of the Department of Corrections, it seems like this year it may be more real-
Right.
-than what we've heard in the past. So whether, you know, we, we hear that kind of thing, but it seems like there's, there's, that this is more likely to happen than in the past, so we'll see.
I had a question about the custodial staff. The overall savings by laying off the six, the six custodians and, you know, hiring a private company to do that is estimated at sixty thousand dollars. Is that correct, roughly?
The cost, the put-back cost?
No, the savings.
The savings by, by laying off those six individuals.
Yeah, it is about sixty thousand, yes.
Okay.
But that's a, that's a real broad estimate. We are, I mean, I have the RFPs out there right now for this work, and I'll have some good numbers. Let's see, it's the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
On, on September twenty-eighth is the, is the, is when you'll be opening the-
That's the bid date, yes.
Okay. But yeah, just a few months ago, we added a custodial supervisor?
That person took the place of a person that resigned, a custodian that resigned, so it wasn't an add-on.
It was an upgrade of the position. We took one of the regular custodial positions and we upgraded it to a supervisor, because for years while we've been running this, other than spot checks by some of us in the building, there has been no supervisor, supervision over those employees, direct supervision.
But was there, was there, was there some, you know, some realization of a problem that, that prompted the need for a supervisor?
Well, we had a problem about four or five years ago, where I think we, didn't we discharge the whole staff?
Right. That was about ten or eleven years.
So, yes, there was.
It says a lot longer than four or five.
Not all of them?
It was not the whole staff, it was the majority of the staff.
Majority of them. And that primarily was our responsibility, because we had no one supervising them on a regular basis. I mean, obviously, they were doing things they shouldn't, but they weren't getting any supervision. You recall when we put in the supervisor, the other thing that Danny said was, was, in his opinion, critical, and I agreed with him, is that there was no one inventorying or watching the use of supplies and equipment to make sure that we were doing it as efficiently as we can. And I think you're, we only had this for, what, six months or so, and so you're just kind of getting an idea of how that will help. But yeah, that was the thing. And, and then the supervisor does some of the work, some minimal amount of work, when there are vacancies or someone's off on vacation. We actually have a grievance over that now.
But it seems that if you eliminated one position, you'd get, you know, you'd get close to your sixty thousand dollar savings, and I've heard a lot of concern about whether, you know, hiring a company is going to provide the same level of service that, you know, that you are getting. I mean, you don't, I mean, you didn't really see a problem when you put on the supervisor.
We didn't see a-
You, you had the problem four to five years ago, or more.
No, no, much, much longer than four or five.
More than five years ago. And what the point Ross is trying to make is, but yet you only filled the supervisor position in the past six months.
That's the-
So there wasn't an impending problem recently that-
No, no, there was every year. We've asked for that position every year, and every year I've denied it because of the budget situation. This time, Danny came back and said, Dennis, we've asked for a new position, and every year it's been denied. This year, Danny came back and said, I know I can't get an extra position, but if I took one of the existing positions and upgraded it, would you allow that to happen? Financially, it was a very small financial impact, so that's the way we went.
And was it a vacant, it was a vacant position?
Yes, somebody left a regular custodial position, and we upgraded it.
Okay, how long had that been vacant?
Six months.
Yeah, maybe the total of the transition to a supervisory position.
Six or seven.
Yeah, because it was, that was when we made the decision, and then we went through the process. We had to get it evaluated by HR, go through the whole thing, and then post and advertise and do those things.
Okay, and then I guess my question to follow up to that would be, is, did the building still get cleaned during the six months that you were down a custodian?
Yes.
Okay. So rather than change the entire way of doing things, is it possible that you could lay off one custodian, come close to the sixty thousand dollar savings that we're talking about, by turning everything upside down on its head?
I would say yes.
Okay.
You won't get quite sixty thousand dollars based on laying off the lowest seniority custodian.
Right. Although you would get closer if you laid off the supervisor, but if you feel you need the supervisor, you could, you know, leave the supervisor there. I'm just, I'm just trying to find another way, you know, another way out of the thing. I mean, your, your initial point about being unfairly hit with a large chunk of the budget cuts that we're looking at is absolutely accurate, and we're still struggling with that, honestly. We haven't come to any resolution. It's been freely admitted, freely admitted by Dennis and Dean that, you know, the end result was not the fairest in the world, but we still haven't, we still haven't found another path out at this point. But, you know, it's early, it's early in the process.
Okay.
I just want, I want to make sure, you know, I want to make sure, what you're saying, the question asked of you was, you will be able to take care of these buildings, if, if the decision is made to keep your custodial staff, but reduce it by one, you will be able to take care of these buildings. That's the question, correct? Commissioner?
That's the question.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure. Your answer is yes, you can do that.
More specifically, right now, the, the buildings, other than the ones that you mentioned, would still be serviced by staff. This building, you know, Front Street Building, they're, they're cleaned every night, correct?
That's correct.
When you looked at subcontracting it out, was that every evening?
Yes.
Does it need to be done every evening, or is three times a week appropriate?
Well, a lot of people think so. I mean, we get-
A lot of public traffic.
Yeah, we get a lot of traffic through these buildings, particularly in the wintertime, salt tracked in and all that, so we vacuum every night, take care of all the trash, you know, the normal stuff.
Okay. So the total amount that you were requesting reductions was seven hundred and forty-eight, three forty-three, right?
That's-
And you came up with, is that six seventy-three, four fifty-eight?
No, I'm, no, no.
I'm looking at this page right here.
You know, that means the first page.
Like third page in the budget book, under facilities?
That's the first page in the budget book.
I'm trying-
That, seven, seven forty-eight is the amount of money that he proposed in the actual reductions. That was not the number that was given to him. He didn't, was not able to accomplish the number that was given to him to cut.
Okay, what was the number given to him?
We have to add a couple of numbers, so just, if you'd give us a second.
While, while they're doing that, Danny, you were talking about the reduction in the, you know, the capital expenditures. This is, this is separate from our capital improvement budget, correct? Our, our capital improvement fund? This is like a small capital improvement fund that, that you maintain for, you know, specifically building mechanicals?
That's, that's correct. Well, it, let me clarify, this capital improvement fund is separate, you're right. In, in this year, it's small, the last couple of years it's been small, but it has been as high as almost a million dollars about four years ago, when we were in the, in the real grind of getting everything brought up to speed. So I just wanted to clarify that one point.
Okay, so the reason it's smaller now is that we did take care of a lot of, of a lot of the maintenance issues and-
And we've deferred a lot, because we haven't had the revenue to do them.
Okay. So what, and again, because it's all split in all these little pieces, do you, do you have an overall number of, of what that, what that budget is for, for this year, and then what's being proposed for next year?
The capital plan?
Yeah.
Budget number?
Yeah.
I don't have it with me, but I can certainly get it for you.
Okay.
Danny, for the twelve years I've been sitting here, every year of budget time, we have discussion about whether or not we, we have the right number of janitors right under custodians, because, you know, we assign them to buildings. Well, that person that's at the building, can they get that building done in two-thirds of the night, or what do they do the other third, you know?
That's what a supervisor's for.
You know, but we've had that discussion over and over and over, and, you know, I guess the, one of the questions, you know, and, and as you know, you know, we've had the discussion about whether we should be contracting janitorial service for as long as I've been here, and I've been here twelve years. So this isn't a new discussion, you know? It, it, it's a discussion that we have to have, and we, we have it every year. And, you know, I'm still not completely convinced that contracting it is better, but I'm certainly not convinced that it's wrong either. So, you know, I, I guess I'd really like to know, you know, from you, do you believe that contracting it will get us better service or more efficient service? I guess more efficient service would be the question.
I don't really know the answer to that. I suppose it's, it's just a question of how good the company is that we would hire.
Well, I think it's also a question of cost, cost benefit. You know, unfortunately, the way we did, you know, we waited on this bid until we got the budget put together. If I knew the answer to what the bid is going to come in at, and we check the references of how good a work they do, I mean, if that bid comes in at sixty thousand dollar savings, we know, and then we can compare. If it comes in at twenty savings, that's another number. If it comes in at a hundred thousand in savings, it's all a matter of, it's all a question of, of cost benefit. And, and until we get that answer, it's really difficult to say. But I think from my past experience of both contracting custodial services, not here, but in another location, and having it done by staff, there's, there's greater attention to detail and better cleaning done by staff. That's been my experience, because, you know, they have, they get to know the people, it's one-on-one, you know, they say, I, I need this done, I need that done. So the level of cleaning, I think, gets better. But that's just a generalization from my limited experience with contracting it out. The only way you're really going to know that is, as Danny said, you do it for six months and you see how it works. months and you see how it works. And if you save enough money, it's certainly sometimes worth the, worth the, worth the attempt.
Danny, when you stated that an employee quit, a custodian?
Yes.
And instead of replacing that custodian, you elevated another custodian already on the staff to the supervisor's level?
No. Excuse me. We went out and did the regular, we advertised it in the paper for the position, and we interviewed six or seven people for that position.
Our current custodians were invited to apply, and if they met the criteria, they were able to be interviewed as well.
So we, we added a, a body to replace the one that had left?
That's correct.
Okay. Another question I have is, and a, and a real concern, and I think you share that concern, is the reduction of staff on your electrician, your HVAC, your plumbing. And I, I presume those people are licensed? It's a licensed electrician?
Yes, that's correct. He's a master.
Okay, and licensed plumber?
He's a licensed plumber. He's a journeyman.
Okay.
And Butch, or says, Butch, the other person, is an HVAC specialist. He used to be an inspector for the county. These are...
Anyway, these, these people are, are people that probably by statute can't be substituted with somebody that has some electrical experience in, say, in an emergency.
Not really.
And what my real concern is, is the sheriff's department, for example, has a problem, electrical problem some evening.
Okay.
Happens to be a holiday evening. And Captain Hall gives you a call and says, we really got a problem here. You know, three-quarters of my jail is, is black and it's not incoming or something internal. At the same time, you get a call from Central same evening, and they've got a catastrophe and a plumbing issue.
That happens.
If these people are gone, I would think that your only avenue would be to call outside...
A contractor.
Mm-hmm.
Call a contractor.
And to get a contractor on a holiday weekend or any weekend probably is a little difficult, isn't it?
It is, and not, not only that, they would, they would want that person to be background checked as well, if they're going to work in that jail.
Oh, I never thought about that one.
So...
Never thought about that one.
So you just can't, I just can't call up somebody and say, you know, hey, I got a massive plumbing leak, which happened two weeks ago. And within a half an hour, twenty minutes, I think it was, we had four, four of my staff was there. Two of them were HVAC guys, and Jason, the plumber, he was there as well. And it was a real problem. I mean, we had affluence coming down through the ceiling.
And that was just one incident, correct?
It was, it was in early August, and, and of the four responding, three of them are recommended for layoff.
Right, and, and that's the point I'm getting at. And, and that's just one incident, correct?
That's one incident.
And it happened to be a plumbing situation. And I'm sure, as you know by your position, you get into electrical sometimes, it's not quite as simple as...
No.
The plumbing, you know, the plumbing generally you can say, ah, I got a leak. So I think your recommendation was, or request was, not to lay off any of those people.
Any of those people.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be a burden on the other, the remaining staff, actually.
But, but in an emergency, it's more than a burden because you've got to reduce.
It is, yes.
And, and even if you could get a contractor in here, which might be hard to do at a moment's notice, like you said earlier, Captain Hall probably isn't going to want every Tom Dick and Harry running around in his jail.
And there's procedures to follow as well, with tools and whatnot, so...
Right. So the, the plumber assigned to the jail?
Yes.
I mean, does he ever work outside the jail?
Yeah, occasionally.
I mean, if you needed an extra plumber on another job, he, he is available for...
Yeah, he can be available.
Okay, but generally, he stays busy forty hours a week?
Thirty-seven and a half, but yes.
Thirty-seven and a half?
Extremely busy.
Really?
But he does other things.
We rarely have anyone shove a sheet down the toilet at the civic center, but we have it at the jail on a regular basis.
Every weekend.
Yeah.
Seems like.
I mean, is that what a lot of it is, is basic...
A lot of it, mhm.
In-house...
Plugged up toilets and whatnot.
I mean, you are dealing with a, someplace that's housing 190 people plus staff, so...
That's correct, and there's a lot of plumbing issues over there. That building is old, and it's made out of cast iron, not plastic. And some of that cast iron, that's exactly what happened this, two weeks ago, is what it just disintegrated. Particularly when they put whatever it was, I don't remember, what, what was it? I don't remember what it was, it was down there, it was a towel or something.
It was multiple hand towels that were wrapped up.
Yeah.
Oh, you tied them together so he could escape.
To the sewer.
To the sewer.
We've had salt shakers, we've had all kinds of problems, so...
And it always happens at four o'clock on Sunday. I don't know why that is. That's when I get the call.
Yeah, really. Normally, it happens on a weekend.
Yep.
Dan, are you doing...
Well, actually, what I was going to say is, we asked Dean for some information a long time ago, and I think he's found it.
I have it. If, if you're in the facilities tab in your budget binder, I'm going to explain this briefly. The first pages that you have, and this is the budget worksheet, which is behind the summary from Danny and Janice. Two, six, five is the facilities management department and the general fund. This is the cost center where the employees are paid from, and it has, you know, the various expenditure line items. But if you go to the last page, behind the budget worksheets...
So you're talking about the very last...
Budget issues, I see.
The very last page of the facilities section?
Right, but you have to look at two, six, five expenditures. It's about four pages in. There's an expenditure total, it says department total, and it has, down at the bottom, two thou, the first column is 2009 actual, 1,518. Okay, department, two, six, five.
Yeah.
Let me, let me give you some numbers real quick. The budget for 2010 was 1,596,508. Just to give you a reference point, the recommended budget for 2011 is 1,143,571. That's a difference of 453,937. If you flip then all the way to the back of the budget worksheets, the other fund that Danny and Janice are presenting information on today is the county facilities fund, which has all of the various facilities and parks that are maintained. And Fund 471 includes all of the utility, maintenance costs, and any capital improvements. So it, it's going to be, it, it's a different cost, but if you go to the last page, it will give you the total. And again, the 2010 budget amount was 1,788,086. Everybody with me?
Mhm.
And you can see the recommended column is 1,477,350.
Yeah, okay.
So the cut that, just the reduction from the current budget in 2010 to the recommended budget next year is 763,673, which is very close to what Danny has on his summary. And, and keep in mind that, that is a significant cut of, the facilities fund budget, 471, had a number of capital improvements as part of the five-year plan that were in the recommended amount, which we're not, you know, we're simply not able to do with the funding. But just to give you a, a reference compared to 2010, it, it does end up being, you know, a $760,000 reduction from the level that we're currently at.
My question is, where does the $200,000 that we would be estimating for subcontract services, where does that fall?
It would come back into, it, it wouldn't really matter, we would, my recommendation would be we put that back into two, six, five, the facilities management department and the general fund.
So we're actually then cutting 200,000 less out of this budget, more like 540?
Well, you're asking me two things. It, it's not in the budget that you have here.
I did it all in one question.
What's that?
I did it all in one question.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
The, of the amount that was cut out of the budget, that did not, I mean, we have to go back in and put in another $200,000 into this budget.
That's correct.
So we're not really cutting out like the 750, we're more, the budget's going to be only like 550 less, right?
Well, I was thinking about that question earlier. No, if you look on Danny's first page that he submitted, he shows part of that cut, that 768, I believe, as being $60,000, the net savings between the six employees and the contract, correct? Is that correct, Janice?
That is.
So, and that's part of the 768, Commissioner. So, in effect, he's only showed a net savings of that of the 60,000. We underbudgeted the rest of it by 200,000. In other words, if he would have shown that as 268, then what you said would be correct. But he only showed it at 60. It's just a, it's a budgeting, budgeting issue. We're 200,000 short, so...
But what are the numbers in the budget worksheet based on? They're, they're not based on that $200,000.
That's correct.
But they are based on removing the, the six custodians, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So if, but here's what I'm saying. If we would have shown the $200,000 in the regular budget, that page that shows 768 would have, still showed 768, because that was the amount of reduction that he made.
Yeah, it wouldn't have, sure, sure it would have stayed, yeah.
It would have stayed the same.
But in general, what we're saying though, the, the whole budget is not shrinking by as much, I mean...
The budget is shrinking by 768, because he only showed, out of a $260,000 savings, rough numbers, for custodial services, he showed that that was going to save 60,000. We just didn't put the 200 in the budget. So the 768 would still stay 768. The budget total would go up by 200,000. I know it's confusing, but I think that's correct. Do you agree?
But if, but if the budget total goes up by 200,000, and then you, you run all the numbers at the end, now you don't have a 700 and some thousand dollar savings.
Yep.
You have 200,000 dollars less in savings, unless you then turn around and trim the 200,000 dollars out from the other line items.
If you would take the current budget and add the 200,000 into it, okay?
All right.
And then you went back and compared that to last year's budget, it would be down 768,000.
Okay. You're talking about, now you're talking about line, well, the combination of two, sixty-five and four, seventy-one.
The total. Total, compared. Yes, yes, yes.
The other...
It's confusing, but...
And the other confusing item here is when you look at one budget, 2010 to 2011, the change in the numbers, you also have to realize that for personnel expenditures, there's an increase that's built in for, you know...
General increases.
General increases, the cost of living adjustment. And that's all been figured into 2011. So it's hard to just compare the difference from one year to the, to the next and say that's the, the net amount that they cut, because there were increases that are automatically built in. And we can give you all of that detail, but you'd, you'd be overwhelmed with it.
We're already pretty overwhelmed with that detail.
I had a couple of other questions that Larry had brought up. When you're looking at your skilled trades, how many electrical do you have?
We currently have two.
Two. And HVAC, do you have two?
Two, mhm.
And plumbing?
One.
One, okay. So you have a total of five?
Plus a locksmith.
Yeah.
Plus a locksmith, okay.
And two carpentry.
And two carpentry. And just review for me again, which, you're taking about laying off one electrician?
Correct.
One HVAC?
Yes.
Plumbing?
Bummer.
And what about the locksmith and the carpenters?
No, that would be a grounds maintenance personnel.
Okay, all right. So if you have an HVAC problem, you still do have one person on staff?
Yes.
If you have an electrical problem, you still have one person on staff?
Right.
If you have a plumbing issue, do you still have one person on staff?
No.
Okay. The other thing, this came up the other day when we met with the jail, and I'm, can I ask Captain Hall a little question? Can you tell me a little bit about, because it sounds to me like, if I'm looking at this, I'm thinking plumbing at the jail for the whole week? But you commented, you brought up to Chris and I about, you know, the age of the jail and the care of the jail and some of the upkeep. And I was just wondering if you could comment on that.
Come up to the podium. See, I knew I'd get you to use that podium.
I'm Captain Hall, I'm the jail administrator. To answer your question, this building, unlike any of the other buildings in the county, is used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You put a piece of carpeting in that building and people are walking on it all the time. It will wear out at a rate greater than three times faster than any other building that this county has. Same with the plumbing. Plus, we have, as you heard earlier, we have some clientele that like to misuse the plumbing, which adds a bigger strain to an already antiquated building. We have plumbing issues almost every day. Either shower heads go out, drains stop up, drains explode. We have raw sewage sometimes that, we've got to jump on that real quick and take care of the problem before it becomes a real serious issue. But Jason, the worker that works over in the jail, does a lot more than just plumbing. If you remember, Danny's, didn't list the jail as far as the custodial. That's because we use inmate labor, which their worker supervises our inmate labor, whether it's stripping wax off the floors and re-waxing, shampooing carpets, vacuuming, emptying trash. They do that all day long, under the supervision of his worker. His worker also helps work on locks on the doors that fail every day. We have some that are failed now, waiting parts. That's a real critical issue when you have a jail that a door either doesn't lock or it won't unlock. He changes light bulbs, we have electrical issues that happen every day. The worker that we have over in the jail, I don't know how we'd get along without him. The, the whole place would come crumbling down or back up. Did that answer what you were...
You know, I, I have to disclose the, the employee that you're talking about, I have met twice through scouting. They, they have a child that's in my child scout troop. I've only met, met him twice at scouting events. I don't know him personally. But I can tell you, when my husband came home and said, oh, I met someone that works for the county through scouts, that's newest scouts this year. I said, that's nice, what do they do for the county? He said, they're a plumber at the jail. I said, we have a plumber at the jail, full-time? Why do we have a plumber at the jail full-time? I mean, it sounds a little different. And so I had asked a, a couple of questions and found out, and then when we went to talk with, when Chris and I went over to the jail to talk about it, I think it was Captain Hall or, or Lieutenant brought up on their own, you know what, this, this is a position where it's important to keep up the facility because of the age of it. And we're not exactly in a position to go and build a new jail, so it's of the utmost importance to keep the antiquated one. And anyone who doesn't believe it's antiquated, I encourage to take...
If you want to make that motion, I'd, I'd...
To her.
The Center Core of that building was built in 1964, '65. So you're looking at a forty-some-year-old facility that is aging at three times the pace of any other building. We're, we're functioning in a building that's essentially a hundred-some-year-old building to Central Core.
And I guess the point I was trying to make is, when I first heard that, I was kind of like, what do you, what do you mean, we have these positions there full-time? And then the more people, I asked questions, and then it was brought up un, unrequested when we met, I was like, wow. So that's, that's obviously concerning. I was like, "Wow." So, that's obviously concerning. I would also echo Russ Richardson's comments about, you know, if we're saving 60,000, perhaps we should really look at, I'm more interested in why we just went ahead and put in someone in the supervisory position in a position that was vacant for six months. And I would like us to take a little bit closer look at that and see, did we really have any problems with the maintenance of the facilities during that time?
Dean, do you have the budget numbers for 2009 for 265 and 471 departmental?
The...
I know I have the actual expenditure.
2009 actual is...
I know, I understand that, but do you remember what was budgeted? And the reason, and let me say, the reason I'm asking the question is, I'm doing projections based on year-to-date expenditures. I guess, my first question to Danny is, are the expenditures fairly even throughout the year? I mean, you don't have a big spike in the fall or anything like that?
No, they're not.
Okay. Because based on my projections in those two line items, I'm guessing that between the two, we're gonna be about $500,000 under what was budgeted for this year.
How much?
$500,000, more or less.
What line items, please?
Well, you're looking at the total, but I guess I would caution that the majority of the budget is personnel for 265. You're looking at 101-265?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the grand total at the end of the year. I'm just saying, how much money have we been spending? You know, you, and how I did this, because we're looking at a year-to-date expenditure as of August 15th. So, I go back to July 31, which helps to account for the fact that we're always, you know, a week or two behind on payroll. And I say, "Okay, like, let's take 471. We spent $871,892 so far. If you say that's seven months' worth of spending and extrapolate it to 12 months, you get 1.494 million, which is almost 300,000 below what's budgeted."
I'd be more than happy...
I know you won't do this, Dean. I understand.
I'm not sure I even follow where you're at.
We're looking at the number that's budgeted as 1,596,508.
Did I go down the wrong line at the end here?
I don't know. If you're looking at 471, the facilities fund, there could be significant...
Which fund are you looking at, Commissioner? Up in the left-hand corner.
I'm looking at 471, it's very, very bad.
This is, this is a whole...
Which comes under the Boardman Dan.
Whole difference.
Am I too far along?
No, that's the county facilities fund, and that has all of the parks and all of the various facilities. There could be a number of projects that we have not started.
Remember, this has projects in it.
This is not personnel. This is utility costs. Some of our highest utility costs are in the fall, early winter. So, it's not a straight, this is not a, you know, divide by seven months and extrapolate.
When Danny asked you that, when you asked Danny that question, I think Danny, as I was, was thinking of personnel costs across the year. They're pretty even. But in that budget, this is primarily our project budget and our utility budget. So, that's gonna not be even across the year.
Okay, well then, let's go back to facilities management totals.
Well, no, wait. First, let's look at that, Commissioner.
Okay.
If you look at it, look at 2009. The actual expenditure in 2009 was 2,155,000.
Right, what was budgeted?
I don't know, but what I'm saying is this year, it's only budgeted at 1,788. It's actually budgeted at a couple hundred, at 300,000 or 400,000 less.
I understand that, but that's my question, is what was it budgeted at last year?
I can go upstairs and find out.
I mean, I have it in my other budget book at home, but I didn't...
Well, I guess my point is, I understand what you're saying, but my point is, last year, we actually spent 2,155. This year, we only budgeted 1,788, and we may be showing that we're gonna be spending at, you know, maybe 1,600,000 or something of that nature, but it depends on, that could be two or three projects that aren't completed yet.
Okay.
So, we'll have to look at that. But you wanted to look at the other one, so go back.
Well, let's go back to facilities management, then.
Okay.
Okay, the departmental total for, the budget for 2010, make sure I'm in the right place, is 1,596,508?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you take the 810-489 number and project it out to the end of the year, you end up with 1,389,409, or $207,000 under what's budgeted.
Okay.
So, I'm just, I'm posing the question, is are there some savings there that, you know, maybe we're not really...
There could be, but with payroll, we have a number of payrolls in December. Personal day payout, longevity pay, and it does, this budget is primarily personnel costs, so payroll doesn't quite flow evenly over, you know, 12 months. But I'll check that and see if I agree with your analysis.
And that's an important thing to remember through all these budgets, what Dean just mentioned. Remember, December is when people can, all those personal days, we talked about, how people have those. Those all get paid out in December.
But there are also, but there are also departmental budgets that project out above. I mean, if you take the numbers right now, we're actually above the, above where we should be spending a lot.
Yep, and that's not, you know, I mean, that happens every single year.
The 471 is also a reactionary budget when you have a major breakdown, so...
For example, in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna be hearing about the fact that we've developed a pretty serious mold problem on the first floor of the historic courthouse. If you went by there recently, you've seen they've dug up the whole south side of the building. We're now working with SHPO on, Dean doesn't even know this yet, but of course, he'll get the call where we're gonna get the money. We're working with SHPO now to find out if we can put up gutter, a gutter system. We're trying to control the mold. You know, we don't know how prices yet. We will in a few weeks, but it's an emergency thing. We think we're gonna have to retuck, point that whole south end of the building on the first floor at least. We're probably looking at 15,000, $20,000 expenditure that just kind of came up. And so, that's, I think, what Janice is saying. Some of those things, you know, we have to address when they happen, you know, so...
Do you know if it's toxic mold?
I don't know yet, Commissioner.
Most of it around here isn't.
It's not.
I heard on the radio that we don't have any around here.
That could be. Don't know. That was just an example.
We're bleaching it now.
I've, I gotta, the other day I come in and I made a silly suggestion. The more I think about it, I don't think it's so silly. And that is, you said that you clean everything every day. Well, the suggestion would be, for me, I've got a retired brother-in-law who started statistical quality control at General Motors. It's been a long time ago, 'cause he's old. But he likes to make charts. And you could keep track of, and it wouldn't take much effort, you could have your custodians do it. Keep track of the supplies that are used in every bathroom.
He is.
And if you see a place where the roll lasts three, a week or so, you don't have to clean that one every day.
Well, we, but we do. We sanitize them every day, all the restrooms.
Well, I suppose you got to be, you don't have to do a complete job of them.
We do the door handles and the faucets and the general stuff and the countertops and all that, so...
That was, that was what I was thinking about the other day. Why do we clean, because the one right, straight down from here, or the one down by Central Supply there, that's very seldom used on the basement.
Mhm, right.
Can I ask you a question? Why, you looked at subcontracting out the custodial work. The grounds maintenance, you didn't look at subcontracting out. What, what in particular about that made you not look at that?
Well, it's, the reason why we have a ground staff is winter time for the snow removal. Of course, we don't know what the weather's gonna do. And then we do the ball fields and the mowing of the Civic Center and other places. We do the tar trail mowing as well, along the edges. It's just control. When you have a staff like that, you can control what they do every day, where they go, what they're doing, what you want them to do. If it's a different way and you have a chart that says, "Do this much work," I'm talking about to a contractor, then I suppose you could do that, but you would be surprised at the things that we do, though. I mean, I wish I had the big, long list of stuff that we do every day.
Is mowing the tar trail that important?
Well, it is to some folks, I mean...
I didn't ask you that.
Well, we do it.
Commissioner Frandl, that goes back to earlier, when we didn't have the pugs of crew and we contracted out the lawn services. It actually proved to be more expensive, and there was a delay in the services compared to what the in-house staff can do.
And that's where I forgot, that's why your grounds maintenance is a smaller staff, is because you have that pugs of crew, too.
Right.
Okay, and the two carpenters, were any of those, were either of those slated for layoffs?
No.
Okay, so you'd have a hard time without two carpenters. I mean, one carpenter would be pretty taxed when...
He would be very taxed, yes.
You gotta have one to hold the board and one to cut it.
The, it just so happens that one of those carpenters is the person that used to work in the jail. So, if I lose a plumber, he's gonna have to move into that jail. That's unfortunate, but we gotta cover it, so...
If I could add one more thing, too. There's a safety issue here for the OSHA recommendations when you have the electrical crew and the HVAC crew, where you need a couple of people on the job.
Yes, and we use a lift. On the shows, there's about 20 shows average at the Civic Center. And we use a lift because you can't, there's no power in the floor. Obviously, it's a skating rink. So, we have to do it all overhead. Well, OSHA wants a spotter on the ground, watching the person that's in the lift. I mean, it's actually a regulation, so that's another reason why we have two electricians. But setting those shows is a task. Sometimes it takes us three days to do it.
Who sets the shows? Is that the grounds or custodial?
It's mostly the electrical.
Yes, electrical.
Oh, okay.
The custodial doesn't, isn't involved in setting the shows. Cleaning, but not setting.
Yeah.
Well, that's, my question was, you know, when we had the wellness luncheon?
Mhm, yes.
And afterwards, and I stayed around and was doing some stuff, and they were, you know, picking up all the tables and cleaning in there and stuff. Was that ground staff, custodial staff?
That's correct, yes, that's correct.
Both?
Both.
Yeah.
You know, we're such a small staff that, you know, everybody kinda helps with everything when you have those kinds of things.
My point was, is how do you subcontract out that? I mean, we have a luncheon, we have it, you know, you rent it out for this thing or that, to get that cleaned. I mean, that's not on your regular schedule. To me, it seems, you know, whether or not it saves money enough to do it, cost-benefit analysis on the building, that's one thing. You know that you have to sweep the third floor, the second floor, that sort of thing. But something that's kind of irregular like that...
Well, it happens to us all the time. There's a meeting room in that building as well, and that's rented out most of the time. It's occupied. And what we have to do is, the custodian goes in there with the help of the grounds crew people and sets the tables, 'cause the tables are so heavy. Well, you had experience with it. You know what they're like. So, we're constantly setting and resetting that room every day.
Danny, if there was one position that you had to keep, what would it be? If there's a position that you would let go, what would it be?
That's a real tough question.
I know. That's why I'm asking it.
Yeah. It's a tough question because it will...
No one is voluntarily saying, you know, "Gee, please cut me," so this will be helpful.
I suppose, and I don't mean any disrespect to anybody else of my staff.
I know, I know.
But...
But choices have to be made, so...
Yeah, the plumbing issue's big. You heard what Captain Hall had to say.
Mhm.
I fought for a long time to get a plumber in that position because it's 60% or so of all the work he does. And does it have to be a plumber? Maybe not. I mean, it hadn't been for all these years. But I think it's very important to have that plumber in that position.
So, that's the save?
Yes.
All right. And the other end, the other end.
The other end of that, you mean, who would I not save?
Position.
Position.
I'm not talking people, position. Lawn, mowing, cleaning, scrubbing, position.
Well...
It's not the office coordinator.
You got over your jitters, didn't you?
We've already established nothing to get done without the office coordinator.
Again, it's another tough question.
Danny's as afraid of her as I am.
Come on, you know. What position? If you had to eliminate one, what would it be?
I guess it would be a grounds person.
Thank you.
Danny? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a reason that we're not presently contracting for electricians, HVAC, and plumbers now?
Yeah, it's because we need the control over it, and we need the accessibility to get in places like the jail. Well, and I think in the questions that he answered to the commissioners that you all have a copy of, there was one of them, it was $71 an hour to hire. It's much cheaper to do it in-house, frankly, for the amount of work. If we only had an electrician working two hours a day, it would be cheaper to hire it out, but that's not the case. So, I think that's the other side of the answer.
And consequently here, he's talking about cutting an electrician, cutting an HVAC. And I would think, if you put that out for bid, it would probably be far more expensive than what we're presently paying. And we have total control right now, correct?
Right, exactly. Well, understand, I mean, he was asked, "What's the most important and what's the least important?" You know, I think Danny's telling you, they're all very important, but, and, but, you know, he was asked a specific question. I don't think his, he, I don't think Danny will feel that he can do the work in this budget, and I'm sorry to speak for you, Danny, but I'm basing this on our conversation, at least without the, three of those four skilled positions and perhaps all of them. But I wanna make sure I'm clear on that, Danny, 'cause you gave a different answer than you gave me when I asked you this question. The question that Commissioner Max Bauer asked, you said the plumber, which you told me, most critical, but you said the groundskeeper, least critical, and I wanna make sure that that's your answer, that this is like that, what's your answer? You know, your final answer?
Final question.
Your final answer?
Final answer.
Are you saying that the groundskeeper, in terms of its all, its relevance, is less important than the custodial staff? That's what I, I wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Me, too. Thank you, Dennis.
Well, I wasn't thinking about the custodial staff when you asked me that question.
That's what I was afraid of.
I wasn't thinking about it that way. Then, yes, it would be. I'm sorry. I'll take it back. It would be a custodial.
That's not me, you know, trying to get an answer out of him.
No, and I know, but I do...
In our conversation, it was custodial staff.
Thank you, because I do want this clarified, you know. I, you know, we're talking about keeps, we're talking about eliminations. I wanna know, and I asked Judge Stowe this yesterday, you know, what's the most important thing? So, I've heard from Danny, the most important thing from him is the plumber. I heard moments ago that if you had to cut, because, you know, and the board may decide not to cut anything, and we'll go 2.4 million dollars into the fund balance or whatever it is. I don't know that. But, you know, if you had to cut something, and just about, well, what would it be?
Well, it would be custodial. See, what Danny was saying earlier was, of the four positions other than custodial, groundskeeper was the, was the, in the rank, the lowest. Plumber was the highest. Custodial came after that.
Okay.
Okay, well, let me expound on your question, your answer there, just to make it a little tougher. You answered custodial staff. We weigh the two options for me between subcontracting out the custodial work and the other alternative, which would be laying off enough that would be the savings, the anticipated savings of 60,000, and doing it in-house.
So, the question is...
Subcontracting or reaching the same savings by laying off some portion of the...
Yep, so subcontracting or having, keeping custodial staff, but maybe one or two less.
Kind of like, let's make a deal.
Right.
Yes.
And I don't mean to sound funny about it, but, you know...
No, but you're right.
It's a decision tree, you know?
It's a legitimate question, that's, well...
Go ahead.
Obviously, I would rather have the control, so...
Okay.
Because once, once you lose control over these things...
I'm assuming you mean by control, not control of the contract, but control of personnel?
That's correct. Keep the personnel. Even if it's two less?
Yes.
Okay, and you can get the work done. That's what they need to know. They're basing it on your comments, so you gotta be able to tell them, "I'll get the work done."
Well, and if we make that decision, you have to be able to take that money and perform those services with your staff.
Exactly.
I mean, that's your job.
Which, Danny, and I think Commissioners brought that up earlier, and I thought it was a good point. You know, maybe we need, if we're gonna have less staff, but we're gonna continue to maintain the staff, maybe we have to change the way we clean. You know, maybe the offices have to collect the garbage and put it out in the hallway, or the recycling out in the hallway. Maybe there's some things we could do to cut down the amount of time it takes the present staff so that you could lose one or two and still be able to get the work done. And that's really the question you have to answer for this board. Could you do it with less people? And is that more important to you than trying to have the same level with contracting? It's a tough question, but it's one they need to know.
Yeah, it is a tough question.
And if I could just go back a minute to the electrician plumber, the, you know, the, what I'm roughly lumping in is...
lumping in is the tradespeople. Is there any increase in the budget for contracting to compensate for not having these individuals on staff?
No. No.
So, so in a situation where, because of an emergency or whatever, we need to go out and hire somebody that would, something that would have been done in-house before, that's not covered by the budget?
No, there are some contractual maintenance line items that we have for those kinds of emergencies, but my guess would be, there wouldn't be enough money in them to cover the need...
But you haven't increased them, you haven't said, gee, we have less, less of these folks working, so we better bump up that line.
No, in light of this budget situation, we did not. You're right.
Really?
No. You know, and in most, in most cases, like I said, there are pots of money for maintenance and that kind of thing, that we would call on first, but in most cases, in a lot of cases, what it's going to mean is, something that, you know, we put in work orders. We need to get this done. If they're an emergency, they come to the top of the pile. If they don't, they get done in the order that they're submitted, or we can get to them. So, it means, I put in a work order to have something in my office fixed, instead of it taking six days, it takes 12 days. That's, that's the best we can do. I mean, you know, this is a huge cut.
Danny, Dennison's your immediate supervisor, is that correct?
That's right.
And Dennis, I presume, holds you accountable for all the duties under your direction, is that correct?
That's correct.
If you had a preference on the accountability issue, would it be to have your own employees, or to have contracted employees?
Our own employees.
Larry?
Just want to let you know, my previous employer kind of went through the same dialogue, in terms of, you know, things that they needed to reduce, um...
Did she ever work?
Just when I showed up. But, the point of the matter is that they went through the same discussion about, we're having here today, is that, you know, can you live with lower service, and can you, you know, would you save money, and would the quality be there for contracting out? Until you contract out, you'll never know the quality difference, you know, depending on the company or not. But, what the bank did was, they just went, they just made a decision. We're picking trash up out of the offices, um, every other day, and, you know, on Monday night, and Wednesday night, and Friday night. And they had baskets big enough where we could fill them up. It was not an inconvenience, it was something that we just lived with, and it saved a tremendous amount of costs throughout the franchise, where you're not doing it on a Tuesday and a Thursday, and I think we can live with that. I'm just throwing it out.
I'll definitely think through that, because...
Have you got anything else that you want to bring up?
No.
We're starting to chase our tails here.
Right, yeah.
And we've got a lot to do this afternoon, so...
I do have one other thing to add, though. In regards to the custodial staff, this building is a prime example where you have meetings that go really late, and as far as building security, to have people who are familiar with the layout and the people coming and going every day is a benefit. Whether it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, or broken down even less, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good job, James.
We're going to change the program. Drop down to Michigan State Extension. The sheriff was kind enough to let you go ahead of him.
Thank you, and yes, the sheriff and undersheriff were very kind. I don't think my presentation will be very long, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you. My name is Patrick Cudney, I'm the district coordinator for Michigan State University Extension, working across the nine counties of Manistee up to Sheboygan. Just wanted to quickly go through, and I believe you all received the letter that I addressed to Chairman Thomas regarding the budget reductions for the Grand Traverse County MSU Extension Office. And I do appreciate the opportunity to address you today. The MSU Extension Office for Grand Traverse County was asked to reduce our budget originally by $66,829, and we had provided a budget with that reduced amount. We then were requested to reduce our budget by an additional $20,000, for a total of $86,829, off of our general fund allocation, which accounts for approximately 21% of our 2010 budget levels that Grand Traverse County provides. And, and we have done so, we've met that budget targeted request, and I want to share with you how we did that. We reduced our general fund operating accounts by about $25,000. We looked for efficiencies where we could realize them, and we also passed along a number of expenses to some of the university operating accounts that we have available. A significant source of revenue that we were able to offset in general fund expenditures this year was moving some Grand Traverse County general fund personnel costs onto MSU, Michigan State University grant accounts, project accounts. We now have some of the support staff that you provide in the office, working more directly as an example with our supplemental nutrition education program. So, we were able to transfer $26,000 of what was Grand Traverse County personnel costs onto MSU Extension grant accounts, and have focused their work in that regard. We're also utilizing some programmatic pots of money that, that in the past, and will continue in the future, to go towards delivering programs. And, and we offset some of the reduced operating by transitioning dollars onto our county trust and agency accounts, which is money that's held at Grand Traverse County in trust, and it's been gathered through educational programs that we offer, such as, you know, grants and fees for programs. Our focus on working within this reduced budget amount, focused on maintaining the quality educational programming that Grand Traverse County citizens have come to expect. We also wanted to maintain our current staffing levels and program deliverables that we currently have. So, we ultimately, with the additional $20,000 we needed to identify, we did have to make some personnel adjustments. And these are personnel adjustments where we prioritized where we felt we could make those cuts with the least impact on our office and on our programs. We've eliminated some resources that were available for a part-time home horticulture desk clerk. These were individuals that we would hire as temporary or on-call employees, who would assist county residents when they had questions about, you know, gardening, home horticulture, pests in their yards, diseased trees, a lot of tent worm questions that would come in, this person would handle the walk-in traffic for those county residents. And then, we also reduced by 20% our parenting education position that Grand Traverse County funds. And again, we reduced that from 100% position to an 80% position coming into the new fiscal year. And again, we needed to prioritize where we thought we could make some of those cuts, and, and that's the position that we arrived at. We still feel we can serve the need that's identified, but we can do it with a part-time position as compared to a full-time position. So, out of the $86,000, approximately $66,000 of it, we were able to offset with, with university grants, with university operating accounts, and some programming accounts. And, and we're pleased to be able to do that. It's a significant cut to our budget, I won't deny that. But, at the same time, as you're aware, MSU Extension statewide is going through a reorganization process. We want to be part of the solution, and work with our county partners in, in reducing the resources where we can, and still allow our organization to function as it's expected to function across the state. I will be coming to you next year with our 2012 budget, requesting that county dollars be used differently than we're requesting this year. We're currently working on standardized language for our memorandums of agreement, which are our contracts that I mentioned to you previously, and we'll be coming back in 2012 with what those new contracts will look like. So, this year, our goal was, again, to preserve our programs, to preserve our staff, until we understand what statewide programs we're going to offer, and what level of support we're going to request from Grand Traverse County, to operate and function with those programs. So, I'm not asking for any resources to be replaced in our 2011 budget beyond what we've reduced. Again, which was an $86,000 reduction. 21% of our county general fund budget was reduced. I'm not asking for that to be replaced today. What I am asking is that, as we move forward into the 2012 budget year, you understand the cuts and decisions that we made today, as we move forward in good faith with renegotiating our agreements, moving into the fiscal year 2012 budget process.
Can we have more presentations like this?
Yeah.
Pat, I guess the comments I have first, I think all of us are still sitting back kind of watching and listening and waiting to see what MSU Extension's going to look like, because I don't think any of us have the answers yet.
I'm not sure I do either.
I'm pretty sure of that, you know. So, you know, I think, you know, I appreciate your efforts to, to comply with the regulations, and, and we certainly want to maintain the partnership. You know, it's a longstanding partnership in this community. I think it has a lot of benefit to our community, but I'm sure you understand our financial constraints, so...
I very much understand the financial constraints, and again, we match every dollar the county provides with about two. And I can give you specifics if you do request. So, it's a, it's a, it's a good return on investment from university resources invested in Grand Traverse County. But, we again, understand the fiscal constraints that counties across the state are facing, and that we're facing at the state and federal level, and we want to be a good partner and work within those constraints. We were able to make some fairly massive adjustments with, we feel, what was minimal impact on our programs this year. Next year, it's going to be very difficult to find this level of resources again, and I ask that you consider that next year, if you're still a sitting commissioner.
County.
County.
I said sitting commissioner. I know it's, I know it's a county board of commissioners.
Well, we've done a lot of sitting lately, so I appreciate that.
We still are.
I'm feeling the sitting party.
For those that are re-elected, is what I was referring to. Sorry, a sitting commissioner.
Larry, why don't you just stand, and then...
I just have a quick question for you.
Sure.
The two positions that I talked about, could you just tell me which positions they are, just for my reference?
On an organizational chart, one would not be referenced, because it's not a regular position, it's the part-time, it's a temporary position of a home horticulture assistant. It would work directly under our entomologist, Dr. Duke Elsner. The other position is, is our parenting education coordinator position, and that one reports underneath Jennifer Berkey, our family consumer science educator.
Okay.
And that, again, would be a reduced time position from 100% to 80%, beginning with the new fiscal year.
The program instructor?
Program instructor, correct.
So, speaking of the Parents as Teachers program, because it was a year ago that the state basically pulled the rug out from underneath.
That program is gone.
And so, what it was before was, of course, regular home visits with at-risk families.
Correct.
And now, it's more of a, like a group seminar type situation?
No, it's, it's a much reduced program, because we lost those grant resources that were available. This program still works on referrals from social service agencies and court-ordered referrals for families that are struggling in the county and need some parenting skill development.
So, it's still a home visit type program?
Yes, it is.
It's just a much smaller one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that I heard from Captain Parker when he was here, was how closely that his, his fire education coordinator works with MSU Extension's Safe Kids Coordinator. The only way I would agree to fund the fire educator would be if that cooperation continues, because, and I've, and I've seen the reports, I've seen that the MSU Extension Safe Kids Coordinator has done, has been involved with at least 25% of the fire educators' programs. And I really do believe in collaboration. So, are you, are you suggesting that is, is a reduction in that program at all in your budget? Because if it is, I didn't see it.
It is not. It is not part of the reduction in our budget for fiscal year 2011.
Okay, so that continues?
It certainly does.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Sweeten this up, I'll thank you.
The quicker you get in and out of here, the more likely you're going to get your money.
You don't say that. The sheriff's department's going to come in and introduce themselves and leave.
On that note, I'm going to leave. The written report.
Yes, here, bye.
I do want to acknowledge and thank Sheriff Bensley and UnderSheriff Alger for letting me take a few moments of their time to be further on the agenda or earlier. So, thank you for your time.
No, we probably can't get them in here.
Well, here he comes.
Here he comes.
Look at all the star witnesses.
Oh, and here they all come.
The first thing I noticed was that the undersheriff got this special haircut for you for today.
Oh my God, I saw that. He was not like that yesterday.
He's, he's in his warrior mode today.
That's what they look like in Tennessee.
Nate, pull up as many chairs as you need, you know, as you need them.
You know, he looks like Paul Somer now. You remind me of Paul Somer now.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that a compliment?
Only better looking, of course.
I don't think so.
What he's doing, he brushes it up to make him look taller.
I think that's what I'm thinking of.
You'll be able to use that later, Nate, in your lawsuit.
Summary, I don't feel safe going home now.
Do they get these, do we get credit for letting Mr. Cudney go?
You certainly do.
You heard, you missed it, you were outside. You get credit for making it a short presentation, according to the...
We'll stay as long as it takes.
You didn't hear that part of it either, did you? The quicker, the better off you are.
Well, we didn't let him off the hook, we asked for football they could set, on the 50-yard line for next year's Michigan, Michigan State game.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Bensley, Sheriff of Grand Traverse County, and as you know, UnderSheriff Alger is here, and we're here for our budget presentation, for the 2011 budget. Do you want to scroll through those? Okay. What we want to do, first of all, is show you the, I don't know if it's going to show up very well. Do they get copies of this yet, or not?
It's on the screen.
Well, okay. If you can't see it very well, it's our organizational chart, and what we do at the sheriff's office, on the, on the far left is the central records section, and it lists the office specialists there, three of which are assigned to the, at this time, the detective or investigative services section. The field services division with Captain Emerson has several responsibilities, one being the recreational safety division, which has a sergeant, has a super, I'm sorry, the records manager, Brenda Miller-Golke, supervises that. Captain Emerson is a field services captain, and under his command, the recreational services division has a sergeant, and all the employees there are seasonal employees, they're not full-time. The traffic section has a secondary road officer, which is paid through a grant from the state, and one county traffic officer. In the law enforcement section, it's kind of divided up into two divisions. One is the county-funded deputies, and the other is the supplemental services, or contracts with the townships. And the sergeants that are, supervise those people when they work, those are, those sergeants, although they're spread over those two different sections, are paid for fully by the county. So, they are all county employees. The lieutenant that supervises the supplemental police services, or the community police officers, is paid for by Garfield Township. The investigative services division has Captain, Captain Meacham that runs that section, and a sergeant that works directly for Captain Meacham, and they have five detectives, one of which is a Garfield Township detective, and then two officers are assigned to the Traverse Narcotics team. Finally, the corrections division with Captain Hall, that's a pretty straight-line division, Lieutenant Monroe, sergeants, and then the correctional officers. And, he will later on be giving a presentation on how that section functions. The administrative section includes the office manager, and account clerk, and we have under that section the evidence... under that section the evidence or property control manager. Again, back to the central records section, as you know, we contract with the city police department to take care of their records, and they reimburse us for that cost. A lot of those positions are grant positions, especially in the recreational vehicle division, secondary roads, TNT, and part of the records section because we work with the city police One concern, a couple of concerns that we had, is that the $1.1 million we were asked to remove from last year's budget to come up with this year's budget was determined in part by revenues. And we do get revenues. We get revenues from the township to cover the costs of those officers. We do get grants. We get those type of revenues. But our office produces a lot of revenue, which you'll see in a minute, for the courts. We write tickets, they get the money. We arrest people, they pay fines and costs, they get the money. So, we're being penalized a little bit. We're not a revenue-generating department. Our office provides services to people that visit, recreate, and live here. We don't charge for those services. If we go to a house and take a complaint, we don't give people a bill. If somebody from Antrim County runs into somebody from Benzie County on US 31 by the mall, we don't charge those people. We have 72,000, roughly, 72,000 people in the county, not including the city, and, you know, obviously, in the summertime, we get really busy. There's a lot of tourists, transits that come in. So, our revenue that we generate, we don't get back a lot of that. The next slide, I think, and this is from Carol Stocking, and she thanked me before the presentation for all the money we provide to the courts. Out of the $3.2 million that was collected, $2.68 million is a result of criminal and traffic matters. If, just assume 50% of that, $1.34 million, were a result of, we produced that revenue. Will that work? So, we make revenue, but it goes someplace else, okay? Here's another, a look at the staffing level. Totally, there's 127 and a half. That includes the records, investigative, corrections, and the field services division. Okay? The office of the sheriff is one that is a constitutional position, and by constitution and statute, the sheriff is charged with enforcing the laws enacted by the legislature under the police power of the state, and with discharging the executive law enforcement power for the preservation of public peace within the county. Case law and statute recognize, as one of the sheriff's primary responsibilities, the maintenance of law and order in those areas of the county not adequately policed by local authorities. The responsibilities of the peace officer in Michigan are broad. In addition to the traditional functions, investigation and prosecution of criminal conduct, a sheriff must take affirmative action to keep the peace, such as the detection of criminal conduct by patrol and other means, the apprehension of criminals, the intervention in crimes in progress, such as domestic assault, robbery, rape, and the control of vehicle and watercraft traffic. I just read a short portion from a paper by Sheriff Edmonds, retired Sheriff Edmonds in Kalamazoo County, that outlines the duties and responsibilities of the sheriff. Attached with this is a list of 50 different obligations that the sheriff is responsible to, either by constitution or by statute. And a lot of these responsibilities to the sheriff shows that the sheriff shall, not if you want to or if you have time, and that means the duty is mandatory, shall do these things. Again, some of those actually have a penalty attached to them. This is a very good paper. If anybody wants to know, you know, what the sheriff is responsible for, it details these things, okay? Through the, he's just scrolling through these things that he's, that I've just mentioned, which include the operation of the jail, the care for prisoners, to execute writs, summons, warrants, and other process, execute all lawful orders and process of the courts, attend the courts, district court, probate court, circuit court, when required, and as Captain Hall will say, will show you later, that's something that they are doing all the time. So, there are a myriad of duties, and one person can't do that. Obviously, the sheriff has deputies to assist and help in doing those, carrying out those duties and responsibilities, okay? The undersheriff is going to give you a little bit of history. Unfortunately, we went through this process in 2004, and he's going to show you the impacts of what happened then. And with 85% of our budget being personnel, or 85 or 86% of our budget being personnel costs, $1.1 million is a huge cut. That's where it has to come from. Our operating budget is about, proposed is about $1.8 million, and that covers everything but people. That covers pencils, pens, gas, vehicles, IT services, phone lines, uniforms, equipment, all that kind of stuff. If we cut $1.1 million from that section of the budget, we wouldn't have to lay off any employees, but we wouldn't be able to do anything. So, we did make some cuts in that, in the operational side of the budget, but nothing near the $1.1 million that we requested. Anything there?
Back in 2004, we, our portion of the cuts were identified about $600,000. And at that time, times were different. We did have some positions within the department that we thought we could eliminate without direct impact to emergency response and the critical performance of duties for the sheriff's department. We had a youth services sergeant. That sergeant was directly responsible for the truancy, monitoring the school liaison officers, the truancy program at the sheriff's department, anything school-related, including the dare officer. We did have a dare officer. If you recall, back in 2004, we eliminated the dare program because of lack of a dare officer, somebody to coordinate that program. We also had a full-time ORV officer at the time. That position was eliminated. The training coordinator at the time was the individual responsible for working with the city and camp grilling, setting up all the necessary training for the law enforcement personnel as well as the correctional staff. What complicates things was that we were in the process, over those couple, two, three years of a buyout, and a lot of people left. A lot of our command officers left, a lot of our supervisors or longer seniority people had left the department. So, it was difficult to follow all of those moves. And I was provided information from human resources that shows a spreadsheet of positions throughout the county, throughout, since 2000. It's very difficult to understand, and we're going to have to work with them to try to figure out what exactly that means. But I can tell you that today, we sit four less police officers than we did back in 2004. In addition to this, we lost a Green Lake Township officer. They opted not to fund that position. That was a position that's gone. Acme, Whitewater, they had two officers at one point. They opted to have one officer, and Blair Township reduced an officer due to funding.
One other comment. I know it's been discussed at the board level in the past. It's the issue of defined benefit retirement program versus defined contribution program, and the cost of the defined benefit program. Our office has 26 people who are under the defined benefit program. If those 26 people left today, and that, their individual, and the human resources puts a number with each people, they are responsible for a contribution for that plan. If those 26 people left, and the, our obligation to fund that retirement plan that they're associated with went with them, and we replaced those 26 people with new people under the defined contribution plan, we would save 1.4 million dollars. We have no control over that, no, zero. $1.4 million. And it's assigned by individual, depending on, I don't know exactly, but, you know, union contracts, what was that, that department or that division had, when the undersheriff mentioned the buyouts and people left. Those people left, the program still had to be funded, the new people coming in. As an example, the cost associated with, and I'm not speaking negatively toward Captain Emerson or Captain Meacham, but each of those people are assigned a cost of $156,460. Lieutenant Miles is a little cheaper. It's $135,073. That's the difference. That's the difference. The actual cost for those three people in our budget is over $470,000. We can't do a thing about it. We can't cut it by 10%. We can't do anything. So I, in some respects, call that a penalty. And other departments have the same thing, okay? We're not the only department. But just to give you an idea of the cost, I'm sure Captain Emerson and Captain Meacham would, at the drop of a hat, say, "Okay, you pay me that retirement cost, and I'll forget what you really pay me." I mean, it's twice of what they make. So, if there's, and I know there's, you know, Dean has tried to figure out some way to reduce those costs, but that's a huge cost, and we can't cut that. Again, 85% of our budget, or 86% is personnel cost. So, in some respects, our office, and I don't know the other departments, the courts, or human resources, or wherever, have calculated that, but that's a huge cost on our budget.
That concludes the opening portion of this.
Sheriff, under sheriff, I and Commissioner Friend have spent four hours in the last two days with the two of you, and I would like to highlight a couple of things that I heard from you. Out of the 911 calls that are received in Grand Travers County, how many come, how many are handled by your department?
We will get into that with the road patrol, but I can tell you, it's 90% of dispatch calls in the county are handled by the sheriff's office.
Oh, it's 96.
It's 90%.
90%.
90%.
90%. And along with that, I think Captain Meacham will tell you that the felony cases taken to circuit court by our office in the county, this excludes the city, but that occurs in the felony cases that end up at circuit court. 94% I think is?
No, it's not included.
Correct, right, yeah. So, we do a lot of work. We have some sections. Do you have something else?
No.
Okay. We're going to briefly go through the divisions, the budgets.
I'm sure I do, but go ahead.
Okay. But, you know, and obviously, the major portions are central records, law enforcement, and specifically the patrol division, and the detective bureau, so...
And what I'm looking at from you is, what is the impact to the public that you serve? What is the impact of these budget reductions?
Yeah. We have prepared this presentation, that we will not go through the entire budget. Areas of the budget that we have not recommended cuts, we will not touch on through this, through our presentation, but you may have questions. As an example, we aren't cutting, we are not making any recommendations other than line item reductions for the marine patrol, so we are not going to hit on that. You may have questions, and please feel free to do that. But what we would like to do is have the division commanders and the records manager come up one by one and discuss the areas that are going to be impacted by the budget reductions. And we will get into some of the questions that we talked about over the last couple of days, as well as some of the questions you may have today. So, Brenda, if you'd like to...
Can I have a question?
I do have one question for Commissioner Max Bar.
Yes.
If you're going to ask us that same question you asked Danny Brown about what's the most...
I will.
Okay. Thank you, because I'm going to think about that.
I will.
I didn't hear it, so it didn't catch me flat.
Oh, the sheriff did, and then...
I have a quick question for you.
Yes, Ms. Friend.
Because Sheriff's brought up the defined benefit plan, and you might want to send them an employee appreciation card on Employment Day, National Recognition Week, because I'm sure they weren't quite feeling the love on that one. I just wanted to be clear, you have employees that were on defined benefit, but any more, any hires that you've had in recent years, those are all defined contribution?
Yes, that's correct. And we understand that that cost is not something that will necessarily change outright if those employees leave here today. There's going to be a cost for quite a few years that will be associated with those employees. So, we do understand that. I think it was just for illustration.
And I think, and in fairness too, it's important to point out, that cost is not a cost associated with the retirement of those individuals. It's a cost associated with all the people who've been in those divisions that have retired before them.
Correct. That's why when they leave, that cost will continue.
I just didn't want anybody who's watching to think that, you know, there's further employment, you know, that's been hired in the most recent years that are on defined benefits.
There is a huge difference. And, you know...
And it's also not fair that, you know, those costs are assigned individual by individual.
Right, right.
But I'm not sure, Dean Dot knows how else to assign them.
Right, no.
We had the same issue come up with an individual at the pool yesterday.
Sure. And you're going to hear it again and again?
But obviously, that's a cost that's really spread, should be spread across the entire county, not just the individuals who happen to still be on defined benefit.
Right. And we understand, we're just bringing that to your attention, because when we look in the budget, that's something that we have absolutely no control over. You know, wages can be negotiated, benefits can be negotiated, those kind of things. But this is something that, you know, is a burden.
That discussion was had when the early outs were offered a few years ago, and as Nate indicated earlier, we had a mass exodus from the sheriff's department. You know, he pretty well gutted that department unfortunately, you know, to a lot of rush here and... But it also weighed into the discussion when we converted the policy that all new hires would go to defined contribution.
Yeah.
You know, and while, you know, it's easy to sit back and say, you know, those were good decisions, we are also paying the penalty for those now. We immediately paid the penalty by the loss of the experience that we had.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, I was as concerned as anybody in the world about that right in the beginning. But, you know, I said at the time, and I will stand by it now, you know, these, and unfortunately, I called them kids, that we were hiring, coming out of the police academies, give them five years, they will be as good officers as we've ever had in this community. And I believe that they show us that every day today.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, unfortunately, the financial ramifications and, and the, particularly when we look at unit by units, as MERS requires us to make payments, they come on us really hard, particularly with, with those units that have smaller numbers of people still remaining on defined benefit. Our payment to them, you know, well, when we look at our budget, we've got, we've got groups that we pay more money to the retirement of people that have already left here than we're going to pay in wages this year. And we have a number of those, so.
Two quick questions. The, the office specialist who, it's being suggested are laid off, they're all from central records, is that correct?
Yeah, the office specialist, yes. Two and a half positions.
Do, does central records a 24-hour function?
No, it is not. Well, I'm sorry, we have, I guess that's misleading. We do have midnight shift clerk that is there.
I mean, I assume you have more people working in the daytime than at night.
That is correct.
But there is always somebody on staff.
But the, the office is closed. I mean, I mean, the lobby is closed. I mean, that's open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, but that's closed. There are people that work there typing reports.
After hours.
After, after hours.
I mean, you obviously feel a need to have people there 24 hours a day.
Yes, it isn't 24/7 though. We have one midnight clerk or office specialist.
Who would be like a production clerk?
Basically, yes. And, and those, the priority...
They're not actually processing people in the middle of the night.
No.
They're just catching up with paperwork.
Or if there's an arrest made during the overnight hours that is, needs to be, if it's a felony arrest, that has to be to the prosecutor's office and through the courts quickly, that report takes priority and that office specialist will type that report.
So they are, they are there as, as needed then, in that sense?
Yes.
Okay. And then, oh, my other question. Oh, could you explain the difference between the county patrol and secondary patrol?
Secondary road patrol?
Yeah, secondary road patrol.
Secondary road is a Act 314 funded position. They give us, I think this year's $87,000 in 2011 to perform patrols on secondary roads, so non-U.S. designated or non-M designated roads. Those officers are supposed to write tickets, handle traffic complaints and handle accidents that occur on secondary roads only. They are not to be used on primary roads for anything and that, and I'm not 100% certain, Captain Emerson could speak to this during his portion, but it's a function of the number of linear miles per road and, or county and the overall ticket revenues generated by the state.
But for, I mean, basically for administrative purposes, even though it's two different line items, you're pretty much slumping them together because obviously your deputies are patrolling the entire county and not...
They can't handle the normal functions of, of an officer. The grant says your job is to write tickets.
So you actually have a particular deputy?
Yes, oh, yes, yes. He cannot, that's correct. He cannot handle a domestic violence, certainly if it's an emergency and he can go there or, yes, traffic only.
Yeah. It operates, yeah, they're, they're not a regular county police car. Their task with this, again, the grant says, this is what the grant's for, do only these things, so. And it is one officer assigned.
Quick question.
But there were, the other was, the county several years ago granted the sheriff's office some money for a county traffic car. So there's two cars that are primarily there for enforcing traffic rules and regulations, handling accidents, okay? One funded by the state is, only operates on the secondary roads. The other car can go anyplace, any roads, and if they need to handle a regular complaint, they can do that without, without any problem, okay? Not violating any rules, so.
I have a quick question for Dennis on central records. Central records, we share the cost with the city.
That's correct.
Has, if we reduce central record staff by one, two, three, four, five people, whatever, has that been factored into the budget numbers that we have?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the city will pay their proportionate share based on the formula that's, that allocates cost. They would see a reduction in their cost if we see a reduction in the overall budget.
Thank you.
We estimate that, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe about $23,000 per year. That's an estimation based on our recommendation of two and a half office specialists.
That, that's a reduction of?
A reduction. This is Brenda Miller-Golke. She's been our records manager for quite some time and if I don't know the answer to this question or questions you have, she certainly will be able to answer. Right now, we are proposing that two and a half office specialists be removed from the records division. First of all, let me go back. We were provided this target figure with 1.1 million dollars. Obviously, we made recommendations that equal close to that. We don't agree with any of them. I just want to be sure, when we say we propose this, it's because, you know, we were requested to do it. So two and a half office specialists and some line item reductions, those were minimal. We have 13 and a half employees in records right now. It is a shift-based division. It's not 24/7. Our midnight clerk does not work seven days of work a week. We have hours starting at 7:00 till 5:00 and the staff is in front of the department handling things as they come. And these are some of the things that they do. They, they process FOAs, they do accident reports, they process CPLs, et cetera. But more importantly, they type every single criminal complaint that comes into the sheriff's office or the city police. When a city police officer or sheriff's deputy goes out and handles a breaking and entering, they dictate that onto a tape, they turn it into central records. They also complete something called a micro sheet, which is a piece of paper that has a bunch of lines on it that the officer writes, names, addresses, phone numbers, type of crime, victim suspects, witnesses, the whole nine yards. Those office specialists have to type all of that information into the computer and then type a Word document and attach it to that micro sheet in our system. So that when you want to look at what John Jones did last night during this breaking and entering, we pull up John Jones jacket, put a 9 in it, looking for activity, and it pulls this report up. It's a process that they do, and I'll show later, 15,000, about 15,000 complaints they have to type that way. It's a, it's a lengthy process depending on the type of complaint or in many cases the long-windedness or short-windedness of the officer. It could be a major, major report or a small report. The concern with reducing two and a half office specialists for us comes in many ways. First is the impact on the public. If you get an accident today and you want to take that accident report to your insurance company tomorrow, there is a likelihood that that accident report will not be ready to be released to you in that short order. Now we can do that pretty regularly except for over the weekends or holidays. That time is going to be expanded because we're going to have less clerks.
How long? How long?
How long? I don't know that. We haven't, we won't be able to tell. It just depends on the amount of work they have to do, the backlog in records. We have experienced several days, weeks of priority three complaints that were sitting in the baskets waiting to be typed because we've had priority one and two reports that have had to go. We do prioritize our reports, fresh arrests and things that have to get to the prosecutor's office are priority one. Things that are warrant requests, say we're going to submit to the prosecutor's office and ask for an assault charge, that's a priority two report. Priority three is everything else. You know, we went to a barking dog, Johnny doesn't like Sally, we have problems, corrected, we left. That's a priority three. That could sit in that basket for a long time. And I will tell you this, if we're going to get in trouble, it's not the B and E report we took last night or the assault, it's that barking dog that somebody's going to want to know about. It's the neighbor versus neighbor, it's the civil dispute, it's the dad said this about mom. That's the report that's going to get in trouble. And we have the FOIA request to come in and say, "I want this report now." We scramble, scramble around and say, "The report's not even typed yet."
What percentage of your reports are type three reports?
It's a reports?
It's type three reports.
Would you guess?
Well, I could tell you, later in the slides here, we have a criminal versus non-criminal complaint. I think we'll be able to get there.
The other thing, just, you're probably going to talk about it, Nate, but the other thing that complicates the impact is the installation of the new software system.
That's correct.
You're going to talk about that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. That complicates the system, the situation.
Didn't you say you had 13 and a half employees?
Yes.
Does that include Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Just one clarification before jumping in. The complaints, are they just dictated into a recorder and then, and then, and then the staff throws it into a format? Is that how things are done?
Yes.
Or is there a more efficient way that we can do that in the, in the field?
We are working on that with the new software as well as our proposal to digital dictation, which you have right now in your capital improvements budget for 2010. And we can discuss that when that screen comes up. The bigger impact for the sheriff's office for the reports being typed slower is if there's a breaking and entering tonight, we just had as an example, we had, we caught a couple burglars breaking into Kurtz and ABC. If that was not solved, if the officers that night did not catch the bad guys, we, we need to have that report. The detectives need to have that report, the road patrol needs to have that report so they know what's going on. The slower turnaround is going to jam up that system. The detectives are not going to have that report, the deputies are not going to have that report to know, hey, you know, these places are broken into, this type of car was seen in the area, these people were hanging around the area, these are your witnesses, these are your victims, this is the property taken. That is all information the beat, the beat guys on the street need to have and the detectives need to have to follow up on the crime. This is your breakdown of actual physical police reports typed. So these are your non-criminal, or these are your criminal complaints that are being typed by central records. The lower bar here, I can...
Right there, this is the, huh, it doesn't work.
I guess, that doesn't work either. That blue screen just sucks everything out.
That must be what it is. Yep, you're right.
The, the lower bar is the city police, those are the complaints that records types for city police and the upper bar is for the sheriff's office. Now, if each one of those, and I did not bring the sheet, but if each one of those has seven pages of narrative, that's a lot of typing. Just as a note, back in 2008 and 2009, the sheriff's office numbers went down. We made a policy decision at that point that anything below a 7,700 file class, anything above a 7,700 file class is a non-criminal report. Everything below 7,700 file class is a criminal complaint. We don't type those anymore. We have a yellow sheet, yellow piece of paper that the officer handwrites and submits to records and it's simply filed.
That would be non-criminal.
That's non-criminal. That's the dog was barking, did a civil standby for Johnny and Sue, those kind of complaints.
Nate, what's the, what's the date that this ended in, the statistics ended in 2010?
June.
Okay.
The end of June. So these numbers are from January to June.
Thanks.
And the, I'm sorry, one more point is we stopped taking NSF, non-sufficient funds checks complaints. There are a significant number of them. We designated a clerk specifically to handle NSF complaints because they were so, so significant between the prosecutor's office and the sheriff's office, it was determined that we would not process a certain type of NSF check any longer and the checks just went away. They are no longer a problem for us. So that is also reflected in that number. And we just talked about that. Additional job requirements by records, they handled 2,900 accident reports. They filed them, every one of these UD10s, we call them, accident reports have to be submitted to the state of Michigan. They filed 9,200 tickets, they handled over 2,800 FOIA requests. And something specific to know about a FOIA request, this is not a one FOIA request for one document. We have, some of these FOIA requests are any and all. When you get an any and all FOIA request, that is a major task. And depending on who you're dealing with, if the guy's only had one contact with law enforcement, that's easy. Unfortunately, most of these folks that we're dealing with are, we know them well, there's a lot of information that we have to provide. They also made 4,872 entries in the automated gun file. That requires that the records clerk does 2,347 background investigations on people purchasing licenses. That is time consuming. That information goes to Sheriff Bensley and the gun board to issue CCWs. They also, just as an example, took 25,714 incoming phone calls. We've already discussed some of this through the course of the presentation, but the elimination of two and a half deputy, or clerks is going to affect these four bodies, the officers, the detective bureau, court, prosecutor and the public. And mostly, it's the turnaround time on reports and the processing of information. We will always be able to type the complaints. They will always be typed. The problem is, is how fast we can do it and we don't yet, don't yet know that.
Nate, you mentioned non-sufficient fund checks are no longer a problem for you. Do you know if they are a problem for any other department?
I think the city does the same thing. Is the city on the same page we are?
The city's on the same.
So I don't know beyond our building if it is a problem. It's still a crime, it is still a crime to write a bad check. The way we handle them is differently. We used to send out a five-day letter and a 10-day letter and jam up the system. We don't do that any longer. The prosecutor handles a piece of that. If they don't take care of it, there's an arrest warrant, simply.
What's your policy on the checks again?
We...
It's like a certain amount.
Certain amount.
What's the amount?
I want to say 300.
How much?
Excuse me, it's $100, $100.
So you can write up a check up to $100?
And we will not investigate it.
Fan check.
This is, this is true everywhere pretty much. And the thing that the sheriff handed out that says the sheriff's duties, I think it's pretty specific in there. I didn't notice where it said the sheriff got to pick what statutes he enforced and which ones he didn't.
That came from hell.
It's under shell.
The prosecutor drove this for us.
So they're pointing.
And it was a welcome, it really is a welcome change.
Pardon? I understand that, but that still doesn't answer the question, Mr. Prosecutor.
We took, okay. One of the problems that we have and why we can't answer you specifically about the turnaround is we are implementing the New World software, the new system that we're having. We are expecting efficiencies in that software. One of the efficiencies that I mentioned is if you recall, I talked about a micro sheet that they fill out the suspect's name, the victim's name, the witnesses', phone numbers, addresses. That is all going to be done through a module called Field Based Reporting. And the Field Based Reporting module is going to allow us to swipe a driver's license of a person and that is going to automatically populate that person's information into our system. So in essence, with minimal input, we are going to be able to limit, eliminate the micro sheet. Those are time consuming, so we are going to recognize that efficiency. And we don't quite understand all the modules yet, but we are expecting efficiencies, but because it is not yet implemented, it's hard to guess what those efficiencies will be. Another piece of that is our electronic ticketing. The clerks, as I mentioned before, filed 9,271 tickets. The tickets are now going to be filed electronically and they will no longer have to be touched by the clerks. With that, there's going to be additional revenue possibilities as well due to the electronic submission of our accident reports. Right now, we mail them in by snail mail. In the future, with the system, we're going to be doing it electronically. We already talked about checks and we also are going to go to an electronic pawn monitoring system. One of our obligations is that every time you pawn a piece of property at a pawn dealer, you have to stick your thumbprint on a, on a piece of paper and say, "This is not stolen." We get all of those and we process all of those when we have time. It's going to be electronic system now. As mentioned, the city contract, 2009, they gave us $192,890 for service. This year, they've paid in part $90,681. They are on a fiscal year, we're on a calendar year, but we are estimating, I talked to Captain Hefner, $23,000 reduction with the elimination of the employees. Any questions about the detective, about the records division?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. You know, the 2.5, if you, if you have a backlog now, I guess is what you're representing. I mean, I'm trying to get a feel for complaints are down...
Yes.
...through the court system, but I don't know if complaints are down through dispatch in your department because, you know, a lot of them don't reach that level. in your department, because, you know, a lot of them don't reach that level. So I'm just kind of trying to figure out, are complaints relatively level? Are they up in terms of filling out forms at the dispatch office? And if you have a backlog now, with the reduction to 2.5, how much more does that create?
Yep. Do you know what the backlog is today, if there is one?
They actually are pretty current.
Okay. So today, we're current. To give you an example, last year during the summertime, we would be several days, if not weeks, behind on the priority threes. You're correct, criminal violations are down, criminal reports are down, and this is reflected also in these numbers. The efficiencies we will recognize are yet to be seen. So this is an area that we may be able to say, there are some savings here potentially, because we don't have to have the complaints, or the complaints are flattening out or going down.
Okay. Nate, when we talk about the electronic ticketing and the onboard electronic filings, I'm a little confused because I've seen documentation that we've received, some of that say December 2011, and then I seen some the other day that said 2012 before the implementation. What do we, when do we anticipate that system will be in place?
As far as the ticketing, we're looking at probably June of next year. We do have a kickoff meeting started within the next two weeks as far as working with the vendor, and they say it takes six months, so.
Yeah, software and hardware has to be purchased and placed in the vehicles for that.
But the city's not participating in the electronic ticketing?
Actually, as of today, it appears that they will be.
Oh, okay.
I think the city found a creative way to finance that, but I don't want to speak for them for sure.
No, I mean, we're still, we still have a couple of details to work out, but it appears that because of the potential savings in this budget and the drop in cost that the city has budgeted money already, that they will be able to participate, and the latest indication is they want to participate in the whole system, including electronic ticketing.
Can you go back one slide, Nate? What's the, the city paid $192,890 in 2009?
Yes.
What was the total amount for Central Records right here?
The budget itself?
Well, what I want to know is what percentage of Central's workload is that of the city? And what percentage are they paying?
Well, I can tell you that if you look at these numbers, it would be a matter of dividing these numbers, you could get a good...
Roughly, the city has a third.
The city...
If I can see there, like, for example, 2008, it was 3,209,000.
The agreement that's in place, there's a formal contract that determines, it's based on the document size. There's two statistics that are used, our IT department keeps track of not only the document size and, Nate, I don't remember what the other one is, but those are averaged together to come up with a percentage, and there's a slight reduction. It's approximately 21% is the factor then that's applied to the total cost of the Central Records budget, and the city pays that proportion.
It's some function of size and count total. And just to give you an idea, in 2009, these numbers was 306,134,000 typed characters. So that's, I don't know how they do that with the budget, but Don does it.
Don, she hand the IT director, they have the ability to capture the size of the document. It's two counts, and the two counts are averaged together, and for the fiscal year we just completed, because the city is on a different fiscal year, it was about 25% of the total documents based on those two measures that were for city records. And then the contract builds in about a 5% reduction, coming back to a 20, about a 21% cost share for the department's cost.
But that amount is not based on, the amount that they're paying isn't based on the human resources that are involved, but the actual work that they crank out, right?
Well, the document size and counts determine the cost sharing percentage, but the department costs that they share on include the personnel. It includes all the costs that you see in your budget detail.
The other numbers just help decide the formula.
So basically, the amount that you talked with the city that you're anticipating it decreasing, you're, it's decreasing because that's the less records you're figuring that you'll be able to accomplish, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Less staff, less dollar amount spent on the staff.
Not necessarily less records.
Not, no, a lot less records, but the dollar figure spent in records is going to shrink by two and a half bodies.
More efficient processing of records thereby saving personnel costs.
So the question I have is, because we have this financial relationship with the city on this records department thing, I mean, are they in line with the reduction of staff that we're proposing? And I mean, I don't want to get into a situation where they say, hey, if the county's got a budget problem, we want to maintain our same level of activity, so, you know, guess what, we want our reports typed and you guys have to wait. I mean, what is the, what is the agreement here?
Well, just from the city police perspective, I have talked with Captain Hefner, they are fully aware of the reductions and they understand them.
We are, my discussions with the city manager indicate to them that we prefer all of our, all of the records to be on one system. Nate's made that clear. If the city chose not to participate in the records management system and wanted to do it the old way, it would result in an increased personnel cost to do so and less efficiency. And what we stated and part of this discussion has been, if that's the case, you will be responsible for whatever additional personnel costs are associated with having to do a second system that's more manual, okay? This is all part of what we've been discussing. The point is, when they looked at all of that, they determined that going with the new system, going with the more efficient system and the updates made more sense, and they, for the most part, and there's still a little bit to be worked out, but for the most part, have said, they have based their decision to move to the new system on the cost savings associated with the reduction in this budget.
That's correct.
They're tied.
Okay.
If it's, if we don't, if we cannot reduce or choose not to reduce this budget, we're going to have to reopen those discussions with the city because then they're, they're not going to have the money.
Anything else?
I'd like to call Captain Meacham up as well. The detective bureau has kind of been a, I guess, a point historically that we have robbed Peter to pay Paul. Historically, we have always determined that the critical operational functions of the department are 911 calls and emergency response. That's the number one thing we should be doing. Someone calls 911, they expect to have a police officer come to their help or assistance and provide the help needed. The detective bureau is a little different division in the department. They handle much more complex complaints, they have time to devote to the investigation of these complaints, and the time is required. Just to give you an idea, the proposed, we are not proposing any additional staff reductions in the detective bureau. These reductions have already occurred this year and previously. The four school liaison officers were removed from this division back in July or June with this board's approval of the staffing amendment. We did that move because the schools, if you recall, did not want to enter into a financial relationship with the county to pay for them. So we put them on the road expecting there to be some sort of increase of complaints that the road would have to handle due to that, non-school liaison officer intervention. So they've lost four bodies. Now, those four bodies also handle about half of the CSCs that we currently handle still. Those CSCs that were reported from the schools or to DHS, the school liaison officers handled them if the individual was a youth or in the school that they were a part of as a liaison officer. So by taking those four out, we have now put an additional 50% of the CSCs onto the other four remaining detectives. And I'll show you in a minute how those detectives are assigned. Yes?
How many CSCs do you get in a year?
The low years that we've had, I've been there eight or nine years, the low is 96. When I first took over, we were about 140, 150. I'm going to guess we're going to be about 115 this year.
Okay. That's total. So half of those are coming through the school liaison officers?
About half are being handled by the schools, yep.
Okay.
As it stands right now with the DB staffing, one detective focuses exclusively on child abuse and child sexual assaults, that is Detective Dawn Wagner. She is our CAC liaison, so to speak, and our DHS liaison. Very capable, very competent, and very efficient with these investigations. These investigations are extremely complex, and they're difficult to investigate, and not everybody can do it. Dawn does it very well. One detective focuses exclusively on computer crimes, that's Detective Todd Heller. I'm sure you've seen his presentations or heard him speak about computer forensics. This is an area that we can't even keep up with. We're buying $5,000, $10,000 extra a year in different software and different plugs to go to phones and different things for computers just to keep up with this area. Very rapidly progressing area of law enforcement. We also have two general case detectives that are not attached by title, so to speak. These officers will handle CSCs, homicides, robberies, burglaries, assaults, anything else that comes their way. We also have one Garfield detective. This detective is paid for exclusively by Garfield Township. They pay for the entire wages and fringe of this officer, the clothing allowance and overtime. Sergeant Barshaf oversees the detectives and handles liquor license investigations as well and liquor license violations.
He's also in charge of the crime lab and evidence tech program, he's in charge of all the training for them.
Yes, so if there is a homicide or a suicide or something that needs special training or expertise in the evidence collection, Sergeant Barshaf does that. And of course, Captain Meacham oversees the DB. It's stated, these complaints are not your normal complaints, that's why they are transferred from the road patrol to the detective bureau. Not every complaint is transferred to the detective bureau. If you handle a simple larceny on the road patrol, that will never see detectives' desk unless there are some specific elements that are met, like maybe there are multiple larcenies of the same type, thefts from vehicles or multiple BNEs. They're very complex. The homicides, suicides, CSCs, and robberies can take anywhere from two weeks to months. If you recall, we just had a recent investigation of a deceased infant, that deceased infant investigation took months. It took months because the, there's a very, very large number of people and entities involved in that investigation, and we have to wait for people. These detectives coordinate those efforts. Due to the shortage of staff right now, we will no longer be able to put the emphasis into property crimes, surveillances, or intelligence gathering. The detective bureau historically has been responsible as the intelligence gathering division. If there is a bad guy that we want to know about, they do their job and put forth the effort to dig in and find out what they're all about, where they live, where they go, who they hang with. If that requires a surveillance, that's what that requires. TNT is another section that Captain Meacham is responsible for. If TNT does a moving surveillance, that requires five people, five people to do a moving surveillance on a vehicle. We will not be able to do that because we only have five people in the entire detective bureau. So the priority is going to be personal crimes, victim bodily injury. I have a CSC, he's been in a robbery, there's been a vicious assault or homicide or a suicide. We will no longer be able to put as much effort into the property crimes.
When the school liaison program ended, all four of those officers were put into road patrol?
Yes.
Was there consideration of putting them back into the detective bureau?
Even as early as today, recently as today. Captain Meacham and I have talked about this, we've talked about this with our staff at length. I think that each one of us will talk out of both sides of our mouth with this topic. What we believe should happen and what can happen practically are probably two different things. Me personally, I have a school liaison officer root. I believe that those officers should be in that school no matter what. We are going to go to those schools, we are going to be needed at those schools. To give you an example, we were talking about drug searches the other day, and what right now is the deterrent for a person, a student, to not bring drugs into a school? You know, the staff at those schools, they're taking cuts as well, but the law enforcement officer was there and kind of had an omnipresence with those students.
So the feeling was if they were on road patrol, they'd be more quickly able to respond to the schools when you got the complaints?
Well, no, not exactly. We believe that the direction that this board gave to the sheriff's office, and in some parts, our feelings as well, that that was a kind of a pay-to-play partnership, that there was a financial responsibility on behalf of the school. So if they could not match that, that we would not provide them specialized service. And that specialized service came through the school liaison officers. Right now, if they have a larceny, if they have an assault, they're going to have to pick up the phone and dial the non-emergency dispatch number or 911 and get a police officer just like everybody else. Now, if you were to ask me, should we put school liaison officers back in there tomorrow? I would tell you yes. But there's a cost. Part of our four recommended reduction are the two that we no longer get revenue from the schools for. We're going to have to make our peace with that. If those four officers are reinstated, would we put them back in the schools? Very possibly.
And it's not exactly like four days in, the schools have seen any impact yet.
Right, exactly. But what happens next year? You know, there's going to be a comfort level that's acquired as time goes on in the schools.
And traditionally, even with an officer there, whether you have them there or not, that first two weeks, three weeks, everybody's getting used to new principals, new teachers, kids are not comfortable, you know, they don't know the layout really, and they're not going to, they don't get into much trouble in this first few weeks. It's when people start feeling comfortable. When rivalries start up.
All the feedback I got is that the teachers particularly love the school liaison officers, administration of the school, didn't seem to be as concerned about it, so.
I think that, you'll see that in every walk of profession. You know, the administrative has to make the hard decisions. I don't sit here pretending that these cuts are going to be okay. I don't think they are, but I understand the need for them. No deputy, no clerk, no detective, no corrections officer is going to say, I understand the need for that cut. The schools are in a pinch, and I understand that. I think they should have paid play, so to speak.
Yeah. But I think my point was, is that I think the teachers who are, again, on the ground most closely with, you know, with your detectives in the schools are the ones who most appreciate the program.
Nate, some might make the assumption that because we moved those people that were in liaison positions into the road patrol, that somehow that increased the level of activity that we have on the roads. In other words, we moved those back as, they're back on the road, right?
They are.
Okay? So, I mean, it, I'm asking you to address this. If we move four people back to the road, okay? I know we had some other openings that complicate this, but if we move four people back on the road, and let's say we lost $100,000 and that really only meant we could move three people or have three people instead of four, and we filled all our other vacant positions, some might think we had a net increase on the road of three.
Some would think that, and they would be right.
And they would be right, except the work that you're still going to have to do in the schools.
Correct.
And that's what I want you to clarify, if you would.
I can, if we can go back to that screen way up here, we have 67 certified law enforcement officers in this county. The sheriff's office has 67. Now, what Dennis is saying is if you look over here and this, well, that doesn't work, but try it again and again, the definition of insanity, dude. Yeah, go ahead, there's all. If you go, the detective bureau over here, that used to have four additional bodies in it. The road patrol, which is the first line of deputies.
Sergeant's got a taser, it'll work.
Pardon?
Said sergeant's got a taser, it'll work.
Yeah.
Actually, you know what? The copy that was made for the road board, it has the notes from yesterday, school detectives.
Yes. But this line of deputies underneath the sergeants, that used to be 21. There's now 25. There's four less detectives in the detective bureau, so we still have 67 sworn law enforcement officers, but we have 25 road patrolmen and four detectives. We used to have eight detectives and 21 road patrolmen. So what Dennis is saying is this, road patrolmen do a certain number of self-initiated... So what Dennis is saying is this, road patrolmen do a certain number of self-initiated activities. Traffic stops, warrant attempts, proactive patrol, arrests for driving while suspended, drunk driving, things of that nature. That would show an increase in road patrol activity. That is true. But there's also, we handle a certain number of phone calls that I'll show you later. The calls come in. We have 47,476 contacts, incidents with residents or visitors in Grand Travis County. That's gonna happen. What is going to increase on the road patrol now is that self-initiated stuff, the number of tickets, the number of drunk driving arrests, the number of driving while suspended, officer response time to domestic violence. Right now, if you looked at it, would increase potentially. It could, we could see an increase in time. Those four equal one per shift, basically. One additional officer per shift.
Well, maybe you're gonna address it when Captain Emerson comes up, but I guess what I want you to address is, if I made the statement to you, "Well, they had 20 road patrol, 21, and now they have 25, they aren't gonna, and we're cutting four, they're still gonna have 25, they're gonna have the same number." That's what I want you to address.
No, that's not, that's not true.
I understand. That's what I want you to address when Captain Emerson comes up.
If you, if you cut the four road patrolmen, the four road patrolmen that are in that line of deputies are gone. That takes that number back down to 21. We are now at 63 full-time sworn law enforcement officers, a net reduction of four.
Because of the loss of the detectives.
That's right.
But you still have the same number, you'd have the same number on road patrol that you did last March.
In January, in January.
In January, okay.
Because the critical services need to be taken care of.
Nate, in 2003, and I did ask you for this information, and I would be happy to share it with anyone, you had approximately 22,000 calls for service. You've doubled that.
Yep.
Have you doubled officers?
No.
Thank you.
We are gonna get through that, through my, to those numbers, so to speak, in the field services section. But the detective bureau has been the fleecing point, so to speak. And this is the service that is most, I'm not gonna say most impacting, but it significantly impacts the victims that are involved in these crimes. Every criminal sexual conduct allegation has to be investigated. There's either a traumatized victim that is seeking closure by prosecution and the availability of counseling and all the victims' rights that they have, or there is a persecuted offender that needs to be vindicated. So they have to be investigated, and they are very, very difficult to investigate. So what we have done is we have taken the officers from the detective bureau and moved them into complaint takers. Any questions about the detective bureau? I'll go back up and.
I guess I have one last question on detective, if I could. Number of complaints per detective, or number of cases that are assigned to a detective?
Right now, we're handling over 1,000 complaints a year. We went as high as 1,100 my first year taking over the bureau. And the longest we've ever handled was each 93 here a couple years ago, this last year.
So how does that divide into your staffing reduction? I mean, is it four times the load, twice the load?
About half of those 900 and some odd complaints were taken by the school detectives. So since we're not responding to the schools, 450 of those are gone from us.
No, no, they're not necessarily gone. They're just, they're just gonna come to you by way of the road patrol.
And Tom's gonna.
Tom's gonna get them, and he's gonna bring them to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess the issue is, I mean, with the reduction of the detective, staff in the detective division, how has that complicated the number of cases each person can work? And do we have cases that you just can't work, and you've decided that you, you know, where is that at? I mean, with the reduction of four?
The thing that we're gonna have to do is, first of all, in the bureau, it's always people versus property crimes. People crime comes first, property crime comes second.
Okay.
And so with the school detectives handling approximately half of those sexual assaults, those cases are still gonna come to us. And so instead of them going to a school detective who is able to go pick a kid out of class or go meet with them at the CAC center and do the interview and do that investigation, that is now gonna come to either Detective Heller, who does computers, or it's gonna come to Gomez, or Trombley, or it's gonna come to Ritter. If it's coming to them, which they don't handle that many of those a year, and they're perfectly capable of doing it, they're trained to do it, and they're very good at it, but the problem is, is if they're taking up that other 50%, those other four guys, that means that the property crimes and everything else are gonna become a lower priority because they're working so much longer.
Or may not even be attended to. You're just gonna draw the line and say, "We're not gonna be able to do anything on this stuff."
But we do that every day. You know, the prosecutor's office does that every day. You know, they, you can't prosecute everything, you know? You have to pick and choose, and we're going to do that same thing. We're gonna pick and choose based on what's going on in the bureau, how many cases we got, how many people are available on that date.
The next area is the field services division. We are recommending the elimination of four deputies. And there are some line item reductions as well through Captain Emerson's budget. But one thing, this is kinda the, I wanna draw an analogy here. You're gonna see Captain Hall, he's gonna come up here in a moment and give you a very detailed description of his operation. And it's very detailed, it's very easy to follow. Because if you take a peg out of his pegboard, something collapses. The road patrol is not like that. You take a peg out of the road patrol, the road patrol still functions, it still moves along, it still does its job. Just doesn't do it as fast, as safe, or as well. So we are proposing the elimination of four deputies out of this budget. And one thing I routinely hear, not from people we serve, but from members in government, we have too many cops. We have too many cops, don't give any more money to cops, they don't need it. Well, I'm here to tell you that is absolutely inaccurate, and I draw the analogy of a parent with his children. We do things that people don't want us to do. So when do you need a cop? When do any, when does any citizen want a police officer?
I know, I like it.
All right? Now? Yeah, I would think so. This is a bad day. I took the Cookie Monster, he's after me. This is a bad day. You want a cop? You want him right now. Maybe even now. And the reason I put this slide on there is a lot of things that we do are not crime. We take care of problems. We don't respond exclusively to crimes because that's not the case. As earlier stated, some of the most heated incidents that we take care of are not crimes. Barking dogs, you'd be amazed how agitated people get about a barking dog at 2:00 in the morning, or a civil dispute. "This guy's keeping my television set, and it's mine, I want it." So a lot of the stuff we do is not criminal-related, it's civil. You don't want a cop now, and you definitely don't want 'em busting up your party. If you're having fun, you don't want a cop anywhere around you. So when I hear "too many cops," I take that with a grain of salt because I don't believe it. And I know that we are not in a position here in Grand Travis County to say we have too many cops. These are some of the deputy functions. A road patrolman goes out and does all of these things.
I just wanna say, I like your humor side of this.
I do have it, usually it's not appropriate, so I can't let it know. Of all these functions, I personally think, number one, emergency response, that's why it's on the top, but there's another one down here at the bottom called proactive patrol. This is the criminal detection or criminal deterrent that law enforcement has. It is, you cannot measure this. We can measure pretty much everything else. Proactive patrol to the layperson looks like driving around. That cop's driving around, he's driving around doing nothing. Well, yeah, he's driving around looking for speeders, he's checking businesses. The BNE that we just caught was by a keen-eyed deputy on midnight shift noticing a suspicious car up at the cinema. That car doesn't look right, I'm gonna go talk to that guy. They go talk to him, there's a car speaker in the back, there's burglary tools. That's great stuff. That's cop work. That's what we do. We do it less and less because, I'll show you later, the complaint volume is just, it constantly pushes you to the next complaint. So all these things, public awareness, training, specialty functions, we do search and rescue, we serve civil papers, we work for the courts, we do court home visits, we do warrant attempts, subpoenas. We do all of these things. This is a website, if you wanna write it down, you can, you're gonna have it. But the reason I brought this up is there's a little gold highlighted section there that says Midwest 2.7. 2004, the national average of law enforcement per capita per thousand was 2.7 to 3.5, depending on which study you read. Midwest was 2.7. Nationwide in 2007, the national average was 2.2 per thousand. I don't necessarily believe that. Those seem high to me, but I can tell you that I think the city police is pretty close to that, so it's not out of line. I think it's a little high. If you look at Grand Travis County, based on 72,000 residents, and we're gonna have this discussion about the CPOs in a minute, we're at .93, we're less than one, less than one police officer per thousand people. That is not too many cops. If you take the community police officers out of that, and I have a reason for saying that, that takes it to .65. If you take four away from us in 2011, that drops down to just over a half a cop per thousand. I argue that that is not too many cops. And I don't see how someone can look at those numbers and compare it nationally and say, "I agree."
Nate, I don't mean to knock your analysis on that, but my understanding of that ratio is they take the total number of officers in the county, it would be city, state police, and county, add 'em up, and then divide it into the population.
These numbers were derived by taking the entire population of the nation and dividing the number of sworn officers.
I understand that.
Yep.
But when you're trying to do an analogy of a county, I'm pretty sure you have to add in the city, county, and the state.
Yeah, but subtract the population of the city.
No, he subtracts the city out of his population.
I understand that.
So theoretically, what you're saying is he needs to add the state police in. But if you look at how many complaints they handled last year, it was 2012.
Or you could add the city and then take the whole population.
Yeah, you could add the city and the state.
Neutralize and so on.
Yeah, there you go. Still gonna be lower.
Yeah. That's why I say, I don't necessarily follow those numbers, but if you even say one per thousand, I mean, you're not gonna get another 1.2 for the state police. I don't know how many troopers they have, but they don't have 60. We are significantly below even at one per thousand.
And Nate, is it fair to say that we've seen a decrease in the number of state police in the community?
Yes, and evidence by the screen here in a moment will show you the numbers of complaints that we take. Now, I don't know their numbers exactly.
They're low, they're not so big, 72?
They are low. They also have taken hits. These are the number of incidents I talked about earlier with you, about 47,000 incidents. What officers do every day. These are not dispatch calls. These are what we do. These are traffic stops, warrant attempts, subpoenas, whatever. This is a very good indication of what a law enforcement officer does. Back in 2006, you'll see a significant increase between 6 and 7, that is when we added our CAD. And CAD started capturing information differently than we used to. We are actually around this 28,000 number in criminal, in actual complaints, dispatch calls. But CAD started capturing what we actually do, which is a better way to look at what a law enforcement officer does. The criminal complaints are down here, 8320, 7695, and this is projected, this is a projected number for 2010. This is countywide, countywide calls for service for 2009. And to give you an idea, 2009, Grand Travis County took 23,000 of the dispatched calls. State police took 2,432. The city is also there. That breaks down to, we handled 62% of all calls, city handled 31, MSP handled 6% of all calls. And just in the county, county calls only, we handled 90%. So we are your enforcement arm in this county, there's no doubt about it.
Can you go back two slides real quick? So you're saying 2003 through 2006 is actually deceivingly low. Those numbers would've been higher if they were reported more correctly?
Yes, these numbers recorded the dispatch calls, all right? Now they record every time an officer does something, there's a.
They're just measuring different, they're different measures.
Different things. I just wanna clarify that we did not jump 22, or 12,000, 22,000 complaints.
Between 2007 and 2008, there was a little bit of a jump there, too. Is there a reporting reason for that as well?
No, just activity. To give you an example of how we handle our road patrol staff, this is a, I'm sorry, it's all messed up, but this is the actual physical schedule that the road patrol uses. And this thing might work on this, no, it doesn't work. I'm sorry you can't read it, you're not gonna get the effect.
Magnifying glasses.
Yeah, I may not even wanna.
We're all too old for that, Nate.
We don't have a hard copy of that that I could copy.
Not right.
We can't see them anyway, Nate.
I do.
Tom, go. Well, I guess what I wanna get out with the screen, it may not be important enough, Dennis, to run out and do, but what I wanna get out with this screen is this. I'll show you a breakdown of staffing analysis in a minute, but this is, we break our day into this. This is the number of road patrolmen and Garfield Township rotating officers, which is going to have to be explained in a minute. This is how many cops are out there working on any given day. Right now, we stack every Wednesday. Every Wednesday, every police officer in our department is supposed to be working. And we use those days for trainings. We have dive training, ERT training, dog handler training on those days. It doesn't work that way because of vacations and whatnot. But as you can't see, the day shift on August 16th, and I, has two deputies and a sergeant working the county. A Garfield Township officer on day shift, so that's three people working 466 square miles. That is not a lot of cops. This is a community police officer's schedule. These officers are scheduled by Lieutenant Morrow according to the needs of the townships and the department. We actually schedule them to offset our own staffing deficiencies from the county patrol. So if we're a little short on a Monday morning, there may be two Garfield cars scheduled, an East Bay Township car scheduled, a Blair Township car scheduled, and a Paradise Township car scheduled to minimize the impact on those three deputies.
Can I, I guess I need to make a remark here. You know, one of the, one of the comments that have come back from the township officials that have these supplemental officers or community police officers is that, you know, there's an expectation unless there's, I don't know exactly what your guidelines are within a department, is that, you know, the biggest concern they viewed to me was, "Hey, listen, if you guys knock down your road patrol with the sheriff's department, I don't wanna have our community policing officers that we're paying for responding outside of the township, supplementing your guys." I mean, we got, you know, that's just not fair. So, you know, as you make your determination about coverage outside of the community policing schedule, you guys better be making sure you got yourself covered. So, you know, I mean, how is that working within your department?
Well, right now, we have a contract that's up on the screen. Number five says there are occasionally instances where we have to go outside the borders of our township. Captain Emerson.
Emergency or whatever.
Yes, 911 calls, things of that nature, but they are supposed to immediately return. So Captain Emerson, Lieutenant Morrow are very vigilant in keeping the CPOs in their townships. But the reality is, Commissioner Inman, they have to go outside.
Correct.
And that, is that unfair to the townships? I think that it is. But the reality is, when those calls come, those calls have to be taken. And if we don't have enough county-funded law enforcement to handle those calls, who's gonna do it?
Well, I guess that's the point I wanted to make here.
Yeah, but on the other side of that coin, Nate, if there was a problem in a township that had a CPO that was on or wasn't on duty, and you needed to pull a CPO from another township to go help with an emergency, you would.
You bet.
Or more.
Yep, or more. And I'll give you an example. Most of these complaints that we handle are two and three officer complaints. Garfield Township, just from my perspective, gets their fair share. A lot of traffic enforcement done by the county, a lot of traffic enforcement done by secondary roads. All the cops have to drive through Garfield Township, they get their fair share of law enforcement. Peninsula Township may be a little different, Fife Lake Township may be a little different. But Dennis is right. This is a joint effort by everybody to get the job done. Now, some people are shorted because of that, but the job has to be done.
But now, wait a second, just, this is flawed, but if they'd say they'd see a difference from, you know, now, let's just say you eliminated four on the road patrol, which brings it back to 21, and they say, "I don't wanna see that happening." They would, they're still the same number that we're on in January, so if. So if they saw it happening now, but didn't see it in January, it's more perception, wouldn't it be, other than the calls you'd be getting from the schools, which Jackman has none? Right?
Well, they will not recognize a shortage in road patrol until the backflow, so to speak, comes back from complaints that are not investigated by the DB. So now, East Bay Township officer handles a B and E. That East Bay Township officer is doing that B and E. All right? Maybe a suicide or homicide, they're going to have to dedicate more and more time of theirs.
Our school A's on officers were working the road in the summer.
Uh, sometimes. Not always.
Sometimes, okay.
Yes.
But a lot of that work that we're going to lose with those four detectives is going to be picked up by these road patrol guys.
That's correct.
What's the hours of the shift? 10-hour, 12-hour?
10-hours.
10-hours?
Yep.
And so if I'm reading the schedule correctly, we'll use A Team Two Sergeant Taylor. He starts on the 19th and 20th. He's off. He works three. He's off four, and he works five. Then he's off two, works three, off four. Is that correct? And they're all on 10-hour shifts?
Yes.
Is this done, are these schedules done manually, or you have a computer program that offers you a lot of different options in scheduling?
They are rotating shifts, meaning they're on the same rotation all the time. The teams are. So once you are placed into a team, they rotate on that schedule that you just...
But aren't they bid?
They are. Hours are bid.
How many times a year?
Pardon?
Hours are bid four times a year.
Yeah, by shift, I understand that.
Kind of to enumerate or continue on what Commissioner Fleas was saying, I want to show you just in essence, by contract, what these officers have. And this goes for the road patrolmen and the corrections division as well. Depending on the number of RDOs they have, they work 171 days approximately. Now, this next piece is a little anonymous, but they work 171 days. These guys aren't working 365 days. That's why you need five and a half bodies per position. They are contractually allowed days off, holidays, vacation, personal, comp time, floating holidays, FTO time, bereavement leave, and core training. They have at least five days in training. So if the 171 days worked, if you multiply that by the number of deputies and sergeants, now we have said routinely that our sergeants, the six of them on the road patrol, also take complaints. They're not just sitting in the station drinking coffee and monitoring the radio. They're out there taking complaints. That's 8,550 days divided by the year, 23.42 deputies per day, and that equals 7.8 per shift. One of these is a sergeant, that drops it down to just under seven. That includes the CPOs.
But Nate, we should note that in our case, unlike some departments throughout the state, our sergeants work accidents, write tickets, do traffic stops.
Right. Every day, they take complaints, they investigate.
There are departments that that's not the case.
That is correct.
In our case, our sergeants do work.
Yep. In New York City, you're a sergeant, you get a driver, you drive around all day, never have to drive the car.
What was the number of hours that the deputy worked?
Number of hours, number of days?
Hours. Is it, you're figuring 171 days?
171 days worked.
Times 10?
So that'd be 1700 and...
No, yeah, but I mean, it's times 10 hours. That's how you're figuring it?
Yes, that's correct. All right. If you, these are the number of incidents. Basically, what it boils down to is that there are 6.37 incidents per deputy per day. All right? That's dividing that function into the 47,476 incidents, but that's with the CPOs. Our position has always been that supplemental law enforcement is contracted for additional law enforcement. You have your county law enforcement. We want more. We're going to give you money to pay for it. Now, the county does have to put money into that, and they do. And these are the contracts, in case you want to see those. This contract, coincidentally, is back to 1998. We are recently talking to the township supervisors about updating this, but these are your township officers. Garfield Township hires 11 deputies, one lieutenant, and one detective. The rest have one. East Bay has two. So those are your CPOs. What you need, what the county benefits from this program is the additional pool, so to speak, of officers. If there are overtime assignments needed, those officers can fill it. Those officers fill dive team, ERT, evidence techs, K-9 officers, whatever. It gives us 20 more police officers because the townships have funded those officers.
But when they do those things, they're paid for with county funds.
That is correct. Not, they are, overtime, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. That is correct. It also gives us an image of numbers. People say, "You have too many cops." You have 67. Well, we actually have 47. If those 20 weren't supplemented out, we wouldn't have those. Days, go back through this formula, days worked with the CPOs. If you take those CPOs out, that equals almost 11 incidents a day per deputy. And next year, that'll increase that to 14, almost 14 and a half incidents per deputy, if you take the four officers out. Next year. That is a significant increase. So what we're going to see, it just graphically shows the number of officers with CPOs and without, the number of complaints they're going to have to handle. The officers are not, you're going to have to work harder, we're going to have to do less, or we're going to have to work longer. Working longer means longer hours and overtime. Doing less means we're not going to do as much as we do right now for the public. And they really can't work any harder unless there's new efficiencies in law enforcement.
The four deputy positions that'd be eliminated, three of those are vacant right now?
We do have three vacancies right now due to one resignation. I'm sorry. We have a resignation and we have a termination vacancy. We have one officer out on suspension, so we have three, so we have two vacancies.
Two vacancies and one on suspension.
Yes, and we have not yet heard what's going to happen with the one. So the impact is just that. We're going to have to, the response time is going to go down, and we're going to have to do less work. Non-emergency services will diminish. That means civil disputes, standbys, warrants, warrant attempts, home visits, subpoenas, we're going to take longer to serve. All of those things have to happen, but you have to prioritize emergency services.
On August 15th, you said you had two deputies and sergeant on duty?
Um, I couldn't see that. August 16th.
16?
Yep.
And what shift was that?
That was day shift, which would be...
Yeah. This chart goes to August 15th.
Yeah, this only goes to the 15th.
16th, you have Sergeant Clark on, all right? That's not a one.
Well, this only goes to the 15th.
Oh, you have a different schedule?
We have a different schedule.
This is only goes to the 15th.
All right. I'm sorry, Commissioner Fleas, this schedule is different than what you have.
Well, okay, but you could still answer the question if you would.
Okay.
Two deputies and a sergeant on the day shift?
Yep.
And then what do you have for second shift that day?
Second shift, we had Sergeant Bogowski, Deputy Morton, Deputy McKinley. So two deputies and a sergeant and a Garfield car.
And that's on the second shift?
That's on the second shift.
What about midnights?
Midnights, we had Sergeant Rask, which is one, Deputy Taylor, so one deputy, one sergeant, and a Garfield deputy.
You know, my fellow commissioners, I submit to you, that is dangerous, period.
Amen.
And the state police, I know for a fact, a lot of nights don't even have a night car So we're going to have to be really careful when we look at the sheriff's budget, because we had the one officer killed in 1998, and we absolutely don't want another one.
I agree with that. I mean, that's awful thin. I, you know, I'm just wondering, this perception thing, I mean, you know, we still have the take-home policy for cars. That's what they do. I mean, you know, they're seeing them going back and forth or whatever, and they're saying, "Wow, look at all these cars." But, you know, these folks aren't on duty.
Right.
See...
And that's a policy that we made. I mean, that's the perception where it's coming from.
It's not bad.
And it's the correct perception, too. I mean, you know, they go, "Look, I'm not hanging around here. There's too many cars."
Yep.
Yeah, the undersheriff, though, has tried to get at this, I think. It's not bad if you got a slow night or a slow afternoon. There are no slow afternoons, really. There's some slow nights. But if you got a slow night, we'll say, and the activity is localized to the northeast of the county or to the southwest, what's really problematic is when you've got something going on up in this corner and something serious down here, and you only got three people. You really have to scramble them.
And we cannot tell an officer, you can't take a vacation day, you can't take a personal day, you can't take a comp day. There are rules that regulate that. And Commissioner Fleas is exactly correct. The shifts are not equal. You may not have, you may have a very slow day shift. So, okay, we'll short days. We'll only have two cars on day shift, two cars and a sergeant, but what happens if you have a domestic in progress on a day shift, which is possible? It doesn't happen every day, but it is possible. You still have to have those three bodies there to do the job. Some of these calls are multiple officer calls. We had Captain Emerson can speak about, you know, fatal accident takes four or five deputies to handle. People who are under the influence, out of control, that's a three-person call. So...
I touch on the Whitewater Park situation.
Sure.
Just to give you an example of what Mr. Fleas was talking about this summer, we had our normal shift strength on. Calls were going out all over. We had multiple fights and issues going on. There were about 15 unruly intoxicated individuals at a local campground, and enough was enough. They wanted them shut down. Dispatch sent two deputies out there, and I happened to live by there. The two deputies got on scene. Things started to escalate to the point that a couple campers called 911 and said, "You need to get your officers more help out here." I did, I was not aware of this. I was asleep. It was about 2:00 in the morning. My phone rang because the camp host knows me personally, yelling on the phone and says, "You need to get down here right now. Your officers are in trouble, and they need help." Obviously, I jumped and got my blue jeans on, was out the door. Unbeknownst to me, Central had already received a 911 call from another camper. And as I'm pulling out of my driveway, approximately five patrol cars went by, lights and sirens. What had happened was, we had an OYL grant working in Acme that just happened to be out that night, and they all headed that way. When we got there, the thing escalated even more. One of the guys was subsequently tased, and we were able to get out of there. We subsequently went back there twice that night. Had those grant cars not been in Acme and responded, it would have been me responding to back them up. The sergeant was somewhere in Garfield Township, 15, 20 minutes away. Does that happen every night? No. Does it happen? Yeah, sure does. And if that doesn't start to concern people, you should be, because that does happen more than you know. And again, the take-home cars have saved my bacon and other officers multiple times. Had the take-home cars not been going to and from corps or to and from work, I know many instances where that officer would have been left hanging out there because we only have three cars on the road. And you can't be in Fife Lake and interlocking at the same time, so that's my concern with all this. Those officers were pretty shook that night, to the point we had to call them and counsel them after that. It was a pretty tense situation. It's no wonder somebody wasn't seriously injured, so...
See, what the captain failed to mention, though, was it can start out a normal, routine call at the campground. Two deputies surely can handle it. And within minutes, it can escalate to a situation, and I can tell you, down on Clinch Park Beach one night, Cherry Festival's fireworks night, we had some unruly individuals down there, and I sent two people down there. Now, you've got to remember, I got everybody in the city working, and I've got several deputies and state troopers in the city. And they said, "You need to come down here." So I went down there. Well, by the time I got down there, which was just minutes, it had escalated to a situation where I finally looked around quickly and thanked God for parents and all their children. These people were really unruly swearing. It was a family situation where, you know, you've got mom and dad and all the kids going to watch the fireworks. And thanked God for citizens that were willing to get involved. I looked at them, and I said, "Come on, we need your help." Yelled at them. And these guys came, and I said, "I want that one, that one, that one." And we literally arrested all of them with citizens doing the escorting. But that quick. And of course, we're fortunate, because we were in the city and I had all them cops that, I suppose if I would have screamed, I could have had some, but still, the cops wouldn't have got there as quickly as those citizens did. Where was this? Whitewater? Yeah. There's a big difference there.
Yeah, you guys have 2.2 officers per thousand.
Okay. Close. Okay, if there's another question about road patrol, I'd like to bring Captain Hall up, and that'll conclude our...
We're going to take a break.
Sorry?
He's got to load his gun.
He, he told me that...
None of us have to load ours.
How long, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, what difference does it make? 25 after.
Okay.
15 minutes? We get 15 minutes?
We deserve it.
Well, I hope you have no illusion that we're going to be out of here at 6:00.
No. We were supposed to be out of here at 5:00, and no, I have no illusion. Thank you. Thank you.
Six positions from the Corrections Division. And some line item reductions that Captain Hall will also address through the presentation.
Thank you. The very first thing that's up on the monitor up there, already out of line with NIC recommendations for staffing. If you recall, some of you may recall back 2004, 2003, somewhere around there, the county hired a couple of consultants, Mr. Lieber and Mr. Bennett, to come in and help orchestrate our future, to try to alleviate jail overcrowding. While Mr. Bennett, or Mr. Lieber was here, Mr. Lieber co-authored the Staffing Analysis Book for the National Institute of Corrections. He did a cursory, not in-depth, but just a cursory analysis of our staffing to see what recommendation we would need to staff the remodeled wing that we did in 2005. At that time, he said we were nine to 12 officers shy, as some of you may recall that, nine or 12 officers shy of what we should have to safely and adequately run the jail. I'm going to show you a little bit about where we have our officers staffed and why we have the staffing levels that we do. But I first wanted to set the legal basis for what we do and why we do it. When I started, almost 31 years ago, this was the bible for running the jail. This little book, that was it. Everything that you wanted to know about running the jail, you had to follow this book. Since then, this is our bible, as well as these two books from the American Correctional Association. These are not mandated standards, but these are the core standards and the standards for running an adult local detention facility adopted by the National Institute of Corrections and the American Correctional Association. These standards are the first thing a plaintiff's attorney holds up in a lawsuit and says, "Why aren't you doing it this way? This is the way that's recognized nationally as the minimum standard you're supposed to be doing." Every policy and procedure, every directive, every staffing, every decision we make on how we operate the jail, pretty much is based on using this as our guiding principle. And we do that. Sitting over there on that back table are four books, there's three up and one down. Those four notebooks represent case law involving jail lawsuits over the last 20 years that deal with every element of running a jail, from mail to meals, to staffing, to you name it, everything in there. Those represent all the failures across the United States that ended up in court and the subsequent case law decisions that we use to make sure that what we're doing follows the recommendations of the federal courts. With that, I'll start on the board, or you want to?
Yeah, well, Captain Hall is doing that. I want to just, the importance of these standards is this, as you're well aware, we have been in litigation now for quite some time with a female inmate that hung herself in our jail. That was recently, our summary, request for summary judgment was granted recently because in part, the jail's compliance with our own policies and those of the standards mentioned in these books. The judge not only dismissed the, or granted summary, he also wrote quite a lengthy opinion about what the officers did and why the officers were right in what they did. They certainly have an appeal right to that, and that will most likely be appealed, but I wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
This represents a rough artist sketch, and I am the artist of.
Really?
Really rough. This is your jail in Grand Travers County. The central core of this jail is this area right down through here that stops right here. This is the 1964 slash 65 version of the Grand Travers County Jail. Commissioner Fleesh, you probably remember that one real well. Back in 1984, 85, they added this section down here, as well as this wing down here. And this was formerly the law enforcement wing that housed the Traverse City Police Department, Central Records, for a while, Central Dispatch, and the Grand Travers County Sheriff's Office, Road Patrol, and Detective Bureau. You can see why this little section right here got very crowded real quick, and that's why they moved. In 2005, we inherited this area, and it was remodeled to give us 39 more beds. And most importantly, it gave us seven segregation cells. One of the things that came out of Mr. Lieber and Bennett's assessment of our jail is you only had one, two, three, four, five cells for housing segregated inmates. Inmates that, for whatever reason, cannot get along with other inmates in the facility, have medical issues, mental health issues, are disciplinary issues where they broke jail rules and needed to be segregated. We only had five, so we picked up seven more. Six of these can be double bunk, so if I don't need to use them for segregation cells, they do qualify under Michigan Department of Corrections rules and standards to let me double bunk them, so I could just have general population inmates in there. This last one on the end down here is ADA compliant, made for a wheelchair, it's a single bunk lower to the floor. I'm going to talk a little bit about where we have our officers, what their responsibilities are, and why we need the officers where we need them. First of all, we have a sergeant. This is a post for the supervisor. The shift sergeant's responsible for all the assets of the county in this building, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. On the middle of the night, on Sunday morning at 2:00, in the middle of winter in a blizzard, this sergeant has to make sure that everything is going right in this building and that the building is secure and that the inmates are taken care of. Anytime I've given any of you tours in the jail, if you recall, I always check with the sergeant first, make sure it's okay with the sergeant that I enter a particular area. They lay out a master plan for their operation of the day, and I don't want to mess it up. So I go through them. We have a post right here, which is the control center. This is the brand-new control center that was remodeled with all the state-of-the-art electronics equipment and cameras and computer controls and everything that controls 96 cameras, 190-some intercoms to get through the doors, emergency call buttons, pan tilt zoom cameras in some areas, and especially outside. It's also the area where the officer in there has to answer the phone. If you call the jail, it rings in here. The officer also handles a radio system that has three different channels, one talking to the officers that are working in the jail, and outside officers coming in asking for entrance into our security sally port to bring inmates to the jail. A second frequency is for all the program people that work in our jail and non-officers. Could be maintenance staff, we give them a portable radio to use, counselors, instructors, mental health personnel, they all have radios that they use to be able to communicate with the control center, so we can follow them through the building and talk to them if we have needs or they have needs. Third channel is a court channel. Any of our officers that go to court, either the historic courthouse or the Hall of Justice, they switch to that channel so that they're nice and quiet in the courtroom, and the only time they hear anything is if the control center's asking them for something. They're not hearing an officer asking to unlock a door or move an inmate to the medical room or something like that. They don't want to be disruptive in the courtroom. The DK security people, we give them portables too, just on the court channel. Every DK security person has a portable radio, they talk among themselves, they talk to our officers in the courthouse, and they talk back to the control center. Anytime they have a problem or an issue with somebody, they can call an officer, they call us, and we respond or we deal with it. The other thing they do is they keep a log of everybody that comes into the facility. All the motion inside the facility, attorneys come in, counselors, probation officers, they have to log that. It's a very busy, busy job. During the daytime, when this thing is just hopping and we've got courts going in both places, one officer cannot handle that. But all I have staff, in my staffing plan, is for one officer. As this officer gets overwhelmed, the whole system slows down, because you don't move through a door unless he or she pushes a button that'll let you go through the door. It's a very critical post, and that's staff 24/7. We have another post right here called the booking or the intake post. People coming into our jails as arrestees will either enter through the sally port in the back, in the backseat of a patrol car, or they'll be brought in through the main entrance, either from the courts or a car has dropped people off here too, and they've walked them in. They come into the jail, and here they get processed. The booking process takes about an hour. Everything that we're required, all the information we're required to glean from the state by mandates and laws, financial information, we have to do a myriad of things that we put into the computer. Search them, inventory all their property, get it into the property storage room, everything takes. We have to do a medical assessment, a mental health assessment, all during the intake process. Takes a good hour at best. Sometimes if they're less than cooperative, it could be an hour and a half to two hours to process one single person into the Grand Travers County Jail. Yesterday at this time, we had 14 inmates, new, fresh arrests, sitting there waiting to be processed. I only have one booking officer. We would be backed up a long ways if I didn't call in overtime or hold a day shift over to help process these people. Problem with booking, if the person's being sentenced to due time in the Grand Travers County Jail, 90 days, it really doesn't matter if he gets booked now or two hours from now. He isn't going anywhere. It's the fresh arrest off the street that comes in that has a right to post a bond, to have a bond set. Magistrate or the judge won't even see them or post a bond until we have certain paperwork done, and the booking process is done, the fingerprints are done. So we have to do that. We have to do that in a timely manner, or we're holding up the wheels of justice. And if it gets too lengthy, we're now infringing on their rights. So that's got to be, the booking post is one that is just very busy. And anybody that's being released takes about a half hour, inventory all their property back, inventory all the jail property back, make sure the release paperwork's right. This person's responsible for all the releases too. And that's a constant process. Our priority's on the releases. We want to get, as soon as an inmate's given paperwork indicating that they can be released from the county jail, we need to get them out of there. Keeping them there an undue length of time starts raising the liability for the county. So those are things that we're concerned about. Now we talk about posts. The Michigan Department of Corrections Jail Services Unit is the unit that oversees and has legislative responsibility over the Grand Travers County Jail, all the jails in the state of Michigan. That's the unit that comes in once a year and does this great big inspection. You remember the inspection that we had last year where we had an issue with the medical? That's the, that's the firm that, or the agency that comes in and tells us how to run our jail. We have to follow. They're the ones that mandate that great big black book right there. In fact, they're coming in in a couple of weeks to do their annual inspection again. Anywhere that you have inmates in large numbers in population in your jail, you're supposed to have an officer there to supervise them. I'll show you where we have our housing posts. We have a post right here. This post right here is responsible for 22 inmates. Here, 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 and here. This cell, this cell, this cell, this cell, and this cell are intake cells. People that are coming in off the street get put there. If they're detox or intoxicated, highly intoxicated individuals, fighters, inmates with severe mental illness, or suicidal, they draw these individual single isolation cells, everybody else ends up in here. The females, we end up having to move into one of these general population cells, which is not a good thing. They have to be changed out into jail clothing and moved into here, and there are rules that prevent us from doing strip searches on fresh arrests unless they meet certain criteria. So it's always a gamble for us in moving inmates into areas of general population when they're not general population inmates yet. But the physical plant prevents us from doing that. So this person has 22 inmates plus all of the intake people. Feeding, medications, an hourly check, the rule requires that less than an hour, we have to physically see every inmate in our jail. We have to do a round, is what we call it. We have to make sure that every inmate is okay, appears okay, living, breathing bodies is the way the state tells us we have to do that. So there's a post in the 100 section right here, there's an officer there. The 200 section and the 300 section, the post is right here. This is a converted plumbing locker that we put a chair in and a table and a desk and a computer. The officer works out of that. This officer is responsible for 83 inmates. This whole section of the jail here and here, these are six-person cells, so there's 48 here. You have six inmates here and six inmates here, or 16 rather, on each of those, and you have three inmates in maximum security. We currently have three inmates in maximum security. They are very, very dangerous people.
Bob, I thought there was a limit that any one officer could?
There is on a direct supervision housing unit.
So this is indirect?
This is indirect. This is linear.
Yeah.
There's three styles of jails. There's linear, which all the old jails were. You walk down and you've got cells on each side and bars on each side, that's an old linear jail. There's remote podular. This is a remote podular, which was the latest, greatest fad back in the 80s, where you have several little rooms with inmates that open up into a large day room. But the supervision of that is still remote from a remote control center. There's nobody living in there with them. The latest, greatest is direct supervision. If this were a direct supervision housing unit, there'd be a desk in here with an officer living right in there with him, 24/7. A lot of people, a lot of the more senior officers are a bit reluctant to be doing that. They don't want to spend their whole day in there. But they have found out nationwide, worldwide, it's now caught on, it's a safer jail, a cleaner jail, a quieter jail, and it's cheaper to construct. You have an officer, if all of you were inmates, and you're sitting there contemplating escaping, it's kind of hard to do when there's an officer standing right here listening to your plans. It's hard to fashion a weapon if there's an officer standing right here watching you. It's hard to start damaging the furniture and the furnishings when there's an officer standing right here with you.
We contemplate a lot of things, and Dennis never even knows.
It'd be hard to get a sheet off the bed and down the toilet.
It would, it would, because I'd see it, all right? And that's the whole thing. The safer jail is the officer will catch the argument from the inmates playing cards before it turns into fisticuffs and bloodshed and somebody finally hits an emergency call button, all right? This section down here, here's the post down here. This officer is responsible for these inmates and all the inmates in segregation. This officer is responsible for up to 63 inmates. The last section we have is a little building out back, which is our work release minimum security building. This building used to be a county maintenance double-wide trailer way back in the 70s, 60s.
It still is a double-wide trailer.
It still is. It was remodeled in 1988. We occupied it in 88, and it's got 26 beds. It's got a dormitory on one end, it looks like an army barracks, bathroom, shower facility in the middle, and a day room on the other side. But there's a, there's a post right here, there's an officer assigned there, and the desk is right in the middle of the inmates. That is a direct supervision housing unit. Now, the security issue. These cells right here house our medium-security inmates. Every inmate that comes into our building, I missed the post, I'm sorry. This is our rover post. This officer does everything, kind of like a relief person in a factory on a shift. These people all have to have breaks. By contract, they get a 15-minute break at the beginning of their shift, 15-minute break somewhere toward the end of their shift, and they get a half-hour lunch. Whenever that officer vacates the post, this rover fills the post. This rover's moving around all over the place, filling the post. This rover's also responsible for going out to the sally port, greeting the arresting officer, bringing in that inmate after the inmate's been thoroughly searched out there and their property taken, bringing them into the booking area and turning them over to the booking officer. Also same thing if the inmates come in from the lobby. Officers, attorneys, counselors, probation officers, anybody coming to visit the inmates is greeted by the rover out here and searched. Their property is searched, to make sure they're not bringing anything in, and then routed to the proper conference room. The rover's very busy, all right? Yes?
Don't you have a population coordinator?
Yes. Right here. Monday through Friday, I have an officer that's assigned as a population coordinator. Officer works Monday through Friday's day shift. Population coordinator is one that is a person that's responsible for taking the inmates after they've been there for a while and assigned to general population, assessing them, liaising with the courts to determine whether or not they're applicable or qualify for community corrections. They work with the community corrections department and they move them out. This person plays a critical role in reduce keeping our inmate population down. The person also fills in and does classifications. Once a person is in our jail for up to 72 hours, if it looks like they're not going to leave, or if they're sentenced to due time, we know they're not going to leave, this 100 section post, part of his or her responsibility is to get this person out, classify them. Classification process is one that takes anywhere from one to two hours or less if the person's a repeat offender and we know pretty much everything about him or her. They will sit down and go through a whole list of questions, looking at their past criminal behavior, their past institutional behavior in jails, were they escape risk, were they assault risk, are they rule breakers, learn a little bit about their education, their needs, try to find a program for them. All of this translates on a tree that gives them a number. But when they're all done with the classification process, they get a number of one through eight. One's minimum security, eight's maximum security. According to the Michigan Department of Corrections, I have to keep minimum securities together, medium securities together, maximum securities together. And this is in wherein we have our problem with our housing. I could have a housing unit here that has six beds with four medium-security females. If I get a minimum-security female or a maximum-security female, I cannot put her in there. I have two beds that I cannot use. She could end up being right next door, taking up six beds with a single person, depending on their classification. You can't mix the classifications. Our medium-security inmates are down here. These six-person cells are the old part of the jail. This officer, once an hour, has to walk around the outside, our catwalk if you will, of this area and look in the cell. They go in here, they walk around this housing unit. At nighttime, all of these inmates are confined to their rooms and they're locked in. The officer has to go up the stairs and down the stairs. There's four cells up, four cells down, it's a two-story. And they have to look in each one and make sure everybody's living and breathing, you have to see motion, all right? Many times they'll tap on the door and they go, "That's good, you're alive," and they move to the next one, all right? Thanks for a restless night sleeping. When this person, this officer is supposed to be supervising these 83 inmates, and I'm here to tell you, there's very little if no supervision going on at all. You can't. It's hard to supervise these people when there's nobody down here. When this officer walks through here and walks through and sees everybody, I liken it to a classroom in an elementary school of young people. If you walked, if the teacher walked out of the room and said, "I'll be back in an hour," these people are going to do all kinds of nifty, creative things. And what happens as soon as the teacher walks back into the room? They stop. Everything's fine. Teacher leaves again. They know we're not coming back for a half-hour to an hour. They don't know exactly when. Sometimes our officers are creative enough, they go this way, turn around, and go back again. And they catch all kinds of good things. The only time we're actually supervising these inmates is the minute that it takes or less to go across the back of that cell. The rest of the time, and that's one of the fallacies in an old linear jail, the rest of that time, the meanest, toughest hombre in that cell is supervising that cell. They determine what TV channel to watch, how much food he's going to eat and steal off everybody else's trays, what bunk he's going to have, when he gets shower privileges. I mean, that's just a fact of jail life, all right?
Bob, when they're doing that walk in the catwalk, do the inmates also like, "I need this, I need to see a nurse," so they're not only just walking, but they're trying to deal with?
You should see when the captain goes back in the catwalk. They have all kinds of questions, I mean, everybody's lined up for questions and stuff, and I say, "See your officer, talk to your officer." So this is a very intensive thing. This officer is also responsible for feeding every cell, escorting inmates down to the medical if they need to go to medical, providing security when the nurse comes around and does the medication distribution. There should be an officer there when you pop that door open with these medium-security inmates, changing their clothing, the laundry, they do it right in the cell. The rulebook says that these inmates, if you don't have a day room, a designated day room, and they don't, they just have six bunks. Commissioner Wheelock, you know what it's like in there, there's six bunks.
How is that?
Not as an inmate, but just visiting our jail and going through it. A picnic table, a shower, and a toilet, and that's basically all that's in there. What we're supposed to do is take them and give them one hour a day out of cell time to a recreation area like the gymnasium. I don't have, and you're supposed to supervise them while you're doing it. I don't have the staff to do that. I do not have the staff. We're lucky to get them out there once a week, all right? This officer down here, this section here is also medium security. We have 26 bunks with 26 medium-security inmates, all in the same room. If we took, you would think if there was no officer watching these guys, that would be very dangerous. Those 26 would prey on each other fairly quick. Somebody would, all right? We put a post right here, and this officer assigned to this post, male or female, spends much of their day right in the housing unit trying to apply the principles of direct supervision. And it works rather well. They determine whether it's clean enough. If it's not clean enough, I'm not turning the television on in there until you clean it again. They clean it again until the place is sparkling, TVs come on, all right? This officer is also responsible for all seven of these segregation cells, as well as the 400 section east and west. There's 12 inmates in each section of 400. These are minimum-security workers that go out into the community. Female. The rest of the time, and that's one of the fallacies in an old linear jail, the rest of that time, the meanest, toughest hombre in that cell is supervising that cell. They determine what TV channel to watch, how much food he's going to eat and steal off everybody else's trays, what bunk he's gonna have, when he gets shower privileges. I mean, that's just a fact of jail life.
Bob, when they're, when they're doing that walk-in catwalk, do the inmates also like, "I need this, I need to see a nurse," so they're not only just walking, but they're trying to deal with...
You should see when the captain goes back in the catwalk. They have all kinds of questions, I mean, everybody's lined up for questions and stuff, and I say, "See your officer, talk to your officer." So this is a very intensive thing. This officer is also responsible for feeding every cell, escorting inmates down to the medical, if they need to go to medical, providing security when the nurse comes around and does the medication distribution. There should be an officer there when you pop that door open with these medium-security inmates, changing their clothing, the laundry, they do it right in the cell. The rulebook says that these inmates, if you don't have a day room, a designated day room, and they don't, they just have six bunks. Commissioner Wheelock, you know what it's like in there. There's six bunks. Not as an inmate, but just, just visiting our jail and going through it. A picnic table, a shower, and a toilet, and that's basically all that's in there. What we're supposed to do is take them and give them one hour a day out of cell time to a recreation area like the gymnasium. I don't have, and you're supposed to supervise them while you're doing it. I don't have the staff to do that. I do not have the staff. We're lucky to get them out there once a week. Alright? This officer down here, this section here is also medium-security. We have twenty-six bunks with twenty-six medium-security inmates, all in the same room. If we took... You would think if there was no officer watching these guys, that would be very dangerous. Those twenty-six would prey on each other fairly quick. Somebody would, alright? We put a post right here, and this officer assigned to this post, male or female, spends much of their day right in the housing unit trying to apply the principles of direct supervision. And it works rather well. They, they determine whether it's clean enough. If it's not clean enough, I'm not turning the television on in there until you clean it again. They clean it again until the place is sparkling, TVs come on, alright? This officer is also responsible for all seven of these segregation cells, as well as the four-hundred section east and west. There's twelve inmates in each section of four-hundred. These are minimum-security workers that go out into the community. Female and male. They have odd working hours, afternoon shift, midnight shift, or they work in the facility itself. Working in the laundry, in the kitchen, as inmate workers, cleaning the floors, things like that. This officer, once an hour, has to look at every one of them, whoever's in there. Other people may be out. This last section up here, we have an officer up there, those are minimum-security inmates that go out Monday through Friday from eight to four. They either go out to community projects like Goodwill or Peninsula Township, or they're working at different places, Beta, Traverse City area public schools, they're washing school buses, or they have jobs, regular jobs in the community. They will go out and go to their regular job at the end of the day instead of going home. This is their home. They come back and see us, alright? At eight o'clock in the morning when the last one leaves, we lock the doors. This officer comes down and ends up being one of my court officers. On the weekends and afternoons and midnights, if you have one inmate in that housing unit, you have to have an officer. So we open it up and the steady stream of inmates come back from work or programs or whatever they were at. That's eight officers. Eight officers. That's my minimum shift strength, if you will, for the jail, for us to, to handle it properly. I suggest to you that on day shift, Monday through Friday, that's not enough for running just the jail. I'm not talking about courts yet, I'm just talking about jail. This booking post with fourteen inmates sitting there and another four or five that needed to be released, one officer cannot keep up with that. We ended up with the sergeant filling in a post, and I ended up having to hold two people over from the day shift for four hours to help cut down that, that number. And the control center, with one person in there, is just a disaster. I have, on many occasions, gone in to be the second officer. There are deputies, I'm sure, that would rather have me sitting across the hall, because I'm not sure I helped them all that much. I probably caused more work for them. But I can push buttons with the best of them.
Captain, I have nine to ten officers.
Pardon me?
I don't have eight, I have nine to ten.
Well, the population coordinator is just Monday through Friday.
Oh, and I guess I counted a second control person.
And there's only one control officer. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Now, the DLC says that any time I move inmates to programs, I'm supposed to have an officer in the immediate area for the program, for the safety and secure the inmate and for the program provider. The only place we have room for programs is we have classrooms in the basement. This officer will gather up inmates for substance abuse class or GED or Bible study or whatever. They march down through here, down a set of stairs into a classroom. That officer has to get back to be able to supervise the rest of the inmates. I don't have an officer available to do that. I just don't have it. I don't have them anywhere. If you look at staffing these eight posts, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year, that comes up to forty-four positions. Like, counting me, no, not counting me. Not counting me.
You and your two clerks.
Not counting, well, yeah, that's forty-five. But not counting me or the lieutenant or the two clerks, that's forty-one, I'm short. I can't staff all of these positions as I'm supposed to, or I feel I need to, even absent the areas I think I need to increase with the staff I have. Now, what even complicates it even more is there's a building here called the Hall of Justice that has three district court judges, magistrate, family court, two referees, and probation officers. On any given day during the week, I have anywhere from two to three officers in that Hall of Justice all day. They're either on trials, arraignments from people that are out on the street, not in the jail, jury selections. There, there's a myriad of reasons why.
These people are escorting inmates?
No, they're not escorting, they're just there as bailiffs. Another officer is functioning as a transport officer, moving inmates to and from. He'll take, or she will take one or two over, take them to the different courtrooms, pick up one or two that are done, bring them back, take a couple more over and bring them back. So I've got another one tied up, moving inmates back and forth between the buildings. Probation officers have called saying, "We've got somebody here." Just yesterday, it was either the magistrate or the probation officer that called and said, "I have a person here that I know has a warrant. Can you send somebody?" I don't have anybody. We had fourteen people to be booked, I mean, we, we just didn't have anybody to send. They ended up asking the city police to come by, make the arrest, and bring the person around, and now it became fifteen people there. In the historic courthouse, I have two circuit judges, friend of the court, probation officers, which moved back from Elmwood. At any given time, I probably have one officer in there doing something. On some days, I have two. If it's a, a notable trial or a trial of somebody or hearing that we have gotten information in advance that it could be a very serious or threatening case, we've had as many as four, five around there, especially if there's family and friends that are threatening to hurt the inmate or family issues back and forth. I don't have those. I mean, I, I don't have people to staff that or this. One thing that's left is our transport. Our transport vehicle has two officers in it. It travels around the state three, sometimes four days a week. It's a nice vehicle, if you haven't seen it, it's got all kinds of neat stuff in it. But it's on the road all the time, either taking prisoners to Jackson Prison. Pardon me?
I had a question about when you have, you know, these officers in, in the various courts, does that just mean that they're not at their posts in the jail?
No, they're at their posts in the jail. That means I either schedule such that I can put more people here today, if I know there's gonna be a trial today, I can vary the schedules. Most often, Commissioner Richardson, they're there on overtime. I just don't have them. I don't have them, so I gotta bring them in on overtime.
And then there's the situations where we have a problem over here on the prosecutor's office, or one of the emergency buttons goes off, and everybody over here expects...
That someone from the jail will come over and deal with the issue. We had one two weeks ago.
Usually what happens is the rover goes, and this person goes. They're the first two responders to an alarm in the courthouse or the Hall of Justice. On the admin side, we have a reception window that acts as the reception window for the whole jail. Anybody coming in, leaving money for inmates, clothing for inmates, picking up clothing from inmates that we sent down to prison because they can't take their property with them, leaving books, magazines, whatever for the jail, leaving, getting fingerprinted.
Visitation.
Visitation. Any attorney coming to the jail, and Commissioner Stepka can vouch for this, they have to register at this window. Because we have to, by law, have, have to keep track of every person that comes into the jail and who they saw. So there's a, there's a, a log that's constantly maintained. I have two clerks. One works Monday through Friday, eight to four. Second one works Monday through Friday, nine to five, except Wednesdays. She works eleven to seven because we have fingerprinting for the public in the lobby from five to seven in the evening, so she works eleven to seven. Anytime, there's always one clerk at the window. When she takes lunch, they stagger, the other one comes up here to run the window. This window is non-stop.
What if it's on the weekend, Bob?
There is no coverage there on the weekend. There, the, the traffic that comes in on the weekend minimizes big time, except for visitation registration, visitings on Saturdays. We have, across the lobby, there's a after-hour window here. Either the rover or the one-hundred post officer will staff that window for visitation, registration, accepting money, things like that during the visitation time. We don't take property and any other property or anything on the weekends. Just money, money, right?
That's correct.
Just money and registering to visit. We just don't have the people to deal with it. We generate a ton of paperwork in this jail. Courts generate a ton of paperwork. Any inmate that's in there, we get all kinds of paperwork. Their medical screening, all that stuff, gets put into files. Our files are in a room that was fabricated years ago into the garage. If you've ever been in there, there's a concrete half-wall that comes up. Those records in that room have exceeded the capacity of that room. But every day, we have to file everything into the proper files and get them in there. During the daytime, one of the clerks is assigned to do that and to move files from there way down into a cold storage room in the basement. And then after a certain amount of time for the record retention law in Michigan, that along with a lot of other records that we keep and information, training records and so on, have to be purged. So the other clerk's constantly doing that. The old room that we used to have downstairs for evidence is a room that would keep all the cold, stored archive records for the law enforcement and central records. They are constantly calling over, asking for records to be pulled. That second clerk runs down and does that, pulls all those for them across town, for the detective bureau if they're opening a new case or whatever. There's a tremendous amount of activity that happens in this jail. And if you've ever been here during the daytime in the middle of the week, you, you'll see it. I mean, it's just insane sometimes how busy it is. We have one captain, one lieutenant, seven sergeants, thirty-four corrections officers, and two office specialists. I, I can't, and I, I'll be honest with you, I can't see how I can function taking six officers away from this operation and half of my clerical staff. I, I just don't see how we can do that. Yes?
Captain, you mentioned fingerprinting when people come in. Would you address how juveniles have to be treated differently than adults?
Certainly. We have a station right out front here with a portable fingerprint machine. On Wednesdays, the public comes in and gets fingerprinted for concealed weapons permits, licensing. If you're for employment, different places require fingerprints. We do all that right here, and that pulls one of these officers out here to do the fingerprints. Alright? Also, juveniles from probate court, if they're on probation or, or being arrested, probate court has to have fingerprints taken of the juvenile. Federal laws demand that if we keep juveniles, if they come into a facility, they have to be sight-sound separated from adults. We have it set up where we will fingerprint the juvenile right out here because we can't have them for more than six hours in the jail anyway, they have to be moved somewhere. And in most cases, they are moved immediately back to the parents or they're moved to a secure adult or juvenile detention facility. Probate court, we train four, five of their personnel. If the person doesn't need to get processed into the jail, but they need to be fingerprinted, they will come over, they have access to this, they print them right here, and then they take them back to probate. They never enter the jail. At the end of the day, my shift sergeant on midnights takes this equipment, takes it in, hooks it into the main fingerprint machine that we have in the jail, instantly downloads it all to AFIS, the Automated Fingerprint Identification System at the state police. We have an issue with the fingerprint machine. The fingerprint machine is no longer gonna be supported as far as repairs and maintenance as of April of next year. I put that amount into our budget, it was cut before it got to you. What that means is we lose this in April. It's no longer there. Juveniles coming in will have to come back into the main part of the jail, which would mean that I have to vacate this whole section of the jail of all males or adults before I can fingerprint them. We thought about, well, if we lose that, we just won't do fingerprints for the public anymore because there is a private firm in town called Identix that has set up fingerprint services, and they do print people. Probably on a more user-friendly timeframe than just our Wednesdays, but it's gonna be more expensive for the public. But those people, we, we, we found out that one document I gave you is an excerpt from the concealed weapons law, which says that somebody looking for a concealed weapons permit has to be fingerprinted, the sheriff shall fingerprint them. Which means now I gotta clear people out of here and bring the public in, search them, bring them back in, take a set of fingerprints. That's just gonna be a nightmare.
Captain?
That was fourteen-four?
Yes, sir.
For that new machine?
Yes.
Fourteen thousand four hundred.
Yes.
That's just what I was gonna ask, how much is the...
A little over fourteen thousand.
And at the moment, we do not charge fees for Grand Traverse County residents.
Except for CCWs, that's a state law. But any other licensing or anything, if they're a Grand Traverse County resident, no, we do not charge.
And before we discontinue the fees, can you address what revenue that we received that if we reinstated those fees might be applied to purchasing that equipment? So we don't have to clear out half the jail with the juvenile.
It's about seventy-five hundred dollars. Seventy-five hundred dollars is what we were...
A year.
A year.
I have a question. So if you shut down section five-hundred, then those people have to go into the general population?
Yes.
And there's no work release?
No, if, if the judge authorizes work release and the person meets our criteria to qualify for work release, the work release will still go out. Here's what we'd end up doing, is moving these... And that's the only option we had, because that's four, a little over four bodies, four FTEs out there, to staff that if we were to shut that down. We could pull that, those would be the people, four of the people that we would lose, alright? We would move these medium-security inmates back into this section of the jail. We would turn this area here into our work release inmate worker area, our work release. We would pull some of these inmates out of here that had the strange hours and bring them here, because we're still gonna have to staff this post for all of these people. So this person can watch them no matter what time, day or night, they're there anyway. But these people would have to come and go out of the lobby of the jail. And because they're coming back into the bowels of the jail, if you will, it presents to us serious concerns for contraband. We can't just do a quick pat-down back here and that person, we don't worry about drugs going from there, drugs, weapons going from there into the main part of the jail. Here we would. Somebody coming in the lobby here is gonna have to be searched, strip-searched, changed into jail clothing before they're allowed back into this housing unit. My impact statement that I, I gave all of you is to reduce the number of people that are going out, reduce the workload on the staff that's back in the jail. We wouldn't do that on work releases, but we would certainly do that on inmate workers. Used to be called trustees, that go out into the community. We just don't have the people to spend the time necessary to search them all coming back and still adequately provide supervision of these inmates back here. I just don't have them.
Dennis?
Yes.
Would you make a note when we go back through our budget discussions, just to remind me, because I've got piles of paperwork here and I have a tendency to lose it, to address that the board addressed the fact that they have this fingerprinting machine that is expiring or is not going to be supported in April?
We've got a note on it.
Alright, thank you.
One of the things that Dean and I were gonna look at, depending on how this all works itself out, is since it's used both for juveniles and for adults, I mean, I would, I would love for you to consider reinstating a, a fee.
Well, I would like the discussion.
But, but even if that doesn't occur, we were, we were thinking, we were, we were gonna look and investigate if at the year-end, there might be some money left over. There's not gonna be much left over in this budget, but also in the juvenile court budget that might be able to be used to purchase that still this year as a replacement. But fourteen-four, it's a big number.
It is.
And I don't know that whether there'd be money to do that, but definitely we gotta do something about that because we cannot be in a situation where we're bringing public into that jail.
Dennis, we're, we've got a possible option for that.
You do?
We are about to get a check for fifteen thousand dollars from Securus, correct?
For the recent contract that we just awarded them.
Telephone contract?
Yes.
It's a signing bonus.
Okay, so we could use that for the fingerprinting?
We could apply it to the fingerprint machine.
Well, that would be wonderful if we could do it.
But it's also budgeted revenue, the phone commission, so...
No, it's not off the, it's not in the phone commission because we didn't, we didn't anticipate a signing bonus revenue this last time around.
We'll check it out, but that may be a mech, a mechanism to address that issue.
One of my concerns when we talk about closing the five-hundred section, you know, my old memory tells me that was a temporary permit.
Yes.
If we close that, are we, do we have any assurances that we'll ever be able to open it again?
Yes. I talked to the Michigan Department of Corrections, they're the ones that gave us the original okay to house inmates there temporarily back in nineteen eighty-eight.
And we just kept quiet.
We did.
Twenty years later, here we are.
I called them and they said, "Anybody that, there's nothing in our record that says we would not be able to use that again, and anybody that would've said that to us has long retired or gone." long retired or gone. However, they did tell us that that building that we're occupying back there was granted to us under the building codes and occupancy codes for nineteen eighty-eight. If you vacate it for more than seventy-two hours and it's vacated, and you go back and try to reopen it again, you're going to have to get a new building occupancy permit, which means you're going to probably have to sprinkle it, you're going, there's no sprinklers in there. That building needs a lot of work, am I correct?
Yes, the floor is caving and the roof is not good.
It's a portable classroom, that's what it was.
It is.
That's what it was originally. It was, if we all remember when the schools bought all those portable classrooms, they were double white mobile homes, basically gutted on the inside, a little bathroom in the corner.
Here's the more significant issue. We lose twenty-six beds off our rated capacity for the state. We become a hundred and sixty-eight bed facility.
Yeah, we can't.
My jail count as of four hours and seventeen minutes ago was a hundred and sixty-eight.
Yeah, I personally don't want to drop the number of beds available. The only question I have for you is, see, I was still operating on the old rules that, you know, if we vacated it, we had to go out and get recertification for a new.
No, according to DLC, we don't.
Can we, can we just buy another modular unit, flip it in there? Is that an option?
I don't know why not, but I.
Well, it's an option, but I mean, there's the cost of the new unit, it's going to have to be updated, yeah, I mean.
Could we move the one at the civic center?
Well, the point is, is that one isn't much newer.
I'm just tossing.
You're going to have to.
I don't know why not. The state would have to come in and make sure that we have a fire inspection, the building code, everything up to snuff, and then they would rate the square footage and ventilation and all that for the amount of inmates that we could have in there, and then they would allow us to use it.
Well, the other thing is the area per square, the square footage required per inmate has changed since nineteen eighty-eight, too.
That's true.
So therefore, we're probably not going to get a twenty-six capacity in the same number of square footage.
Not the same, no, you're probably right.
And keep in mind, this is for, this was a while ago, and before we brought Liebert and Bennett here, there was a point in time when we housed inmates in the basement without supervision.
I remember that.
They made us get rid of that real quick.
We got rid of it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a classroom now.
That's a concern.
Different question, Bob, and we've had this discussion, I've talked to several of you about it, in fact, I've even talked to Judge Phillips about it. You know, these officers that are, that are assigned and that are in the two court buildings, I'm going to call them as bailiffs. That has to be a difficult scheduling thing for you.
It is a nightmare.
Because you not only have that when they're in court, but you also have the transport of inmates back and forth as well. And if we, I'm just suggesting that we, that we explore again the other option of hiring other individuals as court bailiffs as opposed to making, having your officers do that. If you didn't have to put officers in there and we were able to do something with bailiffs, would that, that would, I would assume alleviate some of the pressure that's put on you to staff those courts?
That would alleviate some of it, yes, yes.
Just to be on that note, though, Dennis, recall, we had a conversation years ago with a couple of the judges from the district court and the circuit court, then sheriff few ones, about their desire at the time, and that may have changed, their desire at the time to have armed officers in the courtroom that were trained in the use of force, that were supervised by the sheriff.
Yeah, I know, I remember that clearly, and I've told that to some of the commissioners that have asked me about it, and I understand that that's an issue. I just, and again, relating back to my experience in another Michigan county, there, what we did is we took, we had retired state police, retired county police officers who were able to carry a gun, and they became bailiffs working directly for the courts, and they were scheduled and assigned by the courts for whenever the courts needed them. And what it did is it, it took the, you know, it took the pressure off the correction staff, and that was what I was just, it's not something we've explored at length, but it's just something that I, I think would be worth looking at because every time I talk to Bob about staffing, the discussion inevitably ends up back at the number of people that he has no control over that end up in the two court buildings from time to time, and it's not always on neat schedules.
No. And we do get real good cooperation from both district and circuit court as far as advanced schedules that they know of, but sometimes we have trials and so we ramp up our staffing and all of a sudden the trial cancels.
Yeah, and I'm not, yeah.
Guilty.
Or, or we'll get something that occurs and somebody didn't tell us about it.
Yeah, well, and it's not, I'm not saying it's, it's not anything the courts did to schedule it at all. They have, sometimes they don't have any control over it either, it's just the unknown nature of that. And what we used to have is, we had, you know, part-time people that were, that were under the courts and the courts scheduled them as they needed, and they were on call and they were brought in when they needed them, and there may have been three regular days a week where they were scheduled to be in the courtrooms. But it's just something that I was just trying to think, I was just thinking that perhaps could be cheaper than a corrections officer?
A lot of counties do that.
And, and, you know, and if I have a choice, you know, this is a discussion, obviously it has to happen with the judges, if there's a choice between adding, you know, three or four or five corrections officers so that you can continue to staff those courts, and there's a cheaper alternative of, that provides reasonable safety for the courts and the public that are in the courts that's cheaper, that may be an alternative that's worth exploring.
Certainly. Another thing that exacerbates that problem is we, by contract, we have to have our officers' work schedule six to eight weeks in advance for them. We have to have it posted for them.
Shift bidding and all of that.
All of that stuff.
Yeah.
So here we are, eight weeks in advance, and a trial comes up and we look, and on that day, I don't have enough people. We can't move bodies around unless they willingly do that, and most of them don't want to do that, so the only way I can backfill it is with overtime.
The commissioners know what we're talking about because you see us come regularly back to you and say, we're trying to get the overtime in the jail under control. It's really hard.
One thing that I do know, when we went, when Chris and I went next door and met with Captain Hall, and he went through his staffing plan at the facility, I don't know how you get any leaner with the posts and the inmates. I mean, I think it's impossible.
I would agree.
The only thing, Chris and I sat there and we looked at, and I think we mentioned this, is the only, the hardest thing for them is the unknown with those one to two and two to three officers in the historic courthouse in the Hall of Justice, and maybe then the transport officers as well. But as far as the posts and the coverage in the jail, there's just no way.
I would say it's probably not, it may be acceptable, but it's probably at the limit of advisable to have one officer trying to monitor and supervise eighty-three inmates. I have never, in all the stuff I've read and gone through, I've never seen that anywhere.
And taking down your population, your maximum population, doesn't make any sense. I mean.
We'll be boarding out or declaring emergency overcrowding, and that's a mess.
You know, I know it's not a popular thing to talk about, but one of the things that we, you know, and we're going to get to at some point or another, so I guess we could talk about it today, is the cost to provide coverage for, for an inmate in our jails about fifty-four dollars a day, I believe, at the last record. The last time we boarded out prisoners, we were paying thirty-five dollars a day.
But there's hidden, there's hidden costs there, Commissioner.
I understand, I understand.
We are responsible for all the medical, above and beyond what we're already paying for medical for anybody in another jail. The cost of getting officers to, and the inmates to and from every day, to and from the other jails.
Obviously have to be very selective about who we move, you know, and it was interesting a couple of weeks ago to talk about it when our, when our jail population was, what, a hundred and twenty-seven? You know, now all of a sudden, we're back up to a hundred and sixty-eight. October, November is where we're going to get into, into the people.
We'll be the one-seventies, probably, one-eighties.
We'll be in the one-seventies, one-eighties, and we have a jail population of a hundred and ninety-four to a hundred and ninety-eight, depending on how our prisoners classify.
That fifty-four dollars a day included the wages of these officers, too, though. These officers, these officers, and these officers. Some of the other counties, if you didn't count those to the officers that are actually functioning in the jail, I'm going to guess it's going to drop below fifty, it's probably going to be about forty-eight a day, something like that. Now you got to start weighing the additional costs of transporting to, from, medical costs.
Yeah, I just did some quick numbers to address this, Dean and I did. You know, let's just say, let's forget about all the logistical problems with it, but if you were able to close the 500 section and you had twenty-six inmates in there and you could house them up in Lelandaw County for thirty-five dollars a day, that would save roughly five-point-three officers because that's what it takes to be twenty-four hours.
They're not twenty-four hours. It's only four-point-three.
They're only, they're only.
There's one officer.
If it was, let me, I did the numbers wrong. If it was twenty-four hours, the difference between housing them in Lelandaw County and housing them in our facility is about eight thousand dollars, and it would cost about eight thousand dollars more for our employees. But when you add in medical, transport, everything else that's involved, it would, it wouldn't save you any money at all.
And it would be something less than that since it's four-point-three.
And it's, it's, it's less than half of that because it's not.
Well, realistically, the only prisoners we'd want to talk about housing out would be sentenced prisoners that are going to be in the jail anyway. We wouldn't be talking about the prisoners there in the work release facility.
It'd be these people. The jails won't take these people, and they won't take these people, and they won't take these people.
And even if you took that, even if you took that thirty-six and you, and you housed them up in Lelandaw, you still have to have somebody at that post to, to watch those others. So there's no benefit to that.
My question, Captain, something that Commissioner Lelandaw said, as I look at this map, I don't see it as a possibility at all to, to move inmates to Lelandaw County because my question to you is, you know, even if we did that, what section of the jail, and I, and I'm seeing it piecemealed over, you know, the years since, what, nineteen fifty? What section would you shut down? I don't see that you can shut down a section.
No.
Surely, the only practical one is the 500 section.
That's the only one.
And that's not practical because it's really inexpensive to house the inmates there.
Well, what?
And if we lose it, it's gone.
Listen, for those folks that haven't been here for a long time, this issue has been ongoing in terms of the work release program for the county. I will tell you that a significant number of counties in the state of Michigan has, has gone to a, for individuals that qualify for a work release situation. They are required to go to work, they have intense supervision, they are placed on tether and placed on home arrest. They're not, most of the counties in the state of Michigan are not going through this, bringing them back, feeding them, taking care of their medical, you know, increased costs of supervision, correction stuff. And, you know, that's the discussion we've had with the judges for a long time, and we haven't been able to, to beat that barrier, but, you know, as times get tough, I mean, that may be another discussion item we can have with them.
We're a very expensive motel room.
Bob?
Yes?
Have you seen Roscommon's jail, they just opened this year?
Just opened this year?
Yeah, I think it's Roscommon.
Roscommon's been there for a while.
Pardon?
Roscommon's been there for a while. I've been in it.
No, it isn't that one then, but it's real close. They just, and I don't have the information with me, but they just built a new jail, a hundred and twenty-bed, twelve-man. And they did it with no, they went from, they almost doubled the size of the jail, and they had no increase in staff because of the way the jail's.
If it's laid out properly. I showed you, it is an interesting point that was brought up at our meeting the other day. I showed you what it takes if, if, if one person were to do a round throughout this whole jail, because everybody here has to look at all these people once every hour or two. If one person did that, it takes about forty-five minutes by the time you get through, if you're doing everything the way you're supposed to. At nighttime, a little longer, you have to make sure the person's really breathing and really moving. You know what it takes for Lelandaw to do a round?
Yeah, that's it. That's the circular part of their jail.
Done. Because it's laid out right. It's laid out in the new design. We're intensive because it's an old linear jail. It's an old linear jail.
I've made that motion before.
Yeah.
I have a question for you on the work release program. We talked about this the other day, but the people that are in the 500 section, they go to Beta, they go to Love the Nonprofit or other organizations in town.
Schools.
Right. And we don't charge anything, and that's fine, their community service gives back to the community. But they are not supervised by any of our jail staff.
No.
At the time, they're supervised by Beta, by the school.
There's a person at each of those places that have gone through our mini-training on how to supervise and how to report in and things like that, yes.
Right. So when we talk about using Pugsley with the grounds, why cannot we have our maintenance workers supervise inmate workers there?
We could. The only, and if I recall our discussion, the only issue we have is making sure I have inmates for the, the person. I know our, I mean, not, not everybody classifies as minimum security eligible to be able to go out and do that.
But I mean, I would think that we would fill the county, the county's needs proper first.
We could do that.
Before we're farming out inmate workers to other entities.
Well, I mean, you could, but of course, what that translates into is less people to help support not-for-profits like, you know, Goodwill. I have a message upstairs, you know, from the woman who runs the Goodwill Center saying, please, please, don't take our, our, you know, our person away from us. So, you know, you're, it's a trade-off, but yes, you could decide that's going to be there, and as long as he's got the right type of people.
Sure.
He could provide that.
And I understand that that's a great service to provide.
Sure.
Goodwill and Beta and others. I don't, I don't mean that it's not, but what do we pay per year to Camp Pug?
You know, I think we pay those guys seven dollars and fifty cents a day.
Right, but what's the total amount?
I don't have that number.
We just looked at this not too long ago from staff, and it was about twenty-five thousand dollars is what we pay to Pugsley. And I think that came from Danny Brown, was it?
Well, you have to remember also in that 500 section, you have people that actually go out and have a regular job that they get paid by the hour for.
Yeah.
And they just come back and stay here at night. They're, they're serving their community, they're making a living, they're supporting their family, and they are paying us a fee for, for the opportunity to leave.
Upfront.
And that's, that's one thing that we have to, we have to remember about, too, is when we talk about those people that are on the work release program, they're paying upfront. All of the people that are in the jail are, are receiving a bill for providing the service.
That's what, I was talking about a different, I think, classification or something, I don't know, we went through the wording the other day on what.
Yeah, but if we had, I mean, we could, if there's ten people out doing community service work that are in the jail, and there's maybe more, it's just an example, and they're in ten different places and they're supervised by ten different individuals, the woman, the, the maintenance guy at Goodwill supervises that jail inmate, and we put them in a crew of ten in the county building, somebody has to supervise them. You know, if it turns out to be a jail corrections officer, that's going to cost us more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I was thinking more though, if, if you're putting them at Goodwill and you have a Goodwill employee supervising them, then surely our grounds staff would be capable and sufficient to supervise.
Not if we cut the numbers.
Well, I'm saying that that would be one way to leverage more work done, I mean, if you have one grounds person and you have several inmate workers.
Let me give you an example. It's, if we have four groundskeepers and they're all working plows on a, on a Tuesday morning, and they're going from building to building, snowblowing and plowing, and there's a Pugsley crew that has their own supervisor, and they know their job is to do the sidewalks, and they started building one, two, three, four, five, and I have to take one of those guys that are plowing and have to have them watch those guys, we're taking that much longer to get the rest of it plowed, and, you know, I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a trade-off. It's a trade-off.
And there are days that Bob doesn't have people available to go.
Well, that would be the thing, that was the thing last time, you know.
There's days where we tell these other people, I'm sorry, we have nobody for you today. Hopefully, maybe a good judge will sentence somebody tomorrow that'll qualify, but we just don't have them, and they don't go.
What impacts that number largely is, is individuals that are sentenced, that are eligible for community corrections. You've got to keep in mind that the inmates that are eligible to go out and work in these areas are minimum security inmates. I'm going to say ninety, ninety, ninety-five percent of those inmates are going to be eligible for community corrections, and they're out, if they're sentenced, I mean, thirty days sentence, they're out within five days. So we don't get to use that inmate.
We just get them started and they're gone. Community Corrections has done a great job of impacting the numbers and keeping them down. They get them out really quick. And that's the cream of our crop, if you will. And that's the cream of our crop, if you will. They're gone.
Before we leave this discussion entirely, I want to ask the sheriff the question that I've asked others. Um, if you, uh, ask to keep something, what would it be? If you had to cut something, what would it be?
You're talking about keeping one person.
A position, not a person.
One position, yeah, one position, and, um, losing a position.
Yes.
Uh, the position, uh, that we would keep would be a patrol officer, uh, somebody to respond to calls for help, assistance, um, and emergencies. Um, the person that, and not because the person is insignificant or doesn't work.
Position.
Right. The position, okay, uh, probably would be in the, uh, in the records section, because we, um, uh, with, with, with new software, uh, new technology, hopefully, uh, digital, digital dictation, we are gonna realize some efficiencies in there, uh, and we talked about this, um, even before the budget process started. We were looking, what, what is this gonna do for us? So, it would probably be one position there, and the one that we would keep would be the patrol officer.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Moving on.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming. And Bob, you said you were gonna be quick.
There, no, there's no, um.
See you in a few minutes.
Can you follow that, Al?
Yeah.
Probably with style.
Well, let's, uh, start with the presumption that everyone who's doing work for the county is providing value, so I'm not gonna get into whose work is most valuable. Um, I, I wanna focus on what you asked me to do, and that is to tell you the impact of the proposed cuts from, that'll have, uh, on the county. Um, having said that, I think there's also been an acknowledgement that the formula used to determine where these budget cuts were gonna be made, uh, has a disparate impact on offices such as mine. I think, uh, in my statement, I told you that even the formula itself is skewed.
Now, you agree.
Unfavorably toward my office. Um, let me illustrate that a bit. The chairman of the Board of Commissioners, by law, is the FOIA coordinator for the county and the departments under which you have control. We've agreed to take that. Sherry McNamara, my office manager, is actually acting as the FOIA coordinator, not only for the board and its departments, but for the sheriff as well. And what I mean by that is whenever there are any controversial FOIA requests, they come to Sherry, she goes through them, she has paralegal experience, if she needs further guidance, she goes to Bob Cooney and myself. The point I'm getting at is we've done a, a time study, twenty percent of Sherry McNamara's time is doing FOIA work, FOIA coordinator. Um, we can't allocate that to the board, the sheriff, because what I've been told by Maximus is there, you're not enterprise agencies. So, Sherry McNamara's expense shows on my budget, not on yours. And twenty percent of her work is being done for other people. Bob Cooney's personnel expense alone is two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Because of that quirk in the, the defined benefit plan that, uh, you know, the county's making these payments and has to allocate it to, uh, employees that are still in that program, his, the, the county pays in a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. That expense is in my budget. Two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Ninety percent of Bob Cooney's time is spent doing work for other agencies and departments. Ninety percent of that, ninety percent is being done for this board.
Right.
And it's in my budget, and I can't allocate it. You know, if that was done fairly, I wouldn't be sitting here, cause I wouldn't have a problem. I'd be like my friend, uh, Bill Ropka sitting party. Okay? So, that's where I wanna start at, but I cannot cut what you're asking me to cut, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. I can't lose two prosecutors. We had seven, we had seven lawyers, excuse me, seven assistants and prosecutor in two-thousand and three. We voluntarily eliminated one of those. We have six assistants and a prosecutor, seven lawyers in our office. If you knock that down to five, given that everyone gets, you know, three to four weeks off a year, if you count vacation and personal days, twenty to twenty-five weeks of that is with four. On any given Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we have three prosecutors at the same time, given pre-trials and hearings and, and that sort of thing, uh, in district court. We have at least one in family court. There's your four. What if we have a trial in circuit court? What if the referee in family court wants us at a preliminary hearing on a juvenile delinquency? There's nobody there, and there's nobody in the office. And I think you read in my, my, uh, statement, that that's kind of an important function. It's not a mandatory function, but it's an important function. So, what I'm telling you is I cannot perform my statutory duties at a serviceable level with five lawyers. I can't do it. So, I, I'm gonna go on to what was proposed in the first place, and that is to eliminate one attorney position and two clerical staff, and what the impact of that will be. When I mentioned the, uh, specialty courts, uh, maybe I did make my point strong enough in my letter. What I'm saying is this is, is that Judge Haley Sobriety Court, Jennifer Tang Anderson spends just about every Wednesday over there as the, the arrestees are, are being arraigned, they're being offered, she does the screening, she's the gatekeeper for that, along with other people. Do they qualify? Are we going to make a plea agreement with them? Is the incentive for entering these courts? It's, you know, that's the function. Now, that's not statutorily required that we do that, but we've agreed to be part of that program. But if I need Jennifer Tang Anderson in Judge Phillips' court for something else, for a hearing, if, if it's a speeding ticket, she's gotta go there. I've gotta represent the state. That's a mandatory function. So, that's the difference. You know, we, I think this board was supportive of the recently established Child Advocacy Center. I just signed an agreement to be, uh, to, you know, to be part of that, to, uh, we've established a protocol, as we were statutorily required to do for child protection in this county. We included that facility and its workers in that protocol. Now, Noelle Muggenberg is primarily the, the Assistant Prosecutor, who deals with child sexual abuse and adult sexual abuse and domestic violence. Um, and she is in Judge Phillips' courtroom on Wednesdays for what we've called the Domestic Violence Court. It's nothing official, but it certainly functioned that way. If the choice is Noelle Muggenberg being called in to go over to an interview, to sit in a particularly, uh, difficult interview, to watch through the one-way, everything that we've established there, so she can make suggestions as to what follow-up questions might be to ask, if that's the choice, whether to go over there or to, uh, be in court, because we're out of lawyers, she has to be in court. So, that's what we're losing. The other proposal was to eliminate, uh, the, um, Child Support Secretary. And the way I'd figured we'd do this, we only save, actually, a net savings of fifteen thousand dollars, because it's four-defunded, it's grant-funded, but the, the expense side comes off as well. And I could also circulate someone from our, another secretary, maybe once or twice a, a week to the, the Support Division, and then we could recoup some more grant funding for that position that is currently now not grant-funded. We could do these things. So, what's the consequence? Well, the consequence is, is that these, uh, children, these kids are gonna get their support later rather than sooner. I mean, if our Child Support Coordinator, Laura Southern, has to take time from sitting down with these referrals that come in and take all their information to get the complaint, we, we enforce the Family Support Act, if, if you weren't aware of that, as well as the Paternity Act, but Family Support Act is, then we get lots of referrals. Laura Southern has, uh, appointments every day with, uh, with the complainants, that part of these referrals, and order, that we establish a support order. We establish the order, and the friend of the court enforces the order. That's how it works. Well, if Laura Southern can't see, if she can only see, you know, so many people a week, let's say ten instead of twelve, because she's gotta do the legwork that the secretary's doing, the filings, uh, setting up the, the, the tests, the DNA tests, that sometimes we do, all these sorts of things, well, everything gets backed up, and, you know, rather than get your support started in thirty days, it'll be sixty days. And that's just the fact of life. That's what it is. The other position we were considering eliminating was the receptionist. When you come into the prosecutor's office or call the prosecutor's office, you get a live person. They try to get you to the right place. Need to see a lawyer to get you, the phone call comes in, they try to get you the right lawyer, to the right secretary. If that position is eliminated, we'll probably go to an automated phone system, you'll get about five options, you know, push one for this and two for that, and, um, you know, and if, if you need further assistance, stay on the line, and one of the other secretaries, the, the Circuit Court or District Court, the Family Court Secretary, or the Office Manager, somebody'll have to pick up that phone and try to help you out, get you the right person. That's going to have a considerable impact on some people, and particularly law enforcement, probably not gonna be appreciative. As I said in my letter, you know, um, which I think will be attested to by city, county, and state officers, they're, they're having a particular tough question, as, as I think the undersheriff told you, they might be out on a call, and it's just this kinda heated, convoluted, complex thing, say, you know, can I, you know, what do I have here? And when, they can usually get a lawyer in the office to give them some guidance, give them some help. That's probably not going to continue. So, um, having said that again, um, if that's what you want to give up, that's what we will do, obviously, but that will happen. Jad Bertino, my, uh, newest lawyer in my office, uh, is leaving October first. He's going, uh, downstate to, for New Horizons, and, uh, of his own choosing. He's getting married, as a matter of fact, so it's a good thing. So, you know, I'm not gonna fill that position. I'm gonna wait and hear from you, and maybe we have a little time to experiment here. But I'll tell you one thing, if I don't get cooperation from the court, I, I can't do it losing one. I'll tell you that. I, I, you know. They can't call over and say, we've got, we wanna arraign this guy on a bench warrant in Circuit Court, and it happens quite frequently. There's nobody there. We don't have any. And I'm including myself. I'm telling you, if I'm the last guy on the roster, and there's a barkin' dog case that's gotta be tried, I'll be over there. I'm not sure you want that, but sometimes it might be better to have me, you know, answering these questions from people that have important problems, but that's what I have to do, that's what I'll do. Any questions? You know, what, um, Al speaks to on the phone, sounds pretty simplistic, because it works well in a lot of organizations and a lot of places. But I personally have had to call the prosecutor's office, and what he just described is totally not workable. Um, what the avenue the officers would have then would be to physically send an officer over and check the prosecutor's office out to see if there's a live body there, because we needed a, a decision on the street at that moment. So, Al brings up a very good point, and, um, I think we'd have to be real careful there. We do have a prosecutor on call twenty-four hours a day, just so you know, that's not just during the daytime, they rotate weeks. But see, the police officers, if you're not familiar, do the investigations. They're out on the street, and sometimes they get into very ticklish situations. And Al's office, Al's the prosecutor, his office is the one that determines whether that individual's going to be prosecuted and a warrant issued for or not. So, for us to arrest somebody, uh, take them to jail and then ask Al, sometimes doesn't work if it's not a black and white case. So, I think we have to listen to what the prosecutor's saying.
Uh, like, Al, are there any guidelines or anything that, uh, that, uh, your profession tries to follow with regard to number of cases per, um, lawyer in your office?
The problem with doing that, I looked, there was a seminar held in nineteen-seventy-two in Higgins Lake.
Back seventy-two, yeah.
And it was interesting, you know, I go, I turn back to that every now and then, because things haven't changed a lot, because it's, it's like comparing apples to oranges sometimes. It depends on how much you do. You know, I mean, you know, it's, it's the old, uh, you know, figures lie, liars figure kinda thing, I mean, you can, you can manipulate. All I know is, is that our caseload is not the issue. I'll tell you that right up front. It's not the caseload, it's the other services we have to provide.
Gotcha.
We had thirty-six-hundred warrants authorized in two thousand and four, and that was the highest, uh, ever, and it's gone steadily down since then. Remind you, I was elected in two thousand and four, but our warrants authorized has gone steadily down, and it's remaining about steady right now, just under three thousand. Our juvenile delinquency, I looked, it looks like about four hundred petitions. Uh, we, we don't have a method of keeping track of child abuse and neglect, because those cases that are ongoing, and then, I, you know, they, they go on and off the docket, it just, uh, we don't generate a petition in our office, the, uh, Department of Social Services does that, the petition comes from down the court, might be, tell you. You know, but, uh, it, it's steady, but it's all the other services, uh, you know, it's all the other obligations that go along with it. Sure.
Al, do you get involved in truancy at all? If so, how much?
Well, sure. Uh, we were there when that truancy program began. We agreed to be a part of it. Jennifer Tang Anderson was the first lawyer to sign to the truancy program. She worked hand in hand with, uh, Patty LaBelle and, uh, and the schools, developing this program, how the parents were going to be advised, of, you know, what was the next step if they don't start getting their kids to school, what they'd have to face, up to prosecution. We had prosecution and deferral programs, that's still ongoing. It's hurt next door.
I, what I'm trying to get at is, um, we heard from Judge Stowe, um, the importance of the truancy program, and we, we are certainly considering funding that or not. What impact do you believe, if we do not fund that, will that have on your office?
You know, on our office?
Yeah. Because I heard that, you know, that the prosecutors.
Make life easier. That's all I, yeah, I mean, I'm just being honest with you.
Please.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, I mean, that, uh, you know, looking at all those reports, I mean, I've done it myself, where I've had to do the pre-trials in these, in District Court when we've charged a parent, you know, looking to see all the, all the absences without excuse, and when they got the warning, and, you know, when they got the visit by the, the truancy officer, and all this, you know, yeah, that, you know, those cases take some time.
Mm-huh.
But it means we'll have more kids truing.
Well, sure. I mean, but it doesn't affect you.
I understand, yeah. Just wanted to understand the other effect.
And that was the question, what impact does it, does it have on you?
That portion of his job, he doesn't have to.
He gets, it gets easier for him, but it gets harder for a lot of other people.
It's kinda like getting rid of check cashers.
I was just listening to someone yesterday, it was about some other.
I was just listening to someone today, it was about some other county, maybe even another state, about prosecutor not telling the truth when they came before the board of commissioners. I don't think we have to ever worry about that.
You mean telling it like it is?
Tell it exactly how it is.
One last question, and I ask this of everybody, and you've heard it before. If you had to keep something, what would it be? If you had to cut something, what would it be?
Well, um-
Let me rephrase that. If you chose to keep something-
The position would have to be the attorney because of the statutory obligations, the real impact, and there's only, if there's only six of us, you know, we're spread kind of thin, because, like I say, half the time, then there's only five. And, you know, what would happen with losing the clerical staff will be an inconvenience, it'll slow things down, the other secretaries will have to fill in, and that'll take time away from them. You know, the warrant requests that come from the police agencies will get scanned in, but they may not be acted upon for a few days until somebody's available to generate the complaints and get them over to court.
Okay, before you answer the second part of that, you have seven attorneys right now.
Right.
And you're not filling one of them.
Right, we'll be down to six.
There's seven, and they're all filled right now.
Including yourself.
Right.
That's right.
And so you're not going to fill the one when he leaves?
That's my plan, based upon what the court has resolved, you know, we'll see what happens, but like I say, if I don't get cooperation from the courts, I might be back, but, you know, I don't want to lose that, because I really-
So at a minimum, Al, even if that ends up, if one attorney ends up going, you're going to have a vacancy, but I would assume you don't want it reduced from the staffing plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can see how it works out.
And if it doesn't work out, we would hear from you.
Well, yeah, you might hear from the courts as well, you know, but, you know, and I, I'm really not in position to predict entirely what will happen. I can tell you this, I'm being straight, that we could absorb that from a caseload standpoint, it's just all these other obligations.
Well, if-
But important obligations.
Yeah. If we start calling Al with, you know, twice as many questions as we already do, then, you know, that's going to put a bigger burden on him.
Well, you know, we've had to even throw Bob Cooney in there, to allow to take a case, and-
Well, you, we could save you some money by hiring an outside lawyer.
As long as you can come up with the money to hire an outside attorney. You've got to do that, you know.
Everybody from here on is going to contribute. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
While the judge is coming up, they've sat for a long time, I'm just going to pass out the raisin needs packets, try not to lose them, and everything else you have.
Thank you.
Just take the papers off. I just wanted to get those to you, and I did want you to get to do it later in the day. Okay?
Look how much money you're saving right here.
Well, I can promise you that we won't, we may not be as short as Pat Cudney, but we're going to be close.
Not as long as the sheriff.
Not as long as the sheriff.
You're on the clock, because the judge has got a very important horse custody case that just came up. We will acknowledge it.
Some people don't forget, do they?
No, it actually happened, huh?
Oh, absolutely.
Some people don't forget.
I think it was custody.
Wasn't a custody, it was a valid animal neglect. Went on for a long time, so thank you all for having us here today, and these are difficult times, so.
And you are.
Okay, well, I think everybody knows who I am. I'm TJ Phillips, I work for the district court, and this is Carol Stocking, who I work for at the district court.
And I'm the district court magistrate. I like that.
Yep, and Carol will do our presentation, and I'll interrupt from time to time.
We're a well-oiled machine. What we wanted to start out by talking about is, first of all, we were presented with a request by you to reduce our budget by $141,000. So what we have done is taken what we believe is the only option we have available, we have to do what everyone else has done and reduce staff, and so we presented to you a reduction in staff with it being one full-time probation officer, and we had an individual who came back from maternity leave part-time, so really 1.3 probation officers. But before I get into that a little bit, I want to share with you a history of our staffing in the district court since 2000. In 2000, we had 4.6 probation officers, and today we have 7.6. Part of that was a result of a study that the commissioners had done by David Bennett that recommended that we add, at a minimum, two probation officers immediately, and we did add one. In addition to that, we have two probation officers in our sobriety court that were both funded, grant-funded in the beginning, and then when those grants went away, you folks graciously agreed for, that we keep those positions on with local money. And so that's how we got, well, and so of the, we really went up three from 2000, so we went from 4.6 to 7.6 today. In 2000, we had 2.4 community corrections officers, and today we have 3.4, so that has also increased by one, and I suspect that that may have been a result of the David Bennett study as well.
It was.
In 2000, there was some shuffling with the, you know, the rearrangement of the county, the district court, with bringing in Antrim, right in that timeframe as well. But at the time, we had five court recorders, and over the past 10 years, we've had two people leave, and we have not filled those positions. So currently, we have three court recorders, which is one per judge, and that really is the minimum we could possibly have, because when we don't have a recorder, we can't hold court.
Let me just interrupt in a second, but we do have some of our clerical staff that can fill in as a temporary court recorder, but when they're there, there's no one manning that window, so, and we've done fairly well. There was a one week where we had someone that was on sick leave, and someone had paid for vacation, our recorders, we were down to one recorder, and Carol brought me in, said, what are we going to do? And I said, I got vacation left, I go on vacation that week, so it worked out, okay? But otherwise, we would have been, you know, shorter court recorder and not been able to function in one of our courts. But we, we had enough heads up on that, that we could do that, and I had vacation left over, so I took a week off, so. But, you know, we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to be proactive and help you all out by not having, you know, extra people, so we're pretty lean, yes.
Judge, forgive a stupid question.
There are no stupid questions.
Hell, this one is. If you had been there, and you wanted to hold court, and you did not have a court recorder, is there such a thing as some kind of temporary contract court recorder service?
It's possible, you know, I, the circuit court sometimes does that.
Mm-hmm.
And we had one situation, I was in Antrim County, and I think our computer wasn't working, so we called to see if we could get someone in, and I think Carol was working on that, and we had someone that was going to be available, then we got our computer up and running, so.
Most of what happens, I mean, we could actually get a service, yes, to actually record, but the recorders in the courtroom do much more than that. They actually write on the disposition what the judge is saying, and that disposition then goes out to the window for somebody to enter that information into the computer, so the defendant can get their paperwork immediately, that tells them what they've been sentenced to, or what their next court date is, and a temporary service could not come in and do that. It would be impossible. It would be impossible. It's such, it's so specialized, and it, you just, I couldn't walk in and do it, and I'm very, very familiar with the forms. I couldn't do it myself.
Our court recorders are, in other words, are also our court clerks.
Mm-hmm.
In district court, we'd like to think of us as the quality corp, or also the quantity corp. We might have 40 hearings in a morning, and you were visiting my court one day, and we had a lot of hearings, so I appreciate you being there that day. And it's, so it's, not only is it being recorded, but they're in charge of all the paperwork.
And they also act as their secretaries, the judicial secretaries, so that's, they wear a lot of hats. Last year, and I know you've all heard this before, but I must say it again, but last year, we had two employees leave in July and August, and we voluntarily chose not to fill those positions. We anticipated some, the budget issues that the county's facing, and so we did not fill those positions, we shuffled workloads around, and we are really running on the bare minimum staff that we could run on right now, with the exception of probation, where I believe we could, we could cut back on a full-time probation officer and not be too, you know, the quality of work could still go on.
Yeah, I don't, I think if we lose one probation officer, I think we can handle it, but you have to realize that everything is kind of intertwined in the county, and you know this better than I do, I'm sure, but, like, if we start having fewer probation officers, then the jail population's going to go up. If, and it's also, it's intertwined, if there's fewer police on the street, then our revenue will go down, because we don't really generate the revenue. It's like a farm operation, you know, they plant the seeds, they do everything, and we just harvest the crop at the end of it, and that's where the money's come in, but, so if there's fewer cops on, fewer police on the street, fewer cases, fewer tickets, that affects what is called our revenue, but really isn't our revenue. And I'm really worried about the prosecutor's staff, too. I think one less prosecutor is going to mean a very significant impact to district court, because criminal law is triage, okay? You know, so the felonies will get attention first, which is circuit court. And misdemeanors, we still think are important. We have drunk drivers, drunk drivers second, Judge Haley even has some drunk drivers third in a sobriety court. We have aggravated assaults, we have domestic violence cases, we have, you know, a lot of serious matters. And it's important for our community that we treat those as serious matters. I think that's what makes our community unique in a lot of ways, because we're concerned about people's safety. In Wayne County, they don't care about misdemeanors, because they can't, because it's triaged down there for them. And I think if we go, if you have, if they go from seven prosecutors to six, I think it's going to definitely affect the district court, because we're going to have fewer prosecutors and fewer, and they're going to have fewer cases. Right now, as they indicated, they're not long, no longer doing NSF check cases under $100, okay? Because it's triage, they've got to decide what they can do and what they can't do. And I think we're going to see a lot, lot fewer cases prosecuted because of that. So that'll affect us as well. And I just don't see them doing it with less than the prosecutors' number they have now. And that's just my view of it, and, you know, I hope I'm wrong if they're going to lose a prosecutor.
So by going through our staffing history, I just wanted to bring to light that we really feel like we are as lean as we could, can get, and that our proposal to reduce 1.3 probation officers is the best we can do. But along with our proposal was the request that a one-time incentive payment be made as an incentive to entice the one probation officer that is our high-cost probation officer and ready for retirement out the door. The, he's a high-cost employee, as Sheriff Bensley talked about, the defined benefit cost in his budget, and Al Schneider just spoke about the defined benefit cost in his budget. This probation officer is the defined benefit cost, I mean, I have several, but he is the one that is the most costly. And if we could get him out the door with an, with a little incentive payment, a one-time incentive payment, then I wouldn't have to be looking at two staff members. In order to make up the $141,000 any other way, I would have to cut two staff members, and we can't do that. And I know that if, with a little incentive payment, we could entice this one employee out the door. And going back to something Beth Friend said the other night, and she was using it in a different way, but you were talking about voluntary time off, and that we couldn't possibly sit here and know everyone's personal scenario in their, in their life, and what's going on in their world, and what they might be willing to take. I kind of think of that as, in the same way with the one-time incentive payment, I really think the county ought to think about doing that countywide, because you may be surprised at how many people take it and walk out the door, and it would prevent other departments from laying off people, because people are voluntarily leaving, and then, you know, bodies can be shuffled, and people who really need jobs won't be losing jobs. And if, and if I'm wrong, if nobody takes the incentive payment, nothing's hurt, you know? And it's not a risk like it was early in 2000 or 1999, when we offered the early out, because there was a long-term financial effect on the county. This is not a long-term financial effect, it's a one-time payment, and our, my incentive offer, or my request, is built into my, my reduction. So it's, it's part of the plan that you asked us to put together, and it's built into, into what, what our plan is. So I think it's imperative that we, we get the incentive for this individual, and that we lose one person rather than two.
If I could, I just want to comment, I'm on the, I'm on the same pages, and I think, pages, the district court, and I think they, they really have work to try to address these issues with us. I do, I do believe we should look at the incentive payment. It has to be looked at countywide. It can't, you cannot pick and choose one or two individuals, and so it has to be looked at countywide. Jen is working on putting together kind of the analysis of who might be eligible for something like that, and you would have to, we will have to evaluate that for you, and also provide you with kind of a, some suggested guidelines on eligibility. You're going to have to look at, on the other side of the coin, what kind of requirements you would place on that. In other words, in this case, the district court is very generously offering to keep the position open, okay? But the other side of the coin might be in an office, in Fred's office, where he has a critical person in a critical position who meets the qualifications and qualifies and wants to leave, but you won't really gain anything if the position is refilled. So you're going to have to look at it and say, well, maybe down the line, someone leaves, but you're going to have to, you're going to have to really study that, and I think, frankly, that's going to have to be studied outside this two- or three-week budget process that we're in, but I think it really should be looked at. Now, the one thing that has to be analyzed, and I think it's important that it, that you, we're going to really have to think this through, and Carol, maybe, you, having been in HR, you have some background in this, but one of the things that I'm struggling with is, if this person leaves, and we, we've said the other night, we know we've cut off the liability for the retirement, I mean, there's, it's not next year or the next year, he's not working three more years, five more years, but the cost of that, that whatever it is, $100,000 or whatever his retirement cost, is still going to be there, and it's going to have to be spread, someone else in the county's going to pay for it.
Yeah.
And in the case of this unit, I think what's going to happen is the rest of his cost, he may not be there to get it, but you're not, your department won't save whatever that retirement cost was, it's going to be spread among your other district court employees that are under DB, right?
That's probably, you're accurate, yes. But that begs the question that I think that this commission needs to look at, too, and that is, what are you going to do long-term with these DB costs? Because there will come a time, and it will happen eventually, and I think we have five or six people on defined benefit in the court, so it probably won't happen to the court, but there will come a department that the last DB person retires. Let's say it's in the district court.
And there's still a cost.
And there's still a cost. Where are you going to put it?
Yeah.
You don't have anybody else to put it on, I mean-
See, and that's, Dean and I are, it's, she's absolutely right, and Dean and I are talking about, perhaps what we have to do is just assign a basic cost across all employees, maybe it's equal to what the DC cost is, okay? And the rest of the cost, we need to pull out and put in an insurance budget or some other budget and handle that separately. I think we agree that this is problematic, it may have worked for a while, but after the early outs, we've put ourselves in a position where we keep squeezing it, and you've heard it many times already this week, we have employees, we're paying twice the retirement that they're getting paid in pay. That just, that's not a good system. The next thing is, you know, you already told us, look into that idea of, of being able to bond this, and we're finding that that's going to be difficult to do without changes in legislation. We've also looked at that idea of a hybrid plan. We're not feeling real good about the hybrid plan. We think our option here is a legislative change where we can take and bond this DB retirement over a 25-year period to alleviate the pressure that we're feeling from the MERS cutting down the actuarial period, two years every year.
Or convince MERS to put, to quit squeezing everybody so hard.
Yeah, I think it would be easier to get the logic in.
Well, I mean, that's the issue, I mean, they make up the rules and they enforce them.
Yeah, it's absolutely a problem, but-
Is district court, is- Is, is district court, is, is your DB unit closed or is it still open?
Closed.
There's only one that's open and that's cir, two, circuit court and circuit court supervisors.
Supervisors.
They're the only units in the county open.
That's what I must, because I thought I heard you say the courts are still open.
District court was one of the first ones and in fact, you know, as you look at next year's contracts, district court was the first one to settle the contract for next year and the first unit to accept a co-pay on health insurance.
Yeah, but.
Thank you very much.
Yes. But, but, but going back to your comment on pension, and I know this doesn't exactly apply here, but I think the whole idea of assigning that, that concentrated accelerated cost to just the remaining DB employees, you know, is just bogus.
It does not make any sense.
It doesn't make any sense. Especially doesn't make sense to the units that have DB employees left.
It is the, it is the way that MERS allocates the cost and does the actuarial, so that's why we follow it. But I think we're going to have to, they may do it that way and that's how we followed it. We're going to look at other options so that when we're in these situations with the departments, you know, it, what it's going to, what's, what in fact is going to happen is it's going to end up being your responsibility, it's always your responsibility, but it'll be yours, it won't be assigned to the individual departments anymore. And really, that's fair. We're, we're far enough down the road, with the exception of the circuit court, we're far enough down the road that to continue to push these costs back to show the departments when their numbers are so much dwindling, I mean, you know, Carol uses the, kind of the extreme case, what happens when there's none left? It's a good, it's a good illustration, but even when there's two or five or six, it, it doesn't make any sense.
That'd be worse when there's one left and it's in your department.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Carol, for bringing this up. Dennis, on this idea of incentive to retire and Shell did this. My, my boss used to say that we could, they could save paperwork if they included the incentives to retire along with the retention bonus checks. But what we, what they did at Shell was there was an incentive to retire, but it was at the discretion of the employer. And I'll use the sheriff's department as an example. Let us assume that the head of the detective bureau is on defined benefit and he is in the middle of a murder investigation and he gets this wonderful opportunity, an incentive to retire. You know, if, if his retirement would jeopardize that case, certainly the county should, in my view, have some kind of option to say, well, now is not the time.
Yeah. It's a very good point, Commissioner, and I'm going to say, I'm going to answer that by saying, I hope that we can come up with a more creative way to do that because having been here this long, and I think Carol could attest to this, if we put it at the discretion of the managers of the department, that's going to put
No.
A real burden on the department for those guys to, or those people to say, I'm going to let you retire, I'm not going to let you retire.
That bothers me.
It bother, it will bother them a lot, I think. Correct? Right, Carol?
Jen's like, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
So see, can't even do it.
Well, it would be discriminatory.
But there's got to be some kind of criteria in there and I'm, I'm not opposed to the incentive to retire, I truly am not.
Well, the other side of the coin is, the manager has to be able to manage the operation and
There you go.
Can't just let people that are critical to the operation leave.
Leave.
And, and the county board is not going to say, listen, you're not going to save that whole amount of DB retirement, it's just going to get spread other places, we're still going to pay it. We won't pay, pay future liability for it, but we're going to pay it.
Right.
And so you have to, in order to make that work and in order to avoid the things that happened back in the early, in the late 90s, you have to be able to keep those positions open or some other position in the operation open so you're actually saving money. That's the key. And so you're, so let's say a department is absolutely at their leanest, the district court, and, and we're not talking about the probation officer that may leave, and we put up this plan and they have somebody in a critical position who says, I'm taking this, I'd like to take this. You put the judge in a position where he's got to go down through his ranks and maybe pull out a position he can't afford to lose in order to save enough money to make it worthwhile for you from a financial standpoint. And that's the difficulty.
I almost can't help myself. You know, the only people that are left on defined benefit as far as future employees is circuit court, so it's all going to go there.
Well, we have, we have, we have probably a hundred.
That was a humorous statement.
How many do we have, Jen, when you say? We have quite a few still on defined benefit.
I, no, I was just.
It's not just circuit, but you're right, yeah.
They're the only one.
I got your jokers.
Not allowing new employees to go on.
Right, but I understand what you were saying.
I've been sitting here for over five hours, I'm sorry.
But, but the key, the key really is, let's be, I want to be fair about this. Circuit court, the impact that we're having by DB plan on circuit court is not the same financial impact that we're having by the other closed units that have DB.
Okay.
Because it's still an open enrollment, it still has a, the full department's base to spread the DB cost against. And every place else, because of all the actions we've taken, it's getting less and less people, less and less payroll to spread a bigger cost. That's the problem.
And, and the other thing with the, the two units that are open, we're on that longer amortization period, which is 28 years. Just, we, we talk about this on a regular basis and, and we are aware of this issue. The defined benefit retirement cost has two components. There's a normal service cost and then there's an unfunded liability. That unfunded liability is, is the big, the big item. The, the normal service cost is a, is a cost that's about comparable to the defined, the defined contribution cost. And that unfunded liability is going to continue for years into the future. Commissioner Richardson pointed out the other, maybe it was last night or Wednesday night, that between now and 2015 and actually into 2016, we're still going to see increasing costs until we start to go the other way. And that, that's a projection, those projections have been wrong in the past and that's why we're in, in the situation we're in now.
If I could just make a remark on, if I could get your attention over there in the corner? Hate to break that up, but.
Trying to get answers, Paul.
I understand, but I don't need them right now. You know, this is not a new, a new concept, all right? Other employers around the state and around the nation have used this as a tool to lower their operating expenses. And I'll just let you know, my previous employer used it. And the fundamental, the fundamental bottom line on it is, if you, if, if, if you use it as a tool to not fill the position and save the money, then it comes out in the end being beneficial. If you use it to take a higher pay guy that's on a defined benefit or whatever example you want to put into and you hire somebody new at a lower scale, in the long run, you don't win.
I agree with you.
All right? I mean, you know, it just catches up with you in a couple, three, three, four years and you're right back in the same spot again.
I agree with you.
So, you know, there are some, there are some fundamental structures out there that employers have used and, you know, we don't need to create the wheel on this thing, I mean, we just need to have Jen go out and check, and check around and see how employers have dealt with it.
Well, we're going to have to check public employers because remember, you have a different set of, of regulations and, and guidelines that public employers have to fi, have to follow than private employers. In addition, not all the private employers have 12 bargaining units with collective bargaining agreements, so I just want you to be clear on that. Every time I, I hear you say, well, we did it in our organization, your organization is different than a public organization.
I understand, I gave an example.
But, but we can, but we can, clearly we can go out and check other counties and how they've done it and try to come up with an example, a, a way to do it. But the key is just what you said, Commissioner, you have to leave the position open.
Dennis, would the county be comparable to TCAPS or to NMC?
Should be.
Because I think that that's what they both did, too. They offered an incentive, I might be totally wrong on that, but I thought that's what they did.
We'll check it out.
I want to check, I just want to make sure I understand, we don't leave the, the issues don't leave the position open, you discontinue the position, you remove the FTE within the budget structure.
Okay.
You don't leave the position open.
Okay.
Yeah.
I actually had a question on circuit court specifically.
I'm a lowly district court judge, you better ask that from circuit court.
I mean, district court.
Good, we can answer that.
I keep, keep saying this wrong.
That's okay.
Over and over again. And again, I'm only looking at a snapshot in time here, but according to my calculations, revenues are running about $300,000 behind projections, is there, is there any?
There's nothing we can do about revenues, okay?
No, no, I understand that, but I just wonder if there are any trends, you know, going one way or the other, possibly indicating that maybe they're getting better, they're getting worse, or?
I, I think the trend since maybe '04 or '05 is that there's fewer tickets being written and there's fewer criminal cases being filed. We have no control over that, nor should we, as judges.
So, say again, you're, you're projecting that we're $300,000 behind?
Well, no, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be if, if the, if the year-to-date revenues as projected continue to the end of the year.
Commissioner Richardson is looking at the department and the general fund where the district court revenues are recorded. And I, I, you know, I would love to sit down with you.
Dean, Dean hates it when I do this and we're about to hear this again, so.
Well, we're actually budgeting a slight increase and this was looked at June, I looked at it again in July. Their charges for services cost is, is the largest revenue item. Those revenues come in on a daily basis. You're, you're looking at August 16th, I should give you the most current information.
This is probably one case where I don't need to use July 31st, I could probably use August 15th and get a better number.
Fairly close to actual because they do transmit revenues to the county treasurer daily.
It's, it seemed like the revenues were doing pretty well in Grand Traverse County, but they're down in Antrim.
Well, our collections are up in Grand Traverse County because we're like really doing a good job there, collection people. So that's a positive. I think Antrim County's probably hit even harder than Grand Traverse by the economy.
So this is, this money is not booked until you actually get the check as opposed to when the fee is assessed, right?
That's right.
Right.
A lot of times we, we assess.
You never see the money, right?
Fees and costs and.
Oh, correct, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
But actually, our revenues are tracking about, you know, a little higher on a monthly average than last year and, and 2008, so I guess I was surprised by that, by what you're looking at.
Yeah, I am too.
That's what I was seeing, too, and we can sit down and discuss this next week and.
Our caseload is down and if our caseload is down, our revenues will be down from that caseload.
Right.
But I think our collections this year has done an outstanding job.
We've, and we've made some changes in, in other things as well in that we've put a little bit more of a emphasis on collections with regard to probation. If, you know, typically a person, a person can get up to two years probation in, in district court and, but they don't always get two years, they get six months a year or something like that, but the probation officers are required to keep the person on, extend their probation up to two years if they haven't paid in full, so a person can't get off probation unless they've.
Ah.
So we've put a little bit more emphasis on collections from the probation standpoint in two and it's made a difference.
And people will find the money to get off a probation.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the other thing I would comment is that your, the revenues for next year's budget are actually down about $100,000 from this year, so you don't have quite as, you know, you have a lower target for 2011 than 2010, so whatever that's worth.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I was just looking at the expenditures from '07 and '08 and '09 for the district court. I've looked at them for some of the other departments, too, and lots of times I'm surprised at how, what a little increase there's been in some of the things, I think prosecuting attorney was one I looked at and hadn't gone up very much over the past couple of years. But with district court, I looked at the numbers and we've got like an 11% increase from '07, '08, fine, whatever, but quite a large increase from '08 to '09, was there a reason, what was?
Primarily indirect costs. Moving into, into the Hall of Justice was a huge increase in indirect costs that are charged back to, to their budget.
Would you like to move back into the basement, Judge?
I spent six years in that basement with mold.
We're trying to fix it right now. But it's not toxic. We got a little digging project for you.
Well, it probably wasn't toxic, but I know by the end of the day, my voice was gone a lot of days.
So that's their, their payment for that, and how much is that a year?
Indirect costs for district court and we, we have some recovery from Lelandaw and Antrim County, that's in the, boy, $800,000 range.
It is.
The largest component of that cost is, is the depreciation on, on the building, it was an $8 million facility, and then the interest on the debt service. And there are the facilities costs associated, you know, the lights and the heat.
So that would be about an $800,000 cost, is what you're saying?
Yeah, don't, don't quote me on that, but it's somewhere in that range.
It wasn't an $800,000 increase, but it ended up being about an $800,000 line item now.
And that's an annual cost.
Seven, 786,000 for this.
Yeah, that changed substantially when we went into our new courthouse and, and thank you for the new courthouse, it just is so much better for the public to come to. But it has increased our costs substantially.
Please forgive me, I stepped out of the room momentarily and if this question's been asked, um.
You haven't missed a thing yet.
Okay. Commissioner Friend and I met with the sheriff yesterday and the day before and one of the things he mentioned was that he must maintain a certain level of staffing in order to satisfy the state grant for secondary road patrol. And he said that he gets no revenue from that, that it goes to district court, library, et cetera. Do you have any idea, you may not, what impact something like that has on your court? I mean, if we don't have a level of staffing on the road from the sheriff's deputy, certainly tickets aren't going to be written and it will impact your revenue. Do you have any idea how much? I, I, and yes, it is our revenue in, in the fact that we collect it. But we don't really have any revenue. All of our monies get transmitted to the county's general fund or dispersed to the state or to the library. We don't keep any of the money.
It's truly county revenue and we're accounting for it in a.
We're a fiduciary?
No, we, we have it now, we, we could do this entirely different. It's county revenue, it's recorded in the general fund. We could have this revenue in, in the district court fund, which is a separate fund, we could put this under the sheriff's budget.
But it goes in the general fund?
It goes in the general fund.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
And it supports everything the county does.
All right, thank you. So if you're looking at the monies we bring in, um. No, I was, actually, I was asking about the sheriff's office because I was concerned, you know, if we lose that deputy road patrol, you know, obviously we don't satisfy the grant requirements, we will not have secondary road patrol, we will not be writing tickets for speeding or whatever. And the monies we collect would be less, absolutely. Okay.
Anything else? She was over getting miles from the subject.
Just two, two real short things to talk about. One is that the, we're looking forward to getting the electronic ticket thing going because when we did not fulfill or fill a clerk special, specialist position, that was on the basis that we were going to be getting this. So, because right now we are kind of just treading water, trying to stay above water, I guess, in our civil division and in our, basically because, like, someone will file a complaint and it'll be a couple of weeks before we actually get to it now. And sometimes things get stale, like they'll file a motion to extend a summons and it might be 10 days, two weeks, it's on my desk by the time we get it because it's triage, they have to do other things. It can be stale by that time and I cannot extend it, so. So there is no fat there, just so you know, but we're looking forward to getting this because that's what we're counting on to make it work, so hopefully that's going to happen.
To free up some clerical time.
Really, pretty soon. And I, also I just want to thank you all for your time. This is, this has got to be a very difficult thing for all you to do and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Judge, I don't want to.
Thank you for coming.
I'd like to not put you on the spot, but you know.
Go ahead, Sonny.
I'll probably do it anyway. You sat here earlier when we were talking about the corrections officers in the courts. Can you, you know, give me any idea of how you would feel about us hiring bailiffs to work in the courts instead of assigning corrections officers there?
As a, as a judge, I don't want to get into the business of supervising court officers. I don't have the expertise. Sheriff does, so I would rather not do it. I can, in the, in Antrim County and in Lelandaw Counties, they have retired police officers that are deputized officers and I'm not sure how that works, maybe they have different union contracts or whatever.
Officer.
So, and they're, you know, they're supervised by the sheriff. I don't have the expertise.
Who schedules them, Judge? That would be the question.
The sheriff, but they work exclusively in the court, so they get their train, they're not, I would guess that they're not the same as corrections officers. They are court officers or bailiffs, and they are working part-time and probably with prorated benefits or no benefits. I'm not even sure which. But they are working under the sheriff, which means they're deputized and can then have arrest powers.
See, I don't think that the sheriff, well, I shouldn't speak for him, but I don't think that would be problematic. What I think is problematic is having a pool of them available to, I mean, knowing how the scheduling is going to go to be able to do that. And so, like, I think if there was a way that they could be assigned to your court and scheduled through you or through somebody to be in court, but be deputized and employees of the sheriff, I think that could work. Their concern is the scheduling, how they would do that without having...
You know, I think that we could sit down and talk about it for sure.
Yeah, okay. We've worked with them on scheduling. I mean, when we ended up at the new courthouse, we have three courtrooms there. In the old courthouse, we only had two. So, we were thinking about, we'll have 11 criminal days, then we realized that the difficulty of that with the sheriff. So, we have 10 criminal days, basically, of judge days. So, there's, the rest are civil or we're in the out counties. So, we work with them. And we had one day where there was some issues going on over at the jail, and they just didn't have anybody sent over. I had a jury trial. It was not a, it was not a situation where assault or crime. I can't remember what it was, but, and between myself and the court recorder, we were the court officers, so... But, you know, so we try to help all we can. We'll be happy to meet with them and try to make it work better. The fact, when we went to the new courthouse with the video arraignments, it keeps a lot of them from, you know, prisoners from coming over. They've, we used to have, you know, what we'd call six packs come over, basically, six prisoners on a chain coming over, and then they would, we'd be done with them, and they would shift, and another six pack would come back. Now, it's very rare if we have more than four prisoners in our courtroom at one time. Usually, it's less than that, so it's a lot, you know. We did that, we spent the money. It doesn't make our job any easier, but it makes their job easier, and it's safer for the community too not to transport people. But we will work with them, we'll work with the prosecutors as well. You know, I think maybe if it was, instead of going to seven or eight prosecutors, we might be able to save money if they showed up at the arraignment, and we could perhaps work deals out at the arraignment that would not, so the defendants would not ask for court-appointed attorneys that, you know, we have to try to get reimbursed for at some point.
Which was one of David Bennett's recommendations as well.
Right. So, I mean, you could even have a part-time prosecutor there on warnings. And there's things we can work with, but, and we're more than happy to work with you, work with anybody to try to make it, you know, happen.
District court has always been that way. You guys have worked well with us.
I like that idea.
Thank you.
No, thank you all.
Thank you.
After 5:00 on a Friday, I'll try and be very quick. Jason Torrey, Deputy Director for Central Dispatch. I just wanted to say a few things and give you an update on the surcharge revenues for 911 and where they stand with the state legislature. And just give you a quick recap here. As you know, in July 2008, they changed the revenue for 911 to surcharge revenue, and they reduced the 80 cent surcharge that we allocated or received then on devices to 66 cents because they changed the way that they received that. They changed it from just landline use to all devices that can call 911. The MPSC, the Michigan Public Service Commission, did not take the advice of the Emergency Telephone Service Committee who previously overseen the revenue funding stream. They did not take their advice, and they went on their own and basically decided that the 80 cents was too much, that the 66 cents would be in line with the revenues we generated for 2007. They added 2.7% for 2008 and decided that to keep the revenue funding about the same, that that was the formula that they were going to imply. Grand Traverse County joined several others' counties in the state to contest the decision of the MPSC, and we retained Doug Van Essen, the attorney, on behalf of those counties to basically challenge that decision. The Court of Appeals decided that there were enough grounds to stand on to challenge it, and they reverted it back to the MPSC for reconsideration. So, kind of, the only bright spot I see here today is that we may have an additional force, additional source of funding coming from an increase of the surcharge if the MPSC decides that they indeed will allow us to collect the 80 cents again. That would generate roughly $150,000 for 2011.
Oh. That's already been anticipated in this budget recommendation.
Oh, it's in there?
Yes.
It's anticipated, but not at this point guaranteed. The MPSC, Doug Van Essen expects a decision from the MPSC within 60 days. So, we still have 60 days to wait this out. We're anticipating, we're being optimistic that they will side with us and increase our revenue back to the 80 cents. In addition to that, when this initially started back in 2008, Doug Van Essen wrote into the briefs during these arguments that we wanted to be able to actually retroactively collect this 80 cents if they decided that they were going to reduce the surcharge, which they did by 12 cents. However, we're uncertain on how they're going to respond. If they do not include a retroactive, some sort of collection, some sort of way to collect the retroactive surcharge, we're going to pursue that in the future. But right now, the goal here is to get the surcharge revenue back to the 80 cents. So, that's the bright spot with that.
But just one note on that, if I could. I got a note yesterday that says the Michigan Public Service Commission is meeting in Traverse City on October 6. I would imagine that's the board meeting, that decision will be made.
I haven't seen that.
At the Grand Traverse County Civic Center at 6:00 PM Wednesday, October 6. I mean, it probably would be a good idea for some of us to show up.
Where's that from?
It was a flyer from the Michigan Public Service Commission, and I got it in the mail. I don't know why, probably they had a list of elected officials.
What time?
It is Wednesday, October 6, 6:00 PM at the County Civic Center. And they're having their meeting there. I mean, I think it would be appropriate for some folks to show up and, under public comment, say, you know, we'd like to have this thing happen.
And let us get you a copy of the agenda, so that we have the agenda for the night and see if it's on there. If not, but even if it's not, and they haven't acted, you know, it might be a good opportunity. This really is necessary, and we need it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll give this to Dennis, and he can send it out to everybody.
I didn't see that neither, I didn't hear anything about it. So, yeah, that's, I mean, if you have any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to answer those. And obviously, we're going to want to attend that. I'll be there. I'll get with Jamel, the director, who's on leave right now, and fill her in on that meeting, and hopefully, maybe she can attend. I just want to comment that in light of the $150,000 anticipated revenue increase, we still worked, I worked with Dean trying to bring our budget down. We're leaving one FTE dispatch position completely vacant for 2011 as of right now, on top of cutting some other personnel line items in the range of about $30,000. Obviously, everyone here knows our staffing issues, our turnaround issues, our overtime issues. We're at a point now with the staffing, even leaving the full-time vacancy, that we have another full-time vacant position that has a trainee in position. As we've talked about in the past, those trainees, they're not productive. They're not productive for at least six months. You know, the sheriff's office, I'd like to comment on that real quick, is that when they talk about reducing the road patrol, that directly affects dispatch and the way we operate. Obviously, we don't have any, we don't have any programs we can cut. The only thing we can deal with is personnel. If we cut the personnel, and the sheriff's office, for instance, cuts their personnel, and when you describe the southwest corner coming to the northeast corner, well, if that is an emergent situation, that dispatcher has to stay on the phone with those people. We've, it's happened. I know the incident Captain was talking about, our dispatchers were on the phone. They can't leave that person for their safety and for the safety of the people responding to the scene. So, it's important for, we all just kind of work together. It all ties in together, and our operation will be directly influenced by a cut in the sheriff's office as well. That's all I have.
Jason, and I've done this scenario a number of times. Obviously, if someone calls 911, they want an answer. And you can't say, "Thank you for calling 911." If you have a fire, press 1. If you have, you know, a medical emergency, press 2. And you press 1, and "Thank you for calling," your call will be answered in the priority in which it was received. It doesn't work that way. If we eliminate this one FTE, what impact does that have on the public?
Well, it brings us...
And is there, I'm sorry, let me ask one more thing in conjunction with that. And if there is, if there is to be no impact on the public, are we indeed going to incur overtime costs? Because obviously, we have to have someone to answer the phone.
Right. Yeah, unlike other departments, our workflow is completely dictated by the citizens that call us. And what I mean by that is, we can't not answer the phone. If the phone's ringing, you have to answer the phone.
Right.
Other departments have the leniency, so to speak, to say, "Okay, that's not a priority, and I can do that later." We don't have that luxury. So, even with the one FTE vacancy, we're at a point where, I'll call it a minimum in staffing level, where we feel our staffing is at the bare minimum that we would want on duty at any given time to answer the phones. So, the impact on leaving any more than that would be significant. It would require overtime, it would require...
It would require overtime or calls would not be answered as promptly, what?
I mean, yeah, it would require overtime to the point that we'd want, the main goal is to get the calls answered in an efficient and effective manner. So, in order to accomplish that, we would require overtime. So, any more vacancies than that would automatically require us to fill those positions or those hours with another body on overtime, which, as we talked about before, translates into burnout and fatigue on the dispatch staff. It's a very stressful position, and it does take its toll on you when you're working 15 hours a day for six days in a row.
Okay, you mentioned 15 hours a day. What is the schedule? And do you think that if the schedule was adjusted, would there be less burnout? You know, obviously, if you only work four hours a day versus eight or 12, it makes a difference.
Right, well, the regularly scheduled 10 hours a day dispatch staff. And when I meant 15 or commented on 15...
You meant overtime.
If you reduce that and we start implementing overtime on a regular basis, we can contractually obligate them to work 15-hour shifts. So, regularly, they're working 10-hour shifts. Its supervisors are working 12-hour shifts. But once we get a reduction in the staffing level to a point where we have to mandate overtime, then they're going to start working five hours on top of their shift, or a full 10 hours on their day off, something to that effect.
And this has been evaluated, and it's constantly evaluated by Jason and Jamel. There was a time, Jason, where we were on eight-hour shifts.
That must have been a long time ago.
It was a long time ago. And we, when did we switch to the 10-hour shifts? How long have we been on 10-hour shifts?
I, that would have been before, I've been here 13 years.
It was before?
It must have been before that.
And when did we switch the supervisors to 12-hour shifts?
They've been on that for a long time.
Have they really? I thought there was a change made.
I don't, we wrote into the contract language that we could have the flexibility to create eight-hour shifts versus 10-hour shifts. But as long as I've been here, we've always been on 10s and 12s.
Okay. The employees liked the 10-hour shifts? Jason, I think it's important to note that even with, if we have to eliminate this telecommunicator, we will still be at the staffing level that we've had for much of the last few years because we're at full staff or close to full staff now for the first time in a long time, right?
Yeah, I mean, when you say full staff, that means you're paying someone to, you know, be here and fill in a position in the staffing plan. However, productive full staff, it hasn't happened in years. We either have one or two in training, and as somebody rotates out, we're rotating in. We had three people in training in the last 12 months, and none of those people are here. We just hired another guy six weeks ago. He's, you know, he's coming along, but as you know, the training, the training is a process. It's at least one year, the training's six months, four to six months, but it's at least one year before any of those people feel comfortable doing what they do. They're always making reference back, and they need help, and we understand that. But it's a year before they're really, really productive.
And the first several months, they're working with somebody, correct?
Right, the first, the first, the whole training cycle, they're going to work with somebody. And so, that influences the folks that are regularly working the floor and trying to, you know... So, you're taking away from what we have to do in our job to train someone. So, you're taking away really two positions.
Dennis, I got a question on the projected $150,000 differential between 80 cents and 66 cents. Is that, how much money did you guys put that in the budget? Was that the full 150 to, or is it just enough to offset the 64 and the...
The base revenue at 66 cents per device is about $700,000. And we may be a little conservative on that number. We had an issue with charter that has been resolved, and it was based on taking that $700,000 figure, dividing it by that rate. Obviously, you know, we receive our payments quarterly, but it was just doing some simple math, using $700,000 as the base, you know, what's generated at 66 cents, and then increasing it to an 80 percent, an 80 cent per device factor.
So, it recognizes part of it, but not all of it?
Okay.
Because of the, because we used a lower base?
Oh, I'm following you.
Based on this settlement that we just got. But it's, you know, it's a significant amount that we put in there.
It was $148,000, $150,000, somewhere in that range. But it's slightly conservative, but not too conservative.
And I think the key in the MPS's, or the MPSC's decision-making process will be that we're not asking for any more than we asked for before we were receiving, and that it's not going to, it doesn't, their biggest thing is they didn't want any of the revenue, right, to...
Supplant other...
Yeah, supplant other funds in the county or other obligations. And our point that we made in our brief to the MPSC was that it doesn't even nearly cover just the operating expenses for our operation as it is. So, we're relatively optimistic that they'll side with us.
Everybody happy?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
You've got 10 minutes, Fred.
Oh, well.
Fred Kiesler, health officer, Grand Traverse County Health Department. Jerry Pugh, Finance Director. We replied back in July 21st with a memo to Dennis as to what we were going to do. The $155,000, $195 dollar cut in county funding plus with the raises in insurance in impact was about $302,223. Spread out $457,000 impact. Our total budget is, when projected for 2011, is $6,163,750. County portion of our funding is about 21%. We, of course, then, the bulk of that, then, is what we get in state contracts and funding through Medicaid and contracts with the state health department, agriculture... and contracts with the State Health Department, Agriculture, Department of Environmental Quality and Education. So, we've been watching this, the state budget as it unfolds. We got a notice this afternoon, the diff, and we're still trying to decipher exactly what it means, but the differences between the Senate and the, and the general fund target for Department of Community Health alone was $510 million. So, it's very difficult for us to know how to plan this since we do have a fund balance of $1,421,000. And so, for now, what we were proposing is to just plug, and what we had in July was $458,588 of fund balance into the budget. That's been revised as of September 8th. It's reduced by $36,050 to about $422,580. And this number keeps fluctuating as we get more information from the state on the budget. We've, of course, reduced our environmental health staff by a third in, as, as the economy's spiraled down. Meanwhile, we have had gotten grants for like our adolescent, our second adolescent health clinic in Kingsley, which is basically fully funded, that we, where we've added on staff. So, I mean, there's this fluctuation as to how we, we operate in our services. So, I guess our plan was is to hold tight and see what was gonna happen in our other funding. It's formulated plan as to how we're gonna go forward since we had the fund balance to take from. And that's barely where we're at.
Fred, actually, this is a question for Dennis. Ah, there he is. And I guess for you as well. In your memo to Dennis, you say the county, and I did email Dennis this, but I, if, and forgive me, Dennis, if I can't find the answer, but I've got piles of paperwork here. The county emergency management coordinator budget is mostly salary and fringes of the EMC. It was the County Board of Commissioners' decision some years ago, prior to it being moved to public health, to have the EMC to be a full-time position. And yes, there probably is no legal requirement to have that position. If we move that position out of Fred's budget into Central Dispatch, because if memory serves me, Jamel used to do this. Is that available for funding from the surcharge, the 911 surcharge?
Yes. It does not, there is a small grant that helps support the oper, the position of EM, or of Emergency Management Director. The Emergency Manager Director position has been a full-time position since before I got here. The difference was is that the county board, when they established the position, they split the duties between the Director of Dispatch and the Deputy Director of Dispatch. Half of each of their salaries and responsibility was to do emergency management. So, it was the equivalent of a full-time position. It wasn't working. We didn't feel that the program was, was getting the attention or was providing the service that we needed it to do because their duties were so, so much of their time was spent doing Central Dispatch duties. So, it came before the county board and the county board made, at our recommendation and with Fred's agreement, the county board made the decision to, to move the full-time position to the Health Department. So, it was in effect, it was a full-time position. It stayed a full-time position. It was split between two employees. It was made one employee and a new employee was hired. The, where the cost, the additional cost came in was the county board said, because of the complexity of dispatch, both the Director and the Deputy Director would stay, rather than saying, "Okay, that was the equivalent of one position. We're just gonna have a Director, no Deputy Director." They said, "You're gonna keep your positions the same. We're gonna put a full-time position over here in the Health Department." Now, let me just say that I think it was, it was extremely beneficial to put this department under Fred's supervision. The department has flourished. We've done, we've updated many, many plans and it's been very successful. So, that's just the background on it. If we move that position from Fred and put it into Dispatch, we'll have, Dispatch's surcharge funding does not, is not predicated on the number of employees or the cost of personnel. So, it's only gonna be the same amount no matter what. So, if you move the cost of that program over to Jamel's program, you're gonna have to put more funding in it to fund it.
Okay.
Okay. And, and, and then there's two things you'd have to consider. Either taking part of the appropriation from Fred, the general fund appropriation that he gets to help fund that department, or putting other general fund money to it. I hope that was, is that?
Yes, you answered my question. The other thing, Fred, I have is, on your memo also, you say animal control was cut to two persons some years ago and can't function with less than two officers, in my opinion. Why?
Well, amongst other things is, is that they have difficulty covering them or calls they have. But the other thing is that we euthanize our animals that aren't adopted out, either because they're unadoptable or they're, they've been injured or they're ill. And you can't have one person euthanizing an animal. It really takes two. And it was more cost-effective to do that than have a veterinarian come and do it.
Okay.
Several years ago, we had three employees in the department. And-
We actually had four officers at one time. We kept whittling it back.
And we cut it back to three. It was since, when I was here, we had three. And the board was concerned about the cost of the operation of that program. They were also concerned about the revenue we were able to generate. We made some changes with the board, at the board's direction, we made some changes in the way we were doing the dog licensing and the collections of the dog licensing. It's when we went to the three-year license, which I think has been very successful. And we started selling the licenses through the animal, through the vets. And they keep a dollar, I think, still. Isn't it a dollar, Fred? They keep for every license they sell. But it took that burden off the county treasurer and we cut it from three to two employees. We changed the ordinance pretty significantly in terms of what we would do. And Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we also make a change to say we're not gonna do cats? I mean, did we?
No, we never did. We never had cats in the, in the organization.
Well, I'm not talking about cat licenses. I know. I was afraid of that.
I found somebody who thought cat licenses were a good idea.
Really?
Yeah. She, she was very concerned that, why do we have dog licenses but not cat licenses?
Does this mean you were doing your door-to-door?
Well, I'm sorry, Fred. Maybe there was some discussion about, like, doing some of that work. But let me, let me say that we were getting a lot of complaints when we had three officers of not getting the work done. Since that's, since it's been redone by Fred and his staff, I get no complaints anymore when we're down to two. I, I'm pretty sure, I agree with Fred. I'm pretty sure if we went down to one, there's no way we'd be able to respond to all these complaints and I think we would get more complaints.
One of the things we did is, is that we used to do the adoptions out and that was like very timely. Took a lot of time to adopt them out. And so, what we did is we set a program with Chairman and Humane Society and two other organizations, that they just come in and take whatever dogs they think are adoptable. We do the paperwork and they do the adoptions and seeing that they go to the right families and line them up. And those that just aren't adoptable, just like we have pit bulls that have been used for dog fighting and so forth and they're just not suitable for homes, they're too aggressive. We have to euthanize. And then we get injured ones. And by not having a veterinarian come in and do the euthanizing and so forth, they'll reduce those costs, too. And then we just start better defining our complaints as to how we handle complaints.
And then we also, I think, maybe it was done by another department, but we started contracting out the cleaning and the feeding on the weekends.
And that was the other thing is, is that we're doing that. That was much cheaper than having a third officer come in and work on the weekends to do the feeding and cleaning. We just contract with a company that comes in and cleans and feeds the dogs. I remember we had a discussion a few years ago about eliminating the animal control thing altogether. You've never seen this hallway so full of people.
I had a lot of people show up.
I mean, it, it was unbelievable.
We also talked about transferring it to the sheriff. And he wasn't-